Yeah, it's really nice. All right, I say ten rocks, it's gonna get ugly.
No.
Yeah.
Don't eat that don't starts.
It's ugly. My phone has gone all day. My emails, I didn't know.
Yeah, that's that is so bad. I'm guessing. Like who's lucky is beside you.
Thirty?
Where's the one? I didn't see that. Oh.
I'm gonna go. Eight thirty.
Ten.
Uh, that's the over under. It is eight thirty.
There's a rate, she's missing the meeting. Thirty.
Oh, okay.
I started sitting in front. I'm sorry. No, I had him on the phone on my way here. So, on, because I'm gonna squish on a couple things. Yeah. Mostly it's wrecked. I'm gonna speak. And I'm not gonna be. Tell you right on this one. When you're doing the police through your work. Well, because Tommy, you're doing the book. I have to get the safe book. You're not him. He'll only take them to yours.
I'm calling to order the regular station meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand seventeen, at six thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Alahouzes.
Here.
Vice Mayor Terri Panty.
Here.
Commissioner Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Slattery.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Smith from the Martin Herman Missionary Baptist Church here in Tarpon Springs. And please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegion.
Let us look to the Lord in prayer. Father, we thank you for this night. We thank you for this beautiful city. You bless us to reside and to work in, to play in. We thank you for our city leaders. And we pray your blessings upon them tonight. Bless them as they make decisions regarding the residents of this city. We ask that you continue to bless our public service workers, police, and fire. Wrap your arms around them and keep them safe as they perform their duties. We pray for staff. We pray for tourists. We pray thy blessings upon this place. In your great name we pray. Amen.
Flag your leaders to the flag of the United States of America. And two republics which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Happy New Year to everybody. We are now going to the public comments. On the items that will now be discussed this evening, if you have any comments, please come forward. You'll be given, uh, state your name and your address, and you'll be given four minutes.
Anita Protus, nine oh one Bay Shore. Mayor Alahouzes, we have a very serious problem. If I run over thirty minutes as one mayor to a former mayor, may I finish my presentation? It won't take that long. I ask you for your, uh, letting me to continue. On Bay Shore Drive, we have a, uh, a development going on behind us. We worked with the developer at the beginning. We went to all the hearings. And, uh, we changed the road where it was gonna come out on Bay Shore. And they made concessions to us as we made concessions to them on what, you know, we were satisfied with. Uh, it's been a long haul. Uh, but there are some things that have really disappointed me that the city and the city manager didn't comply with. First of all, it's taken a long time to get the road in. And I understand the development from being on planning zoning and working with the city for over fifteen years in developments. Um, we've had to put up with sand blowing on weekends, not keeping the road wet. Our cars, our back porches, our back windows, our house is full of the sand. On weekends, we couldn't get anybody to try to rectify that. My neighbor down the street has gone through, and I'll say it, hell. They've taken the right of way to put in the drainage. They've gone in front of their front yard, put up a barricade. They can't even look out their windows. They lost internet, electricity, and everything. You know, you are supposed to look after the resident, the homeowner, not work for the developer. It's been terrible down there. Now, I came home Friday, a wet piece of paper. We are going to close the road. You're gonna have to use the dirt road for maybe five, ten days, uh, while they put the drainage pipe in. I can understand that a little bit, but let me tell you something. I go out at three o'clock in the morning when I get called on a medical problem. I come home at three, uh, dark. I leave my house at five, five fifteen in the morning. It's black. I do not want to drive on an unpaved road with no lights on that street where construction is. And it's wrong to ask us to do that. They should put in the road first and put lights up for the health, welfare, and safety of the residents on Bay Shore. Steve called me, God bless him here in the city. He says, I take responsibility. I said, no, you don't. The buck stops with the city manager, and the buck stops with the commission. We should not have to do that. And I understand that they have to put, and I hope that drainage works. I hope it works. But right now, I don't want to go on an unlit, unpaved road in the dark. Will I be able to get police escort when I have to leave? Can I call the police department, ask them to come up with a light and get me in and out? If I pick up nails in my tires from the construction that they're doing, who's gonna be paying my, my tire bill? This is wrong. Any construction that you see going on of that caliber and that many homes, the road is put in first with lights, so the residents, if they have to use it for electrical purpose, fire purposes, while they're doing the construction, it's there and the safety is there. There is no safety for us to be on that dirt road, black and unpaved. And I am very disappointed and shocked that the city expects us to do it. We haven't done anything to stop the construction. We could have done it with the gopher turtles. We could have done it, sent pictures to Tallahassee of what we saw. We're asking you to tell them to pave that road, put up some lights so that we can feel safe and be taken care of as taxpayers and former residents there. And you need to come out and see the construction that's going on. You need to see. I am very concerned, ten years from now, what that development's gonna be like. I invite you. Also, at least Rea was, came and spoke to the residents down, uh, off of, um, off of Sunset. The, the dirt is piled up high. The development's gonna be higher than their homes. It's gonna be a swimming pool there. Who's gonna protect these people and their property when the rains come or hurricane and it floods? It's already flooded at one part there and went into the Houlish's yard. They jumped the fence and used their water. This isn't right. This used to never happen. I'm asking the city to do something for our safety, our welfare, and our well-being. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Mayor, I, I know we usually wait to the end, but.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just to, just to give the rest of the story. Um, as we know from the start of this project, this project's unique because we assigned somebody from the city full-time to be responsible for watching out for the needs of the citizens, Mr. Steve Wire. So let's just go to this one case of the road. Um, the notice and the signs went up about the roads being closed. Mr. Wire got phone calls because as far as I know, most of the people out there was giving his phone, his cell, to leave messages this weekend. There are an exchange of emails during this weekend because citizens called him like they're supposed to do about their concerns with the road. He immediately stopped them from any progress, told them they were gonna have to come up with another alternative, and canned the idea of a detour. And as you see today, they've got a flagman, they got one lane open going back and forth because the residents who chose to call him like we had set up from the start of this project. And, you know, with the major, there's been lots of problems. Steve Wire has spent a lot of his time with the dirt problems and doing everything legally. He works for the residents, not the developers. Developers, I'm sure if you ask them, um, they are tired of him making them change plans, stopping their work, and doing things for them. That's all documented. You can see that stuff. But that was handled by the calls this weekend that was stopped. That's why you see a flag person in one lane open to do it because of the concerns of the residents, Steve stopping them from the detour, and set up another procedure to not implement that. And all those things are gonna be in place for the rest of the project. Any of you who don't have his cards, his number, I brought a few with me because the ones who call them and do it the way that's proper, that we set up to represent the residents from the very start of this project is there. His number and his cell is available. He answers them weekends, as he did with this project. After hours, he'll get the message, and he immediately gets on it and gets to the construction. That's all documented. If any of you out there from Bay Shore needs these cards to have his number to do it, because you can deal with him directly, and you're here Tuesday night trying to get a problem done that was already taken care of this weekend as far as the road goes. That's just an example of, of what we've set up with the project.
Thank you, Mr. Licorice. We just need to tell him that he needs to be more proactive and, you know, look and see what the issues are going to be and communicate with.
No, that's not the case, Mayor. I disagree with you. He is proactive on it.
Okay.
That's why he stopped it and never got going and stuff, because he was called with the concerns. He's out there every day. So that, that's not the case.
Well, I'm Dr. Goldman. Good to meet everyone. I'm here on the same issue. I'm resident nine fifty-eight Bay Shore Drive. I've lived there for the last thirteen years. Um, one thing that's unique about our community is we tend to try and care for each other. I disagree with Mr. Licorice very strongly. This should have been planned out with more interest in the community at hand. I was the one that spoke to Mr. Wire this weekend. I got in touch with him on the weekend. You are correct. Why should it be that I get a non-letterhead email in my mailbox on Friday after hours telling me that they're gonna close the road that accesses my house on Monday morning at seven A. M. With no one to call and no, no way of dealing with this? It was unacceptable. What's also unacceptable, and really unacceptable, is the way that they've treated our neighbors. Our neighbors and our neighborhood have been abused by this project, particularly Dr. Lewis, a very good colleague, good person, serves the community, and his yard has been torn up and destroyed for the past month. I could only imagine what it would be like to raise children in that house right now. I think we need to do a better job looking out for each other. That's our job as people. That's our job as a, as a commission here. That's our job as a city and not looking out for the developers. I never raised an issue with them developing the land that they purchased. That's what they did. They purchased the land. What I raise an issue with is them restricting our access to our own properties and our own houses and creating a safety hazard where if I have to leave for an emergency to go to the hospital at three in the morning, I have to drive down an unlit, unpaved road, possibly at a decent rate of speed. I'm sorry, officer. Going to emergencies, I do occasionally. Um, I think it's unsafe, and it's not looking to help the community. And now you've got one of our neighbor's yards torn up in a way that none of us would live in. No one here would wanna live the way they're living. I think we have to think out for, think of our neighbors and our friends and our colleagues before we think about how a developer that's coming in is gonna deal with the, the city and deal with the property that they're developing. And they were not proactive. If they were proactive, I would have never received a letter on Friday evening to go from Monday morning. Anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Does anybody else has any comments, really? Thank.
Paul Lewis, eight twenty, Bay Shore Drive. I wanna thank the members of, of Bay Shore that have come out tonight to discuss this issue. Um, uh, as Dr. Goldman said again, he's a, he's a physician. So he has a surgery, um, he has a plan. He has a contingency plan. He tells a patient before the surgery, here's what's gonna happen. And if this happens, here's A and B and C. And, and, and to speak to it, it's, it seems that some of this is ad hoc. Perhaps it's not. And if that's the case, then there's just some lack of communication because we're just not getting the plan. Um, again, credit to Steve, because again, when Steve is aware, Steve has been very responsive. Uh, Steve has helped my wife tremendously, uh, through this, through this process. Um, this has caused tremendous stress on me and my family. My wife in particular, uh, has been very stressed by this whole project. Um, on November sixteenth, I received a letter that said they're gonna be doing drainage. It'll take approximately four weeks, um, and that they have a right of access to our property. I chose to, to allow that. My goal is to get this project done as soon as possible to allow this, the least disruption for all the residents of, of Bay Shore. Um, and again, and I think that's the goal here, is that we have progress, we have communication. It's the least disruptive as possible to all the residents. Um, but the communication and what's the plan? You know, I was told here it's gonna be four weeks that this on, next to my house, that this vibration day and night would, would continue, would stop in four weeks. That's November twenty-eighth. It's now January tenth, so it's nowhere near that now. So, so again, it's, I think the, the uproar is that on a Friday, we've got notice that the streets are gonna be closed. And, and that's that communication proactive, here's the plan, here's what's coming. At least you know, okay? At least you know. I think that's only fair, uh, to ask that for all the residents of Bay Shore. Here's what's coming. Here's our plan. Let's talk about it. We did that very well at the beginning. I'm not sure we've done it very well since then. So appreciate anything you can do. Certainly, my goal and our goal is to get our lives back to normal as soon as possible on Bay Shore and to minimize the disruption that is occurring, uh, to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't know if everybody knows me. I don't think some commissioner knows me at all, but that's okay. My name is Andreas Salivaras. I live four ninety-five Riverside Drive. I come tonight to talk about the sponge docks. I wanna know how many of you commissioners that walk in the sponge docks, they see the sponge docks? Except Rea, maybe Mr. Tarpanis. The mayor, of course, the pest with the cars. But I wanna ask you questions. Are you work for the special interest for one section in Tarpon Springs, for all the section in Tarpon Springs? I think for all section commissioners. But I wanna ask question and give you my suggestion. This year, for the first time, I live in, in Tarpon Springs too many years. I never saw so dull, the biggest event in Tarpon Springs. Not only for the Greeks, but any, anyone who's living in Tarpon Springs, anyone who's come for marathon. We remove the lights after the Christmas. Usually, we keep it up to Epiphany Day. Epiphany Day is now only for Greeks. But I feel this time, the city of Tarpon Springs, they're gonna save some money so the company to do a quick, so we don't have to pay any more money. But I ask city, city commissioners, why you don't go to the business people to say, we don't have any money? You pay for more extra week for this celebration? Nobody knows why. I asked the mayor before, not inside, outside. But this time, I come over here, I wanna ask you, all of you. I wanna say more things. Are we plan to make the sponge docks better? Are you plan to do it? That's your job and my job, because I have business. But the city not do nothing, zero. You work only for one section and the business section. And I'm gonna tell you something. Sponge Docks is the place who is bringing more money for the city of Tarpon Springs. We have over a million visitors. Wanna pay attention? It's not the Tarpon where I know the first time I come here, nineteen seventy-six. It's not the same. It's not the point, you commissioners. You sit on the chair, you say, I'm the commissioner of the Tarpon Spring. You know who I am? Your job is to help Tarpon Spring to be better. And I come tonight to talk to you about the sponge docks. And I ask the Mr. Mayor to do something. And I, if you wanna know how to fix it, if you don't know how to fix it, I may suggest for you, all of you commissioners, I can drive you there for fifteen, twenty minutes. Are you go to see Dunedin House, the downtown? You see any soliciting? You see too many signs? What we doing? What we doing for the sponge docks? I thank you because you have, we have one man every day with a cleaning mop of the streets and some paper within the floor. Why you don't? How many years you are the, you are the born, you are the commissioner? How many times you come in sponge docks? I never see you in sponge docks. I, both of you. No make any difference. You have to look at, you have to go down to see where is the city doing, what we doing for the city? You never do it. And I appreciate for you, but you take them the right to Dunedin, which is very close, not even twenty minutes from here. You learn from them. And I asked the mayor and the city manager to do some action for the sponge docks. And I wanna, I can help much I can. If you don't know, I can help you.
Thank you, Mr. Salivaras.
Thank you very much.
My name is Harry Batouias. I live at forty-six Reed Street. I was just sitting here thinking, it's twelve years ago this month that we had that Marathon Walmart meeting in Isavary Hall. That's about as long as I've been in Tarpon Springs. And tonight, I wanna speak to you about, I wanna go on the record about the proposals that I've read in the newspapers regarding the bottom of Tarpon Avenue down where the Sun Bay Hotel is. You know, in this city, we have restaurants galore and very good restaurants. We have antique shops, sites of historical and cultural interest, wonderful parks and beaches, including Howard Beach and Sunset Beach. But what don't we have? Andrea just said we have a million visitors a year. We don't have a hotel downtown. We don't have a hotel downtown. I have people who come to visit me from North Carolina and Boston and Chicago during the season. And if it's more than one or two of them, I can't accommodate them at my house. And if I can't find a bed and breakfast nearby, I have to take them out to U. S. Nineteen. So here's my proposal. If you buy the Sun Bay Inn, buy the Tarpon Inn across the street. Buy the sand pit, that's the lot behind the Sun Bay Inn between the street and the Sun Bay Motel. Buy all of that. And make a deal with a small hotel chain that specializes in historical replication. Tear down the Tarpon Inn and build a hotel patterned on the hotel that was there until nineteen twenty-nine when it burned down. Doesn't have to be mammoth, forty rooms, fifty rooms, something. Take the Sun Bay property and make a, a parking area and the par, the corner of the parcel that's on the lot, I don't know if you own that or it's privately owned, take that and put a park there with seats and benches and bathrooms. Once again, this year at Epiphany, I had elderly relatives who came. There's no bathroom there. They, they were not gonna walk to, um, the ban.
Sir, this item is on the agenda on the CRA.
Well, I won't go into that. All I'm saying is, this is the perfect opportunity to have a first-rate moderately-placed hotel in Tarpon Springs. And, once you have a hotel there, that'll compete, complete the triangle. You have the Sponge Docks, the Downtown, and the Bayou. That jitney that the city spent money to fix, use that as a trolley and pick people up at the hotel and take them to the docks and then bring them to the Antique District. Make a couple of trips a day down to Howard Park and Howard Beach. Let's do something to allow people to stay here. They could park their car in the garage or in the parking lot and never need it for three or four days if we had these facilities in place and these modes of transportation in place. That's all I wanna say. We need a hotel in Tarpon Springs that's moderately priced, not something that's beyond people's means. We know the kind of tourists that we get here, and it would only help to, um, improve our community and make it more attractive to people who now come only on day trips from, from Clearwater Beach or from wherever else they happen to be staying. If we had a place they could stay here in Tarpon, then they could use this as their base instead of using some other locale. Thanks very much.
Yeah. Anybody else has any comment? Right.
Tim Kafalos, two oh five Leafwood Road. Uh, I wanna thank the city, especially the Police Department, for their help at the Ahepa banquet. We had a very, uh, safe and quiet evening and was well handled by the police especially, the whole event. Um, and again, I wanna thank the city for the professionalism that took place during all that. I'm gonna just list some of the dignitaries that were there, so people outside of the Greek community understand just the significance of who came to that function and who was here over the holidays. Uh, we had speakers from the Daughters of Penelope, but Grand Vice President. These people came from as far as California and as far as DC, Greece, and Cyprus. And Andrew Zacharias, who's the Supreme President of the Ahepa. Uh, we had the Deputy Minister of Foreign Affairs at our banquet from the government of Greece, Metropolitan Alexios, His Eminence Archbishop Demetrius. We had all the local clergy, and we had, um, the, uh, His Eminence gave a tremendous speech. And we had the Ambassador Leonides Pendelides, Ambassador of the Republic of Cyprus to the United States. All were honored guests at our banquet Thursday night. And, um, Terrence Quick, uh, who was the, who was the Deputy Minister of Foreign Affairs of the Government of Greece, and Adamantia Klosa, who is the Consul General from Tampa, also came. I just wanna reemphasize the significance, while we're a small chapter, it's a very significant chapter, and we're seen nationally as a, uh, as, as somebody that should be growing. And we, we wanna thank the city for helping us with that, uh, and for those who attended. And this year, we're gonna have some terrific news, which I'll be back later to discuss at a later. And for those who attended, and this year we're going to have some terrific news, which I'll be back later to discuss at a later time. It's going to be expanded further for a whole week is my understanding, there'd be more for you, but we appreciate that too, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else has any public comments? Yes, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is John Stavros, I live at ninety-four, oh no, that's one zero zero six Golf Road, Tarpon Springs for the last thirty-five years. I try to stay in the background of things, my profession is a professional soccer player, designer. I'm building my own museum in Kingston, New York right now. Last time I was in, in this room was many years ago with Mrs. Kathy Monaham. And my idea was to turn this into a big space to bring in celebrities to Tarpon Springs. I've been promoting Tarpon Springs for many, many years, in fact, the mayor knows how hard I work at the gym. I keep my profile very low, except I dressed up for you tonight so this way you can pay attention to. What I have to say, my father died here, my mother died in the Ahepa dinner dance, my sister died in this town. Whenever I travel all over the world, people ask me, where do I live? I live in Tarpon Springs, they think it's a joke. I go, no, Al Capone used to live in Tarpon Springs a long time ago. So, um, to bring it back, the reason I live here is because I get away from the stress. When you go on a tour with Manchester United and you're flying on a seven forty-seven and you're selling out stadiums, that's a lot of stress. I come here, my windows are open, my doors are open. I take my bike to where these gentlemen prior were talking about Bay Shore Drive. And I see the flooding and the water and those disgusting machines that I call crack cranes or bulldozers. I was very upset to see that. A year ago, Mayor, when I was discussing an issue with you at the gym. My view looks in the front and the back for thirty-five years of wildlife. Wildlife that I don't destroy or build homes because of birds, snakes and other habitants such as turtles. When you go by Golf Road towards Sunset Boulevard, you will always see these eagles, ospreys, as you call them in Florida. They're beautiful birds. And they're there for the last fifteen years. I could easily cut that tree and take these babies away. But they come twice a year and they nest back there. And they're beautiful to look at. At the same time, in front, the church that's been there for a long time decided to sell the property, which we all know. From the church all the way down to the river, that's wetlands, that's a wildlife preserve that I enjoy watching. And many times I've taken little turtles back to their natural habitat. Except the other day grandma comes out, she's ninety-seven years old. And she gets pissed off because she used to do the clothes for Jacqueline Kennedy, Anna Sue. She was George Stavros' designer, okay? She almost got bitten by a snake. The snakes started coming from across, as you can see them in my yard, in my trees. And a few turtles. Without me paying any attention, I decided to take a walk across the street. There's the trees that were cut, thrown into the lake behind the church, all documentation. My other sister who has cancer came from Sarasota to have lunch at my house. She went to church, prayed, next thing we see is a little bulldozer. I go, what are they doing here? Next thing I know is half of that forest is gone. Without a permit. I went out there, filmed, documented everything, because that is my profession, to document and film and promote and market. So Steve comes first thing in the morning, I met him there and I said to him, should I call the news? He says, no, because I can easily call the news because of who I am and who I know. Should I call the mayor? He said, no. He said, we shut them down, I appreciate that you guys shut them down. The problem is now, what are they doing? Will they do something similar to what they're complaining about? Because as far as I'm concerned, all I've done is help save that natural area. That when the kids come from school, they walk along the trees, they see nature. The other day, seven o'clock in the morning, a lady almost hit a turtle, instead she hit the other car, that's documented. So I don't know what the plan is on that development, who is doing it, but that is wetlands there. I know that the Environmental Protection Environment was there. If we would have the neighborhood, because I'm representing a couple of others that own property there. You know, I could have easily just done a park for the kids, do a soccer field for the kids, you know?
Thank you, Mr. Stavros. Commissioner Slattery has a comment to make.
I thank you, and I want to thank you for reporting that, my brother is, lives next door, Steve is my brother, right. So he had concerns, he, I guess spoke with you, of course I got a phone call. And I immediately called our city manager, Mark LaChorus, and I think he handled it very well. And I wanted to thank Mark for that because that was on a Saturday.
The first bulldozer came in on. They snuck in during the holiday.
Right.
And they came in to destroy the property knowing that it was a holiday.
Well, I can tell you that, I called Mr. LaChorus, spoke to him about it and somebody immediately went out. And by Monday morning, we had how many agencies out there?
Bottom.
It was unbelievable, the response, and I want to thank you for bringing this to our attention because this person, this developer was not approved to do what he did. We have, he's been shut down. And I think Mark could probably explain exactly what happened, but I do want to personally thank you for that.
They've never filed any plans with anyone, the company's called Standard, the developers called Milan Homes, I couldn't figure out who they are. In other words, do I move away from Tarpon? Do I put my house for sale? Do I put the property behind there for sale? So the city has to kind of wake up and, which is my issue again, I believe in classic. Things and Tarpon was a beautiful city with beautiful buildings. What's going on now with all the new developments, it's really, really.
Well, these people did what they did illegally, we did not give them permission to do that, so it's not on the city. It's this developer, which is permits being ganked, I believe, there's a lot going on.
Believe me, they've got multiple investigations from wildlife, they've got DEP investig, we have got every state agency and thing involved. They've got three, four, maybe more investigations going, they're shut down, they're going to be in serious trouble from all those regulatory, the fines are going to be tremendous. So, believe me, every agency that we've talked to is going to hit them with the, so it's taken care of and the people will pay for what they did.
Maybe we can build a hotel there.
Thank you, Mr. Stavros, thank you very much. Anyone else has any comments to make?
Mayor?
Yeah.
Public comments are done, okay, I'll wait till you're done.
Peter Delakis, five one four Ashland Avenue. As far as what I'm hearing tonight, and that's not what I wanted to speak about. It's a continual assault, like this gentleman said on Our Way of Life, to continue to look at our environment. As something we can just use and toss away. Those trees, we can find them all we want, in fact, we have our tree ordinance, I hope Mr. Denoe is going to be cranking up the meter on that one. But that's not going to replace the trees, it's not going to do anything to help the wildlife or other things that have been displaced. The reason I wanted to come up here on public comments is to really offer some, what I felt was good news. I thought our Epiphany this past Friday was one of our bests. We got cooperated, we had fine weather, but our law enforcement and the cooperation we had between the other agencies was superb. I ran into a number of sheriff's troopers and everybody was cordial, but you could tell that, you know, everybody was. You know, just being aware and making sure everything was safe for all of us here and the people to visit. But the moment that struck me the most happened far away from the eyes of the majority of the public. At the Glendy, the Epiphany Celebration. The Archbishop gave Sergeant Miller a cross, a silver cross. And I couldn't hear the Archbishop, but it was kind of, so I'm assuming it was for his heroism with regards to the public stuff and some of the other things that. You know, he may have been involved with. But I don't know how that came about, but it was a touching gesture, I told Officer Miller, he's been blessed. And I just wanted the public to know because there's a lot of people out there who wouldn't have known about it. We do have a fine city here and hearing some of the people speak about their love for eagles and tortoises and such like that. Maybe it's time again for us to call again for the board to put together. An environmental action or environmental citizen committee. We had spoken about this years ago and it got poo-pooed. And I applauded Commissioner Alahuzis and now Mayor Alahuzis for bringing on the Budget Advisory Committee, that was a needed thing. But as we continue to grow and have less and less land and less of our valuable resources, in fact, later tonight, there's a thing about the watershed for the ankload, you know? So maybe it's time to start looking about getting more of our citizens involved and getting them involved in development processes. Because we're all kind of tired of seeing our area getting degraded and it's what we came here for, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else has any comments to make? Here now.
Commissioner.
Yes, we had one speaker that I think accused myself and Commissioner Slattery of not going to, 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 to the Sponge Docks. And that's false for reasons that are numerous, I just moved from there, I lived there for four years. And I think it's pretty much on the record that I hung my reelection on the Save the Docks effort. So I think people need to be careful when they like to single someone out they might not know too well and accuse them of, of not going to somewhere in Tarpon Springs. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Silver.
I just had a comment on the Bay Shore Heights issue. Do you know what status is on that road closure and when it's going to reopen or what's going on?
There's going to be no closure, they're doing one-way trap, they scrapped that about closing, doing a detour. They'll be doing one-way traffic until they get the project done.
So it'll be a while then.
Hopefully not, hopefully not, hopefully, but again, with this construction.
I wasn't clear on that.
But, but hopefully we're on them to get everything done as fast as possible.
Mr. LaChorus, at the beginning of the, of the project, we had a community meeting. Perhaps we need to do this again and inform the residents what's going to take place and get their recommendations, different things that we need, we should do. Thank you. We are now going to item number one, which is a proclamation. For Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. The seat of Tarpon Springs, Florida. Proclamation where, whereas January sixteen, two thousand seventeen marks observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Federal Holiday and whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. devoted his life to advancing quality to social justice and opportunity for all. And challenge all Americans to participate in the never-ending work of building more perfect union. And whereas celebrating Dr. King's life and spirit through the community wide recognitions. And service on the holiday is appropriate way to honor Dr. King, bringing our citizens together and strengthen our communities as a nation. And whereas it is appropriate for the seat of Tarpon Springs to support a community celebration and observance. Of the holiday honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And whereas each of us can and it must contribute to making our communities better with increased opportunities for all, all citizens. And whereas the seat of Tarpon Springs urge all people to join and pay tribute to the life and works of Dr. Martin Luther King's Jr. And apply his life and teaches to serve and service to inspire others to serve and remember his spirit of community. And now therefore I request Alahuzis by virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the seat of Tarpon Springs, Florida, to hereby proclaim January sixteen, two thousand seventeen as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. I like to ask Reverend Smith to come to accept the proclamation.
Thank you Reverend, if you say a few words and also tell us about the parade that is going to take place in fourteen. Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to all the commissioners. Thank the city of Tarpon Springs for continuing to support the events honoring Dr. Martin Luther King. This weekend, he would have been eighty-eight years old. This is the twenty-third celebration honoring Dr. King in the city of Tarpon Springs. And I believe with such a tremendous election that we had on last year, the things that have been going on. It's, it's very important that we continue to keep the dream of Dr. King alive. We will do so by celebrating and recognizing Dr. King's birthday on Saturday, this Saturday, January the fourteenth. We will begin our festivities with a, with a parade. That will start at, at Tarpon Avenue and Levis Street, right next to Vincent Funeral Home. We will start at eleven o'clock and we will proceed up Tarpon Avenue to Penellas Avenue, the now Penellas Avenue to Dr. King Drive. We will end up at Dorset Park. At Dorset Park, we will have some festivities in the park. We have a couple of bands coming, the Tarpon Springs High School Drumline will be participating. The New Mount Zion Mission Baptist Church Drumline will be performing in the park after the parade as, as well as marching in the parade. At Dorset Park, we'll have some speakers, we'll have some stage performances, the concession stand will be open for some good food. So we thank everybody's support, there's, there's some that have come out tonight that's actually going to be representing their organizations in the parade. Would you stand wherever you are, that's going to be, we've got the Democratic Club, the Shepherd Center, the Universal Church. And we welcome anyone, if you want to represent a civic organization, a church or whomever you may be with, we'll put you in the lineup, just show up. On Levis Avenue and, and Tarpon Avenue. We're going to start the lineup process at ten o'clock and we're going to step off and be going at eleven. So Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, once again, the police department that support us so well each year. We thank you for everything that you've done to make this celebration in Tarpon Springs a success.
Thank you Reverend Smith, are there any public comments on this item? Here now, are there any commission comments? We are now going to the item number two, it's another proclamation on miniature art month. Proclamation, the seat of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas the Miniature Art Society of Florida founded in Clearwater nineteen seventy-four. It is acknowledged leader in the global research of interest in the Asian art form of miniature painting and sculpture. And for more than a quarter of a century has enhanced our culture environment through exhibits, education programs and scholarships. And whereas. education programs, and scholarships. And whereas one of the first recipients from the scholarship offered by society was Christopher Steele of Tarpon Springs. And whereas in two thousand and four, two thousand and seven, two thousand and ten, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fifteen, and two thousand seventeen, the society sponsored the International Miniature Art Exhibition at the Leopards Museum. And whereas the society provided scholarships in two thousand and four, two thousand and seven, two thousand and ten, two thousand thirteen, two thousand fifteen, and two thousand seventeen to the art students of St. Petersburg College here in Tarpon Springs. And whereas the Miniature Art Society of Florida will host the forty-second International Miniature Art Exhibition on display at the Leopards Museum of Art from January fifteenth through February fifth, two thousand seventeen. And now therefore I request Alahuzis by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the seat of Tarpon Springs to hereby proclaim January fifteenth through February fifth, two thousand seventeen as Miniature Art Month. And I'd like to ask Mrs. Wallace to come to accept the proclamation. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you wanna say a few words about the exhibition?
Very cute.
I just wanted to thank everyone and say that if you have an opportunity to go to the Leopards Museum, if you've never seen a miniature, here's one, just to give you an idea. They are no bigger than this generally. There should be about eight hundred miniature pieces of art available to be seen that day or any day during the time that you come. Thank you. Oh, I'm supposed to tell you that I left some of these. This is last year's catalog. Catalog has beautiful pictures of the winning, well, of course, because I can't find them now, of the winning pieces. Mine isn't in there this year. There's also some flyers. And if you had any questions, I'll leave one of my business cards. You can contact me and I'll be happy to help you in any way I can. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. Any commission comments? We now go into the item number three, a proclamation on the National School Choice Week. Commissioner Panther will read the proclamation.
Yes. City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas all children in Tarpon Springs should have access to the highest quality education possible. Whereas Tarpon Springs recognizes the important role that effective education plays in preparing all students to be successful adults. Whereas Tarpon Springs is home to a variety of high-quality public and non-public schools from which parents can choose for their children, in addition to families who educate their children in the home. And whereas educational variety not only helps to diversify our economy, but also enhances the vibrancy of our community. And whereas Tarpon Springs has many highly, has many high-quality teaching professionals in all types of school settings who are committed to educating our children. And whereas School Choice Week is celebrated across the country by millions of students, parents, educators, schools, and organizations to raise awareness for the need for effective educational promotions. Now therefore I, Commissioner David Banther, by virtue of the authority vested in me, virtue of authority vested in the mayor of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, to hereby proclaim January twenty-second, the twenty-eighth, twenty-seventeen as National School Choice Week. And this will be mailed.
Thank you. We're gonna mail this proclamation. Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. Any commission comment? No. We are now going to the consent agenda. Item number two is the minutes. December sixth, two thousand sixteen was a regulation session. December thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, that was a regulation session. Three is a satisfaction release of leams. Four is the attorney fees. Five is special events. A, Sunset Beach Concert Series from February through November, two thousand seventeen. Number six is ratified execution of a hurricane disaster declaration, federally funded public assistance, state agreement. Number seven is authorized execution of cooperation agreement with Pinellas County for the development of the Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan for the Anclot River. Eight, approve the increase to the file fourteen zero zero fifty-nine dash C dash JJ Landscape Contractor Services through the seat of St. Petersburg, RFQ number seventy-five sixty-three. Number nine is increase file number fourteen zero 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 eight dash C dash JJ Mobile Communication Services. Number ten is increase file thirteen zero zero eighty-eight dash C dash CM Fancy Charing and Miscellaneous to Pinellas County Board with a contract, number one twenty-three zero one four eight dash B dash L N. Number eleven is the award bid, number seventeen zero zero forty-three dash B dash CM Barrier Services. Number twelve is the award bid seventeen zero zero two six dash B dash RS Chemical Storage Tanks, Supply and Install. Number thirteen, increase bid seventeen zero zero twenty-two dash B dash RS Temporated Services, Personnel Services. And number fourteen, award bid number seventeen zero zero thirty-three BJJ Sunset Beach Boat Ramp and Channel Improvements. Fifteen is the award bid number seventeen zero zero sixty dash B dash CM Portable Restrooms. Are there any items that you'd like to pull? Yes?
I just wanted to mention three items here that I noticed. I'm happy with item number seven, that the city's participating in an agreement with the county on the watershed management plan for Anclot. I think it's well-needed and I'm glad that we're participating because it does make a difference with the quality of our water, our flooding, our erosion, our sedimentation, and all the other problems that we're having, including the sea level rise. So I was wondering if it was the county that initiated this agreement or how did it come about?
Mr. Robinson, had you, Mr. Function? I'm still here. Yes, it was. We've been working with about a year now on this agreement.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. So the county initiated starting this program?
Yes, yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner, you have another one?
Item fourteen, Sunset Beach Boat Ramp.
Good.
I think it said in the backup that it'll be completed in about four months. So we're thinking maybe April or May that we should have that boat ramp completed.
Yes, that was a long time coming.
Yeah, I'm sure a lot of people are looking forward to that being done.
Permitting was a nightmare, but we finally got through and we're finally doing it.
Much needed, plus the, you know, the rest of the project with, that's gonna be done there. And then number fifteen, I think that it makes a lot of sense to buy those portables because renting them is very expensive and they're needed throughout the year, so.
Buy one for your health?
Good idea.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to speak on item number fourteen because the Sunset Beach Boat Ramp. Mr. Function, thank you for following through. It's been at least four years that we've been, oh, sorry, City Management Licorice. At least four years that I could, that I know of, that I've been asking for this. And I understand the bids came in lower than what we expected. And I'm looking forward to this. Like I said, we are a waterfront community. We need another outlet for people to launch their motorized boats. And you're kinda bound by the tides out there right now. And I'd like to see this company that you've hired, they'll be designing the ramp itself? Okay. Because I'd love to, I would like to see the design when you have that in. Okay, awesome. So again, I want to thank you.
And believe me, we were in the permitting process all those four years. Anybody thinks the government gets a break on permits and stuff, almost all those years, we were in permitting and had to do repeated environmental studies and put through a lot of hoops to get this. It's taken that much time to get through the permitting process, but it's here and well-needed. Anybody who's out there, we see out there with the boats and the problems, it's finally gonna happen. I know a bunch of residents email me every four months to see, are we closer? And are we closer? And we're finally there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other commission comment? No. Are there any public comments on these items?
Periodax five one four, Ashland Avenue, item seven, with regards to the Comprehensive Watershed Management Plan. I know it's a contract you're just approving, but I want to go into the exhibit. And it talks about, you know, what is going to be done as far as watershed evaluation, floodplain analysis, flood protection level of service, and some things like that. And then on page four, it talks on a performance schedule, contract with watershed consultant, project development, watershed evaluation, watershed management plan, floodplain analysis, district and peer review. And then the last, or next to the last, is public meeting presentation of the governing board. One, my concern is, is it looks like the way this is, the public doesn't really have any opportunity to be involved in this process till everything's pretty much all done. And a presentation is being made to the governing board. I would assume that Swift Mudd's governing board. And probably up in Zephyr Hills. So I'm concerned a little bit about what we as citizens, especially the friends of the Anclot, were concerned about what happens to any development on the Anclot and reviews. And we'd like to have the ability to participate and see what information is being acquired and possibly have some review or input prior to, you know, the finalization of any presentation. But a bigger concern, and I don't know if, from the question, it appears that Pinellas County may have initiated. It seems from the backup that the Swift Mudd initiated and passed it to the county to have them do it. And then Tarpon, being on the Anclot, we have to do a share. My concern, and I haven't gone to Swift Mudd's site to see what the district is planning, because according to what I infer from this, they already have a water management plan for the Anclot and it's like trying to be updated. But my concern is, is you can't take the Anclot River and just look at it as one piece. So where is Pasco in this? Durin, Collin, and Hermione, they had the worst flooding on the Anclot River right up on, by where the Madison ranches were, you know, they were wanting to put that big development in off of fifty-four. So I don't know, is Pasco involved or any other counties or that are also along the Anclot River involved? Because to me, what happens upstream affects us downstream. So I would hope they do a little more holistic approach to that. And that would be just my comment on that item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments on this item? I hear none. The chair willing to adjourn the motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have first and second roll call, please.
Mr. Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sarah Penny?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes. We're now going to the item number sixteen, increase bid number sixteen zero zero forty-two dash B dash RS Utility Rehabilitation and Construction. Mr. Licorice?
Again, this is on the special consent because of the amount. And Mr. Robinson, you get a fast update on this?
Yeah, real quick. My name is Bob Robertson, Public Services Program Manager. The item before you is, represents a contract. We actually have two contracts with firms for utility rehab and repair. You authorized a four-hundred-thousand-dollar upper limit to be used between these two contractors back in August. We've used most of that up because we've been busy. So we're asking to increase the upper limit on that contract from four-hundred thousand to eight-hundred thousand, so an additional four-hundred thousand dollars as we continue doing utility rehab work. This is for small to medium-type jobs. Larger jobs, we continue to put out the bid as per normal with plans and facts and everything.
Thank you. The installation of the large pipe that goes to the hospital, that was not included into this, right?
That's correct. That was bid separately.
Okay, thank you. Are there any commission comments? Question? Are there any public comments on this item? Here none. Chair willing to adjourn the motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
We have first and second roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Mayor Alahuzis?
Yes. We are now going to item number seventeen, which is the ordinance two thousand sixteen dash thirteen, Land Development Code, Public Art. This is the first reading. Our city attorney will read the ordinance.
Ordinance two thousand sixteen dash thirteen, an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending sections two eighty-eight through three zero four of Article eighteen of the Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code of the city of Tarpon Springs entitled Public Art Programs to allow greater flexibility in public art committee member qualifications, jury constitution, and city staff support. To clarify, the documents the public art committee must prepare and submit to allow more flexibility in artist selection, to correct verbiage consistency, clarification of definitions, capitalization and punctuation, and Scrivener's errors, and to provide for severability and an effective date. It's the first reading of ordinance two thousand sixteen dash thirteen by title only. The second reading will be held on January twenty-four of two thousand seventeen. The ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on December second, two thousand sixteen.
With that, Heather Earl, we're planning a zoning director and the manager of this particular project. Essentially, what's happening here is this program is about ten years old at this point. And as a result, the public art committee came forward because they were having some issues with staffing their board, meeting the qualifications that are currently in the ordinance. So that was the impetus for this. When they were going through that process, they decided to make the corrections and additions and edits that needed to be made to make this a cleaner, more streamlined document. What I've done here in the staff report is outline all the changes that they have actually made by section. If you have any individual sections, we can talk about, but I'm kinda just gonna go through the highlights. The first section is the definition section where they just clarified and enumerated by adding percentages numerals. So it's easier for folks to understand the percentages that are actually gonna, are actually spelled out in the ordinance. Section two eighty-nine, which is the public art committee, was revise the committee composition, revise the appointment process for the public art committee members, and then revise the commission. City commission is throughout the ordinance, and they basically gave you your proper title, which is the Board of Commissioners throughout the ordinance. Section two ninety, powers and duties of the committee, they revised the city, again, the city commission to read, revised the name of the city departments that have changed over the years, and then clarified their annual reporting requirements. They included renaming of that document. It's now called the one-year plan instead of their annual update. Section two ninety-one, public art juries, they revised the public art committee serving as juries and then enumerated the juror, the number of jurors, and the votes and how votes would be taken by those juries. Section two ninety-two, committee procedures, they added a vice chair, set the month for their elections, removed a section of reimbursement for expenses of members, removed term limits for their committee members, clarified how and when meetings will be called, and changed the, again, changed the name of their annual report, and removed the staggered term language, which had been originally established so that no, during no one year when that board was first established, would they lose too many members. That's why the staggered membership was in, language was in there. Section two ninety-three, removal of members, they revised, again, the Board of Commissioners title. Artist, two ninety-four, artist selection methods, they removed the language for the slide registry provision and then did some Scrivener errors corrections and enumerated percentages from text and numerals. Section two ninety-five, there was no change. Section two ninety-six, art design standards for development and redevelopment, they again enumerated percentages. This is the section of the ordinance that requires developers that have projects going through the development process that are of a certain value to provide a portion, either a public art project or a portion of that amount that's required in the code in a fee and lieu. Section two ninety-eight, removal of the artist selection, I think I already went, removal of the artist selection criteria for the selection of the artists and revised art committee in the public art section. Public two ninety, or section two ninety-nine, public art master plan, there's no change to that section. Section three hundred, appropriation of city capital project funds, revised the name again of the public art master plan, changed references to the annual report to the one-year plan and budget requests, and then revised again the title for the commission. Section three zero one, public art fund, added the public art fee in subsection A, revised city commission again to read the Board of Commissioners and enumerated percentages and numerals, with numerals. numerals. Section 302, Ownership of Artwork, revised the reference to the Public Art Fund and enumerated the percentages in text, with text and numerals. Section 303, approved by Board of Commissioners, revised section title and removed approval of the public art items from the consent agenda. Essentially, that means you'll get full project information when those projects come forward that public art will be bringing forward to the board. Section 303, Appeals, name changes of the city departments, and again enumeration of numeral, with the number of working days. And with that, those are the changes enumerated. If you have specific questions, I'd be glad to go over the content of the ordinance and the changes that are being made.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd like to express my appreciation to the Public Art Committee members for the work that they do and the services they provide to the city. Thank you very much. I do have some questions that I'd like to ask you. Looks like we're relaxing the requirements, because we have a hard time to fill in the Public Art Committee positions. Is that going to reduce the quality and the expertise of the board members?
This board is the appointing board for the members of that Public Art Commission. You receive the resume and application for all of these members, so this board has complete control over those appointees and the quality of those appointees. So provided that we continue to receive the high-quality individuals that we have received in the past, this board would have that opportunity to put those members that they think are most appropriate on that board at the time that vacancies become available.
Thank you. On page four, section 289, B1, it says, "Design Professionals." What's the definition of that? Any design professional can be, that can be an interior design professional, it can be a telecommunications design professional as well?
That is correct.
Maybe we need an explanation for that.
There is no clear definition. It would be any type of design professional as out here, because it's not been, it's not been further defined in the ordinance. That would include interior designers, that would include telecommunications designers or designers of any, of any particular profession.
Yes. I did ask you earlier, and you sent me an email regarding to page four, section 289, four, the powers and duties of the committee to authorize expenditure $50,000 or less to be spent by the public art program. Who authorized that expense? Is that going to be the city manager?
Well, this, the way that this reads, that is one of the duties and powers right now as established in this ordinance. It's not something that was changed. It's established by the Public Art Committee. They would actually do the authorization of that particular expenditure.
I would say the chairperson is going to be authorized to sign that.
The board would do it through, through their vote. It would have to be a vote of the entire board to authorize that currently. That would be how this would work. The chair can't make that, that motion, can maybe make a motion, but you have to have, you know, a majority of the entire board to actually authorize that the way this provision is set out right now.
Another question that I have, actually, it's a recommendation on page seven, section 284B. I think our local artists association should be involved with that process. It should be, we give them a priority before we go outside the state, outside the county, and hire artists to do a different project. I believe that should be included somehow, that we include, we have many talented people here in Tarpon Springs.
That is very true. It's not included currently here.
Not in there.
Where were you, Mayor?
This is on page seven, section 284B.
294B.
I need everybody's input on that.
Yeah, tell me. Are page seven?
Yeah, it's 294B is what he's, what he's talking about.
Yeah, yeah.
I actually went to their last meeting, and I thought that they did look at our residents before going outside of this area, our artists in this area before they go out of there, because that was one of the questions I had.
Yeah, but looking at the criteria doesn't tell you that they have to do that.
So maybe that needs to be addressed.
I think it should be included.
It's not enumerated in the ordinance. If they're doing that by practice, then they're doing that by practice, but it's not something that's currently listed here as their criteria for the basis for their ordinance. It's certainly something that I can bring to their attention.
Recommendation, Mayor?
My recommendation is to, to involve our local artists association to be part of the process also, to give the priority to the local association, to the local artists before. We call, we go out of state and find different artists to be, to hire, to be hired and do the job. And I'd like to ask our city attorney, is that any, any issue with, a legal issue with that?
No. No, it can be done for, if the language can be crafted, it can be done for a second reading.
I'd like to have that on there, if I have consensus on the board.
I support that.
Looks like we have consensus on that.
Okay.
Again, the only restriction, we can't compel them to participate if they don't wish to do that.
No, of course.
It's legal for you to put it in your ordinance.
Thank you. That's all I have. Any other commission comments? Commissioner Slattery?
Thank you. I just have one question. 303, approval of Board of Commissioners. So if there's a piece of art that they want to place in town, I want to make sure that this is spelled out correctly. Does, should the board, the art committee come in front of the board for us to choose the spot where it should go, or they give us three spots, or they give us the ones, the one place they want to put the art, and we approve it? I'm not sure. You understand what I'm saying?
I think I know what you're saying. Let me just read this one real quick.
Come in front of the Board of Commissioners for?
I know where you're going. Let me just, let me just look at this real quick. The public art committee. Selection, acquisition, allocation, display, placement, and location of work, shall we subject to the Board of Commissioners? Basically, what this saying is, all of these enumerated things, the selection, the acquisition, the allocation, the display, the placement, and the location of the works of art are all subject to this board's approval. So they're a recommending body, they're going to rec, have to, the way this was worded, they're going to make a recommendation to you. How that's going to be structured, whether it's going to be one particular location or three locations, that's something that's not enumerated here. That's something that would need to be discussed as part of their procedures that would further define this, on how you want to receive from them the deliverables that they're essentially going to bring you, right? The one, the annual plan, any public art that's going to be selected. But that's basically what that language says there, is you would have ultimate approval. They're going to make a recommendation similar to what Planning and Zoning Board does, right? They make a recommendation to you, but ultimately, this board makes that final decision, same type of thing here. So you would have input into that, and really, you're, we're going to have to provide further definition either here or elsewhere in their procedures to define how you want to receive that.
Any comment on that?
Do you have anything else?
No, I mean, I?
I mean, do you, does that make sense?
That's just taken though, all they did was take out the language about a consent agenda.
That's correct.
That's all they did, so.
It still says that we, that the Board of Commissioners?
You make the decision, they just?
They make a recommendation.
It just appears different on the agenda than it would a consent agenda. So I mean, it can be, you know, can be listed on the agenda any way you want.
All they did was take that language out. It could still probably go on as that.
I don't think it should be a consent agenda item. I think it should be listed as a regular agenda item.
Right.
And that's what this is going to do, because this is going to take it off of your consent. There's no other way to do that, but.
All they did was take out that language about consent agenda. It still comes to you, there's no difference.
And then it comes to us for final.
No difference.
Okay. That's, that's what I need clarification on. Thank you.
Do you have anything? In terms of what the mayor brought up, as far as the selection of the artists, a number of years ago, we did, through procurement, we did for like contractors and competitive bid process, if you're a local contractor and you're bidding on something, you got, I think, like a 5% advantage in terms of points. So as you're going back and looking at that, you may want to look at some of that language that already exists in procurement to kind of reference.
Okay.
We're now going to the public comments on this item. If you have any comments, please come forward. I hear none. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
This is with the additional language to be brought back on the second reading. Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tiar Panney?
Yes.
Mayor LaHoozis?
Yes. We are now going to the item number 18, which is the ordinance 2016-15, that's the application, 16-72, McCuplin Annexation. This is the first reading. I will ask our city attorney to read the ordinance.
Ordinance, excuse me, ordinance 2016-15, an ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, annexing 2.72 acres more or less of real property located on the north side of Keystone Road, approximately 0.4 miles from the intersection of Keystone Road and North Highland Avenue, lying in section eight, township 27 South, range 16 East, providing for findings and providing an effective date. First reading of ordinance 2016-15 by title only, second reading to be held after review of the Department of Economic Opportunity. The ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title on December 2 of 2016. This application is quasi-judicial, and so I'll read the quasi-judicial announcement. I also wish to note that item 19B, ordinance 2016-17, is quasi-judicial, so if you're in the audience for either of those applications and intend to testify before the commission this evening at the appropriate time, I'd ask you to please stand and be sworn. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the commission acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity at such a hearing. It is not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. The commissioners are required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented and apply those findings to previously established criteria contained in the city's code in order to make a legal decision regarding the application. The commission may only consider evidence that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying must give their name and address for the record. All testimony in questioning must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. The city staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant will then have an opportunity to cross-examine the staff. The applicant will present its testimony to witnesses. The city staff will have an opportunity to cross-examine the applicant's witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will be given a chance to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition have concluded, members of the public in support of the application will have the opportunity to speak. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, after which city staff will be given an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary. Finally, the commission will consider the matter. Commissioners may ask questions of witnesses. A motion will be made and a vote will be taken. At this point, I would ask for the commission to disclose any expedite communications on this ordinance or on item 19B, ordinance 2016-17. Seeing none, I'd ask anyone who wishes, again, intends to testify to please stand and be Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
With that, we'll turn it over to Heather.
Okay, this is annexation for approximately 2.7 acres of real property, again, located on the north side of Keystone Road, approximately 0.4 miles from the intersection of Keystone Road and North Highland Avenue. The applicant is Keith McAlpine, and the agent on this project is Hillward Henderson. Mr. Young will not be here, or Mr. Armstrong will not be here tonight. We do have one of his associates here, Katie Cole, who is speaking, be speaking on behalf of the application. The subject property is currently zoned rural residential, or sorry, residential rural, and it has a zoning of agricultural estate, both of which are in the unincorporated portion of Pinellas County. The city does, there is a portion of the city that does, but this property is also owned by the owner, and we'll be talking about that application next. The property contains approximately, again, 2.7 acres, and it is vacant currently. The applicant is requesting an annexation to add the subject parcel to the larger parcel directly north and west. The larger parcel is approximately 67.06 acres. Application 1675 is to accompany the requested annexation and amend the future land use of this parcel from RR, which is residential rural, to residential very low category, and amend the zoning district from AE to agriculture. Review criteria. The property is contiguous to the existing Tarpon Springs municipal limits on the west side. The annexation will not create an enclave. The property is within Pinellas County's wastewater treatment service area and within the potable, the Pinellas County's potable water service area and within the fire protection service area. The applicant will be connecting to the county utility services. Reference to, referenced in the attached letter for Pinellas County's utilities dated October 21, 2016, that should be, essentially stating that there is capacity available to serve a potential project in this area. Okay. Has the owners ascertained that the city is comprehensive as it is, as it applies to the subject property and the density intensity of the proposed use is equal to or lesser than the county's comprehensive plan? Yes, the owner is voluntarily agreeing pursuant to an application filed with the Planning and Zoning Department. The proposed intensity of the property is equal to that addressed in Pinellas County's comprehensive plan. The subject zoning will be agriculture is consistent with our residential very low future land use designation. Are the existing or proposed designations more intensive than those currently in the county's comprehensive plan? The answer to that is yes. The intensities of future land use on the Tarpon Springs comprehensive map and zoning map are, respectively, are consistent, however, this is more intense. Currently, the zoning that's allowed on that particular property is one unit per two acres, where our comprehensive plan does not have that particular density. The lowest density that our comprehensive plan that is has that is corresponding to that density is not exact, it's corresponding, would be the residential very low category, which is a maximum of one unit per acre. So there is a discrepancy between the intensity in the county's current plan designation and our current plan designation. However, this is the lowest intensity designation we have within our comprehensive plan, so therefore, they are determined to be consistent. With that, the technical review team reviewed this project on July 28, 2016, for completeness and conformance with the comprehensive zoning and land use code and comprehensive plan, and had the following contact, comments. All the members expressed that they recommended approval of this project moving forward, or had no comment related to this. Property owners within 200 feet were sent written notification in accordance with section 206, J4 of the City of Tarpon Springs Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code and Chapter 166.04 of the Florida statute. Notice was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times, and the property was posted. Stas has received several comments. As of the date of this report, there were two letters. I've received more, and you will be receiving more testimony tonight. With that, again, at the Planning and Zoning Board level, we had a lot of participation. A lot of those residents are in the audience today, and I'll let them allude and speak to their concerns and comments on this property. Staff is recommending approval of the request for annexation along with the accompanying future land use and rezoning application 1675. The Planning and Zoning Board heard testimony on December 19, 2016, hearing for the application. Several residents spoke in opposition of the annexation. The residents described the past and present conditions of the neighborhood surrounding the proposed annexation. The Planning and Zoning Board members agreed that the comments and concerns would be more relevant during the site planning process. The main concerns the residents had are the density, the type of housing to be constructed, flooding, stormwater management issues, the condition of North Highland Avenue, and which jurisdiction is responsible for maintenance of North Highland Avenue. The Planning and Zoning Board unanimously recommended approval of this annexation, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
And does the applicant wish to present tonight?
Good afternoon, good evening. Katie Cole with the law firm of Hillward Henderson, representing the applicant, 600 Cleveland Street, Suite 800 Clearwater, Florida, and I have been sworn in. We concur with the staff report and the evidence included therein by your professional staff showing that it meets the criteria of annexation. As you may be aware, the balance of my client's property was annexed into the city in the mid-2000s. This property was subsequently acquired by he and his family. Mr. McAlpine passed away, and his children are attempting to sort out his affairs and get all of this property ownership into common ownership, into have consistent land use and zoning, and therefore has requested that this piece also be annexed into the city of Tarpon Springs. Along with that, your code states that if there is not a directly commensurate land use and zoning category from county to city, as is the case in this situation, that you must also actually go through the land use and zoning amendment process. That's the reason we have a second agenda item relative to this. Generally. Generally, with annexations, the annexation, the land use and zoning is simply applied to the parcel as part of the annexation ordinance, but because there is not a correlating land use and zoning category in the City of Tarpon Springs comprehensive plan or zoning code, it did necessitate the extra step of having a specific ordinance read for that and this additional process. I do have John Landon, a professional engineer here, who can also offer testimony, but at this point, with respect to the annexation and the quasi judicial hearing that we're in now, will reserve any other time for closing. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Please come forward, state your name, and you'll be given four minutes.
We did submit a letter, which should be part of your records, at the zoning board meeting on December 19 of 2016, addressing some of our concerns regarding tonight's We believe this letter is part of your records, but we would like it to add an addendum letter tonight. And if I may, for convenience, refer to the parcel number in question on application 1672 by the last four digits of 0101, instead of having to recite all 18 digits. We listen very intently to the zoning and land use descriptions being proposed for the parcels under consideration, and we admit to being thoroughly confused. Application number 1672 is to annex and rezone parcel 0101. This parcel will then, we understand, be zoned as agricultural, and I heard at one point, allowing 1.4 homes per acre. I didn't hear that tonight, so my letter may be wrong. Instead of AE agricultural estates, what allows only one home per two acres, which is what our zoning is. But, application 1675 also includes parcel 0101, just rezoned as agricultural, yet the application says it is located in the residential rural land use, but that is also being amended to residential very low, along with the other three parcels on the application. We also clipped a newspaper legal notice for application number 1621 and ordinance 2017-02 upcoming on January 23rd and 24th of 2017, which would further amend and/or revise the residential very low of zero to one units per gross acre. If approved, it appears this land use category could be modified at will. At this point, we have parcel 0101 going from agricultural estates of one unit per two acres to agriculture of 1.4 units per acre, to rural land use, to residential very low of one unit per acre. And if passed, the proposed amended for application 1621 and ordinance 201702 on January 23rd and 24th of 2017 could conceivably modify the residential very low zoning to almost anything. This is very disturbing. We would also like to inquire into the transference of density from wetlands to buildable land. Is there any limit per acre for wetlands allowance? Can there be multiple dwellings per acre because of it? Are we looking at one unit per acre or five plus per acre? Nancy McAmis brought up traffic at the zoning board meeting, and it is a nightmare. There is no left turn for George Street, or to make a U-turn to reach our driveway, or our neighbor's driveway, or the driveway for parcel 0101. It is very dangerous, especially having to be cognizant of not only road traffic, but also the Pinellas Trail in both directions. You take your life in your hand making that turn into your driveway. We understand that commercialers must follow the rules of law, but aren't we all covered by these same laws? We thought zoning ordinances were for our protection. We believe we're in a very precarious situation, and hope the commissioners will consider the neighbors and adjacent properties, and I thank you for listening.
All right, Mark Washburn, 124 East Lake Drive in Tarpon Springs. I am a couple blocks over from this property. First, I wanted to mention that I'm extremely disappointed when there's a rezoning request or any change of land use with Pinellas County, they notify all the homeowners within half a mile of where that's going to happen. 200 feet is a complete and utter joke. That may work in a dense city, but basically, what, you sent two letters, one to somebody on George Street and one across the street? I didn't know about this until last week. I had no idea. I missed the planning and zoning meeting. Nobody on our street was informed. Probably the upper George Street, nobody was informed, and everybody in the backside on Highland weren't informed. So basically, the entire public that's neighbor to that property has no idea this is going on. So that's the first thing. The second thing I want to mention is when I called about the density increase, which is the most concerning portion. The McAlpine family has been basically using this property as a money pit. They built the mansion, and when they wanted to make some money, they had what's called the Tarpon Ridge. Now, on most maps, it's still called the Tarpon Ridge, but one-third of the Tarpon Ridge has been dug out and removed and sold for money. So essentially, this is all a money play. We know the property owner is selling the property, the for-sale signs have been up for a while, and they want to turn it into whatever money they can make. Right now, they're looking at 70 condo condos. 70 units for that property is way too dense. So when I called Planning and Zoning, and they told me, well, we have no choice. All we have is one acre density. That's the maximum Tarpon Springs City has. Well, you have another choice. You can create another density of one unit per two acres to match what Pinellas County has and all of the surrounding properties have. That would make sense to me, that would still allow the landowner to sell the property and put 35 units up. If we have to deal with 35 townhomes or condos, traffic's going to be rough. But 70, that's just impossible. There's no way they can put that many cars on the road every day on Highland or Keystone or both. So please vote to deny this application for both the A and the B. Thank you.
Brief reminder to the commission that you're determining annexation, whether those criteria are met under 208.00G at this moment. Are there any additional members of the public wishing to speak in opposition?
Barbara McAluso, 1310 East Lake Drive. I'm also several streets away, but affected by this because of the traffic that it's going to generate. And also, I want to agree with Mark, who just spoke. I personally know Mr. McAlpine, who passed away, and I actually was recommended to him that he put a fish pond in there if he wanted to continue digging, which he did, and supplied the land to redo, he supplied the dirt, actually, to redo the road, to redo Keystone Road. But it is being used to make money for this family without any regard to the neighbors whatsoever. And they're going to take our neighborhood, that's a nice, quiet neighborhood, and turn it into what we have no idea that it's going to be. We've all, I've been there 22 years, and I bought it back there because it was one house per two acres. And now we're faced with, we don't know what type of building, we don't know what type of people are going to be there, we don't know if there's going to be a wall separating Highland Avenue from this development, which is totally out of character with the entire neighborhood, and it just doesn't work for the neighborhood whatsoever.
Ma'am, I apologize. Did you put your name and address on the record, please? I may have missed it.
Barbara, I did. Barbara McAluso, 1310 East Lake Drive, Tarpon Springs.
I appreciate that. I missed you saying that. Are there additional members of the public wishing to speak in opposition?
As a board member, I would ask myself, why is it they can't do this with the county? Is it because the county wouldn't let them? I'd like Mr. Vaughn maybe to give up and give a little more history, but I remember this property from a while back. Part of the reason he came to the city was because he couldn't do what he wanted with the county. And then, we had a nice agreement worked out, put in buffer trees, and had certain things he was supposed to do to buffer the other properties. I remember going out to Mr. Vaughn's years or so later. None of those trees took, half of them were dead, and they weren't even properly planted. And then, a few years after that, came in here with a local attorney, wanted, what was that, a dredging permit? Wanted to dredge more out of the pond, get more dirt out, sell more dirt. We need dirt, we need to build roads, build all these things we want to build. Let's tear up some more trees. So, you're in a position here of, why do you really have to do this? Are you looking at it, well, we'll get a few more tax dollars because that'll be in the city? Well, I have to, and Ms. Cole is quite qualified to point out maybe certain nuances of the law, but I would like to point out testimony of your Planning and Zoning Director with regards to item 3C, whether the existing or proposed designations are more intense. I don't see anywhere in the analysis, the first word, yes. However, Heather did say, yes, the proposed densities are higher. So you're contradicting verbally what you're not saying in the report. Then you say, well, it's consistent because it's the closest. Closest only counts in horseshoes. Only counts in horseshoes, and maybe a few other things. So I would say it is within your power. If nothing else, defer it, and maybe look at Mr. Washburn's suggestion of maybe creating another zoning category to fit this. But before you proceed, I think you need to go back, have the clerk pull some of the old minutes, some of the old files from the previous issues, take a look at that, because they do have bearing and they can be placed into the record. But I would say at this point, until you have more knowledge about what the issues are going out there, at a minimum, you should defer it, if not deny it. Thank you.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. Peter's right, you have the opportunity to just let this one go. You do not have to do this. I mean, it's just the clearest case of somebody skirting the law. They couldn't do what they wanted to do with the county, so they found another way. Doubling density, and then potentially astronomically increasing the density and intensity. They just expanded that road. They're going to have to expand it again. You get condos in there. I mean, the traffic alone is enough for you to say no to this thing. You've already heard the other arguments. This is just not, you know, don't feed into this. Don't play into their hands and get played. It's just something you don't have to do. You can say no, make them go back to the county and do it right, or, as Mark Washburn stated, say, okay, well, annex it, but you can only put one residence for two acres. See if they still want to go for it. Thank you.
Are there any more members of the public wishing to speak in opposition? At this time, we'll take members of the public wishing to speak in support of the Seeing none, does the applicant wish to make a closing statement?
of a very small piece of property. This is the entirety of Mr. McAlpine's family's ownership, 90% of which is already in the city of Tarpon Springs. This small portion outlined in red, which is highlighted in your staff report, is the piece which is being proposed to be annexed today with this agenda item. And consistent with the criteria in 2008.00 in your code, it meets each of the criteria of the annexation. The land use and zoning assigned to the parcels are separate agenda items, and you'll hear those next, but with respect to the annexation, we respectfully request your support of the inclusion of this small remnant piece of property into the municipal boundaries of the city of Tarpon, so the owner can have consolidated ownership with one in one jurisdiction. Thank you.
Staff wish to make a closing statement?
Not at this time, but I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I have some questions that I'd like to ask you in regards to the density. The future use that we have in Tarpon Springs is residential very low, which is one acre, but the zoning is 1.4. There's a confusion here. Which zoning we actually, what density we actually found?
Okay, your comprehensive plan lays out the density that is allowed, the maximum density that's allowed for development. In the particular case of very residential very low and agriculture, there is a discrepancy when you have an agricultural piece of property, the agricultural zoning district allows for up to 1.4 units per acre. However, that is restricted by what, by the future land use that's been assigned to that parcel. So in this particular case, going to residential very low gives you a maximum of density of development of one unit per acre. The 1.4 is out of the question because it's incompatible with the maximum density that's allowed by your land use plan, which is your comprehensive master plan. So your residential very low category in this case is the controlling density, which is a maximum of one unit per acre.
Listening to the people that just spoke, there's a question, why the future use of the county is so different than one from Tarpon Springs?
We are consistent with the currently adopted countywide plan that was adopted in 2016. The application 1621 that was referenced is your corrective adoptive ordinance to make the changes to that land use category, the residential very low category, that basically we are going to establish that category and make it consistent with the countywide plan, because when we made our changes, the county after the fact changed the countywide plan before they adopted it to make your thresholds not match what was previously, what had been previously established for very low categories. So that is what that correction is for. It does not change the density, it changes the acreage thresholds. It does not change the density. It changes the acreage thresholds for what's allowed on those particular properties. The reason why there's a difference here and the reason what's happening with this application, why there's two parts to it. In order for you to annex a piece of property and you need to, or you should, assign the future land use category and the zoning category if you don't have corresponding categories in your code, in your master plan. You currently do not have a corresponding residential, rural residential in your comprehensive plan. As a result, the most closely associated category is the residential very low category, which is why the future land use amendment is part of this application, which will be discussed in the next application. The rezoning at the same time needs to be consistent and compatible with residential very low. The closest category that you have is your agricultural zoning, which will be controlled by whatever that future land use category's density is. So that is the reason why the process is the way the process is.
Stay with the density. The property has wetlands and transfers of densities are allowed. Do we know actually what the actual density will be?
The density across the entire parcel will be one unit per acre at the maximum. Now, there are some issues with where you will actually transfer that density to because you have wetlands and you can't establish basically one unit per acre on that total density. The gross density will allow for up to sixty nine point zero six acres. I think that that's what it is. It will allow for a density of one unit per acre, not seventy units, sixty nine point a portion. Okay, that's, you round down, so they're going to get sixty nine units. That being the case over the course of that entire property, wherever there are wetlands, you cannot build within the wetlands. The state of Florida, in the majority of the time, even if we isolate the wetlands, will not provide a permit. There are provisions in your countywide plan where your comprehensive plan is consistent to allow for a transfer of density. Again, that transfer density is controlled by this board at the time of site planning. So there is no guarantee that the density that is associated with those wetlands, that this board will support that density being transferred. That is a separate application as part of the site planning process. So while they can get a maximum density under these two applications of the sixty nine units and a little bit more, that's going to be controlled by this density, this board, what you finally adopt when you go through the site planning process. So you will determine as a board collectively what wetland density, if any, that you want to transfer elsewhere on that site. And you will determine as part of that site planning process where it goes on site, right? Whether it goes in one particular area. As far as condos being on this property, agricultural zoning, which is in your packet, and actually for the next project, tells you and outlines the types of housing that you're actually allowed to create there, okay? It doesn't allow for the same type of density. You're not putting multifamily units on this property. You're putting single-family residential detached structures. That is what you're going to be putting on this property because that is what is allowed under your agricultural zoning at this particular point. Now, that doesn't mean that the density can't be moved to another site so that the individual lots that are created are less than an acre because, again, you're doing the net density over the total acreage. But this board is going to control for those acres that are actually in wetlands, whether or not you're going to allow them to transfer that density elsewhere on site. Otherwise, they're going to be limited to whatever acreage, okay, is uplands that they can build on, whatever that number is. And that's basically a moving target. It'll be established through a jurisdictional wetland boundary survey, which the applicant has done one now, but it will be updated before this project goes forward as part of site planning process. It's one of the things we require because wetlands move. Boundaries move over time. It's not a static, it's not a static representation. Our maps have static representations of the fact that there's wetlands on there, but the actual defined boundaries and acreage changes over time.
My next question is, we, the city of Tarpon Springs, we do not have any public facilities available to serve that area there.
That is correct.
By the county.
That is correct.
Are we going to be obligated later to provide facilities for them?
Only if you're...
The county decides to stop or disconnect the facilities, that means we have to provide that?
The county has provided a letter guaranteeing at this point that they have capacity available. If they change their mind, we currently do not have in our plans to extend lines out there. So at this particular point, we don't have lines in the area that we're planning to serve that property. However, if the county was to remove their approval of those future capacities for that property, at that time, the applicant would be out at the time of site planning to provide us some other alternative, whatever that alternative might be. They would have to provide that and prove that. It's part of the concurrency requirements that are part of your site planning process. So whether the county is going to serve it or not today, when we get to the site plan, whatever that site plan's going to look like, we're going to be getting a new letter from them that provides us guarantees with the capacities that they have, that they have available utilities. And at that time, they will give their commitment to connect to this project.
Thank you. Mr. Licurs, do we have the capability to provide service for the police and fire?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah. That's all I have at this time. Commissioner Panther?
Yes, thank you. So just for my benefit, when the gentleman was talking, that was speaking about having what he perceived as the danger of having condos on this. Could you explain that again as far as you mentioned there's wetlands on the property and transferring the density? Explain if they could build condos there and also, just to clarify, I mean, you know, if this all gets approved tonight, whatever would we develop, they would have to come through the normal site planning process, that anything else would. Approving this tonight would automatically grant the ability for someone to go in there and just develop it.
Okay, so let me take the first part of that first. You are completely correct, Commissioner. You will have, anybody potentially coming in and buying this property, because the applicant is probably not the end user. They're probably going to market this property and sell it to someone else. Whoever that end user is going to be is, they're going to have to come through our normal process. TRC, Planning and Zoning Board approval, working with my department, making sure in this case, they're going to have to coordinate with Pinellas County because the utility side is provided by Pinellas County. And then ultimately, when that, we deem that ready to move forward to this board, you will make the ultimate decision. That's going to have a couple of different components. It's going to have a site plan component, and it's going to have a transfer of density agreement, which you saw last year, we brought one forward to you for another project, okay? Essentially, this board, as part of that night that when we do the approval, we include that recommendation for that transfer development, whatever it looks like. This board ultimately will determine what that density is that you allow to be transferred. If you want a one-to-one transfer, as long as it's supported by the countywide rules and your comprehensive plan, you're allowed to do it. If you want to do something less than that or provide no transfer development, that ultimately rests with you, okay? So what that looks like in reality is the wetland acreage, whatever that number is, okay? And it's, again, a moving target. Whatever that number is, at the time that we come for site plan approval, we will establish the boundary line. We'll get the acreage. Once we have the acreage, we will present all that information to you. Again, the type of housing is bound by what's allowed in the agricultural district, provided you approve this application and the subsequent applications that are going to come before you tonight. If you don't approve any of that, then nothing changes, okay? This property, again, is a smaller piece of the larger. The wetlands are on the larger piece. So we're talking about wetlands that aren't on this property, but are on the subsequent applications coming forward to you. Did I get all the parts?
It did. And you don't have to speak on this if you can or don't want to. Is there any validity to the claim that this was tried on the county's end and they weren't successful, so that coming here?
That I do not know. At this particular point, I have just worked with the applicant on the application that they've brought forward to us. I can tell you the reason why they're bringing it forward is so that they have a secondary connection point for the larger project that's going to develop here, because currently their only connection is on Highland. If they don't have a piece on Keystone, they can't make that connection. This is the only portion of that property that would touch the Keystone area, which would give them an access or a drive off of that. Now, whether that's going to be allowed, that's, again, a site planning issue that's going to be coordinated with Pinellas County because we do not control Keystone and what gets connected to Keystone. That's controlled by the countywide plan and the county.
Thank you. I sat here when, I remember Mr. and Mrs. Vaughn here way back. I don't know what year that was, but when the family had come before us previously about their property, and they did a lot of dredging of the land and all. And I know I need to keep that out of my decision here tonight. And I need to base my decisions on competent and substantial evidence, but my question is, can we, and it was mentioned, the county now has one unit per two acres, can we, as a zoning category, can we defer this and change the zoning? Or can we deny the application based on zoning is not consistent with the county?
I think we're talking about the wrong application to begin with. Again, we're talking about an annexation ordinance at present. My answer to your question, so we don't need to ask it again, is I would be really concerned about going back in response to an application and changing the zoning as a matter of spot zoning. You know, the applicant has submitted an application to us, contingent on the annexation. I'd be concerned about going back and subsequently changing zoning categories to deal with a particular application.
And, okay, when it comes to, okay, this is just annexation, when it comes to traffic, is that, does that have bearing on this application?
No.
So if we wanted to deny or defer this application for annexation, what are some of the criteria that we could do?
You don't really have criteria to defer. I would think that you would want to, I think you would need to make a determination, and I would advise you to make a determination and a motion to defer that you don't have sufficient evidence or information probative of one or more of the three criteria that are applicable to the annexation application, two oh eight point zero zero G one, two, or three. I don't, I'm hesitant to comment on the quantity or quality of the evidence, but I would advise you that if you're going to defer, you're going to need to determine and make a specific determination as to what evidence you believe would assist you in coming to a final determination on the application at a future date.
Okay, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Tara Panney?
Thank you. Mr. Turner, did I miss something? Are we taking eighteen and nineteen as one item, or are we just on eighteen?
No, you're simply on eighteen. I mean, they're related, of course, but, you know, the criteria are different.
Sure. So because we're just on eighteen, and it's just about the annexation at this point, I'll hold some comments, although I will tell you, as members of the public who are here tonight in opposition to it, I'm sensitive to your concerns. However, this particular item on the agenda is not necessarily the one to, a site plan approval is really where you need to come back and voice your concerns as it relates to everything, as it relates to traffic, where the density is going to be, et cetera, et cetera. So because we're just on the annexation at this point, and I do feel that if you consider this project as a whole moving forward, aside from just the annexation, it's better to have that second access point onto Keystone Road versus just Highland Road or Highland Avenue. I think we should consider just eighteen tonight, or consider eighteen now, and then move down the line to the zoning, and then consequently, the majority of your concerns will be addressed at site plan, which I know you've been told before, and trust me, that day will come. But it sounds like because of the nature of this application, the site plan review process will be lengthy, and potentially, the majority of your concerns will be addressed at that point. So for now, I think it's best for the board to simply consider the annexation. Thank you.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes, I have some concerns, looking at our backup and the residents who spoke today. It seems that North Highland is private, from what I've read, and they're filling their own potholes. I have concerns about what it would cost the city to add services to that area. And just, it's sixty nine acres approximately, that small section?
No.
No, how much?
What's part of the annexation is two point seven two acres, which is shown in red on the diagrams in the backup.
Okay, because I was looking at your one per acre units.
Yeah, and again, that's going to be looking at the larger because we're dealing with the other application.
Oh, okay, I see. Because I thought, how in the world can you put seventy condo units on a small parcel? But I do have some concerns about this application and moving forward with the annexation.
All right, thank you. Since we don't have any more comments, so I need a motion to, we'll entertain a motion for the right.
Motion to approve.
I have first and second roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
No.
Commissioner Seaver?
No.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tara Panney?
Yes.
Mayor Lahozas?
Yes.
We're now going to nineteen A.
Yeah. Heather, do you want to do nineteen A and B together? I mean, they're present, okay.
That was the one we do together.
All right, yes, ma'am. All right, first we have in nineteen A, ordinance twenty sixteen dash sixteen, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, admitting the future land use map for approximately sixty nine point seven eight acres of property located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Keystone Road and North Highland Avenue, app sixteen dash seventy five, from RR Residential Rural District to RVL Residential Very Low, and P Preservation, providing for findings and providing an effective date. That's first reading of ordinance twenty sixteen dash sixteen, by title only. The second reading will be held after review by the Department of Economic Opportunity. Ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on December two of twenty sixteen. Item nineteen B is ordinance twenty sixteen dash seventeen, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, admitting the official zoning map of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, for approximately two point seven two acres of property located on the northeast corner of the intersection of Keystone Road and North Highland Avenue, app sixteen dash seventy five, from Pinellas County zoning designation AE Agricultural Estate Residential District to A Agriculture, providing for findings and providing an effective date. It's first reading of ordinance twenty sixteen dash seventeen by title only. Second reading will be held after review by the Department of Economic Opportunity. The ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on November four of twenty sixteen. I want to note for the commission that item nineteen B is quasi-adjudicial. We have already given the announcement and sworn the witnesses. Item nineteen A, the future land use map amendment is legislative. Staff is going to present them together, but again, we'll be taking evidence as we did previously. They'll, of course, need separate votes.
Again, Heather, you're planning and zoning director, staff to this application. This particular, the reason why these are coming together is because they're completely interrelated. In the last application, you annexed in that two point seven two acres. You need to establish a zoning district and a future land use as part of that, so that's why that piece is included. The annexation just brings in that piece, but because the intensities are different in the county plan than they are in our plan, we need to establish the zoning district. So that's included, and that's what's part of the zoning amendment. So that is what's covered in ordinance two thousand sixteen seventeen B. The land that's covered in the future land use that we're addressing in ordinance two thousand sixteen sixteen is the entire sixty nine point seven eight acres. That includes the two point seven two acres that you just agreed to annex in, okay? What's going to happen with the future land use amendment, I'll take that first, is that we're going to basically change the existing future land use, which is RR or Rural Residential, to Residential Very Low and Preservation. A portion of this is going into Preservation. A portion of it's already in Preservation because, again, there are wetlands on the property. We need to make sure that those wetlands that are on the property are in the corrective zoning district to preserve them in perpetuity. So that is why you're seeing the P as part of this request. With that, the applicant is requesting the annexation of the seven point two acres, more or less, of property and adding that annexed land into the existing sixty seven point zero acre parcel, which gives you, again, that total acreage of sixty nine seventy eight. With that, the subject property will then be rezoned to agricultural from what currently is agricultural estate, which we've established, I think, the density is at this point. If we have further questions, I can try to clarify that for you again. The entire sixty seven requires the future land use change. Because of the current, because of the current future land use element of the comprehensive plan does not have a category for the Rural Residential, or Residential Rural District. As a result, our most appropriate category that we have is the residential very low category. And that is consistent with the countywide residential very low category that was currently established as part of the countywide plan back in two thousand sixteen. Review criteria. What I've provided here in, in here is the residential very low criteria, what's allowed, the types of thresholds that are there currently in your code. Now, understand that we are currently in the process, in the next, in the next set of meetings at the end of the month, of starting to adopt the residential very low category changes. To make it consistent with the countywide plan that we started earlier in the year, okay? That's something that will be coming forward. The only thing that changes is not the density, it's the thresholds related to the acreage alternate uses that are there. Single-family residential will not be impacted by the changes that are being proposed, and again, they're being proposed because the countywide rules changed. With that, the exist, again, the existing plan category of preservation, those lands that are going into preservation are the lands that were established as of today's date. On the existing maps for their. For their jurisdictional wetland boundaries. That is what we're establishing in preservation at this particular time. Again, the preservation densities, intensities are listed there. They are not going to be impacted. Analysis. The subject property is already within that residential very low category on the countywide plan, therefore, no countywide land use amendment is required for the sixty-nine point seven acre, acre parcel. Currently, they have, it has a future land use of RR, and the excerpt for the Pinellas County Comprehensive Plan for the residential rural designation is attached to this report. Based on this description, the current land use is consistent with the city's residential very low category, however, the densities, intensities are different, which is why you're going through this process to establish those densities, intensities. The wetland areas are being protected by amending the, amending the preservation, future land use category areas to include those areas that are wetland areas. Review criteria for the zoning amendment. Pursuant to the future land use amendment for the residential very low and preservation, agricultural zoning district is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. The development of the property under the A zoning designation will require a site plan to be approved by resolution at a later date by the Board of, by the Board of Commissioners. What I would amend to this section is any transfer development agreement would happen at the same time. That would have to happen coinciding with your site planning process because they're intertwined. Again, available uses to which the property may be put are appropriate to the property in question and are compatible with the existing and planned uses in the area. The surrounding area on the north side is Keystone Road is developed predominantly with large rural, large lot rural residential and agricultural uses. The proposed uses allowed in the residential very low category and agriculture district are consistent with the existing and future land use patterns in the area. Again, condos and townhomes and attached homes are not allowed as part of, in your agricultural district. What is allowed is single-family detached only. Let me say that again, single-family detached only. Again, the amendment shall provide for an efficient and orderly development considering the impacts upon growth patterns and the cost to the city to provide public facilities. The utilities for the parcel will be provided by Pinellas County, attached to the letter provided by Pinellas County Utilities. Stating that utilities are available in the area and the proposed annexation and subsequent land use change and rezoning will further ensure orderly growth allowing for access along both North Highland Avenue and Keystone Road. The amendment will not adversely impact nor exceed the capacity or fiscal ability of the city to provide public facilities, including transportation, water, sewer, solid waste, drainage, recreation, education. Fire protection, library services, and other similar facilities. Compliance with the adopted level of service standards can demonstrate, can be demonstrated if necessary. The amendment, if approved, will not negatively impact the provision of public services. The technical review team reviewed this application on July twenty-eighth, two thousand and sixteen, and they provided their comments. All of the technical review team agreed to move this project forward and, and recommended approval with most of them having no comment. Public correspondence. The project owners within two hundred feet were sent the written notification in accordance with two zero six J four of the city's, of Tarpon Springs Comprehensive Zoning and Land Development Code. Chap, and chapter one sixty-six point zero four Florida statute notice for, notice was advertised in the Tampa Bay Times and the property was posted. Staff, again, this, this is a little outdated because we've received correspondence since then, but staff has received questions and comments from the public on this application by phone. Two letters, there's been additional letters that are in your packet of objection for the project have been included in the backup, and the, and the first was provided by, to the Planning and Zoning. Board at the hearing and entered into the record at that hearing, and the second letter was part of the residential presentation, which was made by Ms. Vaughn at the Planning and Zoning hearing. And again, you've now received two other additional pieces of correspondence, which are part of your backup. Staff is recommending approval of the following. The future land use, residential very low category and preservation category for sixty-nine point seven acres as outlined in ordinance two thousand sixteen sixteen. Zoning, agricultural district for two point seven acres as outlined in ordinance two thousand sixteen seventeen. The Planning and Zoning Board heard testimony at the December nineteenth, two thousand sixteen hearing for this application. Several residents spoke in opposition to the rezoning and land use amendment. The residents described the past conditions of, of the neighboring, neighborhood surrounding the proposed rezone and land use amendment. The Planning and Zoning Board members agreed that the comments and concerns would be more relevant during the site planning process. The main concerns the residents had are the density, the type of housing to be constructed, flooding, stormwater management issues, the conditions of North Highland Avenue. Which jurisdiction is responsible for maintenance of North Highland Avenue? The Planning and Zoning Board voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning. One member voted no to the land use amendments based on concerns about density. And with that, I can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Any, any questions?
Vice Mayor Tarrapany.
Thank you. Heather, did you say that with the residential very low, the preservation, or in the preservation, the agriculture, that you can build a condo?
No.
So you cannot?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any issue with concurrency?
There is not currently any issue with concurrency as established with the densities that, intensities that are allowed under the land uses that you're being, you're basically being requested to rezon into.
And at the site plan review meeting, there will be traffic analysis?
At the, at the site plan, you'll, you'll have to meet, they'll have to prove all of the level of services that are required by your comprehensive plan, including traffic. However, traffic will be somewhat amended to a mobility analysis. It won't just be a traffic analysis, traffic will be included, but there's a, we're taking a more holistic approach here in the county. To looking at all modes of transportation as part of this. The majority of the impact here, again, will be on the transportation system because of where it's located.
So the answer is more or less?
Correct, yes, more or less.
Traffic analysis?
More or less.
Which would relate to concurrency?
Correct.
Okay. So in regard to some of the concerns with flooding and stormwater management, all of those would be addressed and permits would be applied to and obtained through other governmental agencies other than the city of Tarpon Springs?
That is correct.
Building streets is the same thing?
That is correct.
So if somebody wanted to build a condo there, they could apply for a rezoning, right?
They could come through this process, yes, and apply for a rezoning.
This is not the case.
That is not the case right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commission Seaver.
Yes. So I do still have issues with the traffic. The county zoning, do I understand that you're saying that that's going to be changing? There's something changing in the county zoning in the next few weeks?
Our zoning district for, and it's not the zoning district, it's the future land use district of residential very low. You'll be seeing an amendment to that to amend the threshold so it can be consistent with the countywide rules.
Okay. And then the traffic study will be done at some future point?
At the time of site, at, at site planning, correct?
I, I, I feel that we're not ready to go forward with this until that's done. I'll have to say I have concerns with this.
Yes, thank you. Most of my questions were answered from a vice mayor. And then to the residents here tonight that are, that are opposed to these, this, this, this series, this series of applications, I can sympathize. But I think it was correctly mentioned that your involvement will be key and most influential in, in any site planning process. While we all would love to live next to, next, next, and next, 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 next properties that we don't own and have them preserved. Because we obviously, we would prefer to have it vacant, that, that can always happen. But you can definitely have a say and, and have a strong influence in, 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 in the site planning process. I've seen it before. You can review the footage from, 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 from all the meetings with the, with, with the Tarpon Turtle. And the success that the surrounding neighbors got with being involved in that, in, in that site plan process. So I do encourage those that are, that are, that are concerned tonight, your, your, your concerns are, are valid. And I would stay involved and make sure you, you, you are there in the site planning process. Thank you.
Thank you, Commission Slattery.
Thank you. Yes, I still have concerns about this application. And yeah, any, anybody can come, we can go through site plan and anybody can come back through and apply rezoning of condos. So it can happen at, at any time. So my concerns, I'll just, are based on density and traffic. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. I have no con, I, I have no questions, but I have a comment.
We, we still, we have the application, the applicant has an opportunity to speak as well. We still have a quas. I'm sorry? Oh, please, please do.
Thank you. The reason, what I thought was the right thing to do to annex the piece of property on the front, which is. By Keystone Road, the two point seven two acres is because by having another access to this large property, which is sixty-nine point seven eight acres. All this housing having other access to the Keystone Road, that's going to help the traffic. And that would take, the, eliminate the traffic, or will help the traffic that you have, that you will have going to. To the Highland, Highland Street. So I think that, I think that will be, I, I think that's going to be helpful. The other thing I like to ensure the, the neighbors there is that I know they're very concerned about the drainage. They have a, a problem because the stormwater at this time is coming in from that large property, the, um, accomplice property, and it goes into the Highland. So I believe that if the property has been developed, now this is going to be helpful with the drainage. And water is not going to be flowing into the Highland. I think that's going to be beneficial as well. We're going to keep an eye on that. We're going to make sure that all these conditions are being addressed during the, the, during the site plan. To make sure that the traffic has been, you know, has been addressed as well as, as the drainage. That's the comments that I have, and I think, I know this is not going to be as easy as, as it sounds to be, because there's going to be a lot of building going to. A lot of houses are going to be built on this property, but the, the large piece, which is a sixty-nine point seven eight, it's already in the city property, in, in the city district. Okay, so that's all I have.
All right, so we're going to hear from the applicant, and a brief reminder to the commission that you are not presently passing on anything to do with condos, homes, or any development on that property. So again, I would ask you, especially as to nineteen B, the amendment to the zoning map, to confine your analysis to the criteria announced in two oh seven point zero three. And with that, Ms. Cole.
Good evening. Katie Cole with Law Firm of Hillward Henderson, six hundred Cleveland Street, Suite eight hundred. This is an interesting application, and I did want to make somewhat of a correction on the semantics of this application. It's being stated that this is a land use plan amendment. And that's the process that your code requires after annexation. But in fact, this is simply the city taking appropriate action to place its own land use and zoning on the property. Because right now, the city land use and zoning is not on this property. The Growth Management Act and Florida Statute one sixty-three thirty-one, forty-one seventy-one specifically states that property annexed into a municipality. Requires, it mu, the municipality must exercise its jurisdiction over property within its boundaries. Your jurisdiction, that means your comp plan and your zoning code should apply to this property. Further, your comprehensive plan states that annexations and associated development permits shall be consistent with the Pinellas Countywide Land Use Plan. As well as the city of Tarpon Springs Comprehensive Plan. And that's in your two thousand nine future land use element of section eight sub A. The applicant is specifically requesting that the commission allow this property. And allow this commission to exercise its jurisdictional authority over the property. That's what this application does. Right now, there is no land use category in the city of Tarpon Springs that is RR Residential Rural. It doesn't exist. So there are no criteria, there is no explanation of what's expected, nothing. There's also no zoning category of agricultural estate, so there are no criteria that your staff could apply to any application that comes before it. The only way for a property owner to have any idea of, of the rights that it can have. Is to have an appropriate land use and zoning as provided by chapter one sixty-three, and that's what this process is. You're being asked to place a land use and zoning on this property. In two thousand four, thereabouts, the owner annexed the majority of his property into the city of Tarpon. I was not representing him at that time. While Mr. Landon has worked on this property on and off since two thousand two. Neither one of us could dig up any files that referenced why that annexation occurred. But the bottom line is, it occurred, and it is your, it is your bear. Those, that property is already yours. You need to understand and take control of regulating what can happen on that property. And that comes by implementing your comprehensive plan and having a comprehensive plan category that's consistent with the countywide rules. Residential very low is the lowest density and intensity comp plan category that you all have. It's the city of Tarpon Springs' lowest available category, least available category. Do you know how many potential purchasers of this property have called our office and asked if we would bring forth an application for a higher density application? Or a land use that would have more density? And the answer was, we know from the countywide rules that one unit per acre is what is appropriate. All of the neighbors of this property who live in unincorporated Pinellas County, the countywide rules also have residential very low on their property. It's the same thing on a countywide basis on this property that is on their property. The countywide rules show that one point zero is appropriate density in this area pursuant to the countywide plan and your comprehensive plan. And we are simply asking for a comp plan category to be assigned, a municipal comp plan category, which is contemplated in the statutes for annexation. And the statutes for the Growth Management Act and your own comprehensive plan. It, it follows the goals, objectives, and policies specifically as to what this commission should do when it annexes property. The fact that it's laid dormant without a municipal comp plan category, I'm not sure how that's happened over the past ten or fifteen years, but apparently it has, so we're here tonight to remedy that. With respect to the zoning, I do have Mr. Landon, who I'd like to have testify. As you know. I know there's been a concern about concurrency or utilities. It's very clear, the county provides the utilities in this area, and this, any development that would occur would have to contract with the county. Or would have to pay, the developer would have to pay to extend those lines. So I would like Mr. Landon with, who's going to recap, I'd ask for him to be accepted as an expert in site planning. He has forty-five years' experience as a professional engineer. He's been familiar with this property since two thousand two. So, Mr. Mayor, I would request that the commission accept him as an expert witness.
Do you have a resume or CV for Mr. Landon?
I don't have a printed resume, but I'll ask him specific questions to allow for that, please.
Thank you.
Could you recap your educational background and your licensing requirements?
University of South Florida. Civil engineer, forty-five years' experience in the field, professional engineer for at least forty years. And practiced primarily in Pinellas County. Been involved with this property since probably about two thousand and two.
And approximately how many site plans and zoning amendments and zoning applications have you been involved with in the past forty-five years?
This is a guess, but hun, hundreds of site plans and zoning applications, possibly below a hundred, yeah.
With that experience, we would ask that he be tendered as an expert.
Go ahead. All right. The, the board will consider his qualifications as they see fit, obviously.
All right. All right. And you want me to testify, I guess, on the water and sewer aspect?
Water and sewer.
Yeah, basically, we have a letter, I thought that was in the record, from Santa McDonald, who was the county utilities engineer. And they have capacity for water and sewer. Now, Tarpon won't be providing anything, whoever the new developer is, will be providing all the means to get to that water and sewer. So it shouldn't be a burden on the city's system. I guess that's the main point you wanted to get at.
Will the city have to pay for any utilities to be connected to the system?
They should not. And the applicant, or the developer, probably will pay a surcharge, since the property is not in the county. They routinely charge, I think about 15% more as a monthly charge for providing those services. It's routine.
Thank you. With respect to the site plan issues that have been raised, the neighbor spoke about the wetlands, the clustering of density, the traffic, and stormwater. Each of those items are addressed in your code with respect to site plans. So at this stage, this is simply applying a municipal land use category and municipal zoning category, both of which are the least dense available in your code that would provide and limit development to single-family homes. And with that, we would respectfully request your approval, and I'll reserve any other time to respond to the comments that are forthcoming.
Thank you. Are there members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to these applications, either 19A or 19B? Please approach the podium, we've got four minutes.
Farrell Vaughn, 2271 Keystone Road, Tarpon Springs, Florida. I'm getting even more confused, because by annexing that 2.72 acres, it does alter the environment. We all had to have two acres to build, not one, 1.4, or a transfer of wetlands to maybe two, three, four, five, whatever comes down the road. I'm sorry, but we had to have two acres, period, to build our homes. Our property line is directly adjacent to this. All right, and I'm amazed Mr. Landon does not recall when you annexed the rest of Mr. McAlpin's property, because we fought this at Pinellas County when he wanted to dredge. We fought it hard, we spent thousands of dollars, because we knew what it would do to our home. And a lot of this is in the previous letter I wrote, which is part of your packet, I believe, to the zoning board. We went through a great deal of loss because of his dredging. His geologist came before the City of Tarpon, and it's all in Tarpon records, and pointed out that there were voids, could be sinkholes, that there was this, that, the other, enough to terrify the wits out of me. All right, but in my letter, I pointed out to you, it caused egregious aggravation, property damage and loss to us. The wet, slimy, filthy sand and rock particles coated our home. The county gave him a 200-foot setback, he didn't like it. It wasn't enough sand. So he annexed into the city. He received a 50-foot setback. We couldn't bite it anymore, we couldn't throw any more money at it. This stuff infiltrated our air systems, permeated our entire house. Many items had to be discarded, including custom shutters or anal rugs, and we lost two air conditioners, one right after the other. And they were full of sand, and barely out of warranty, and we don't appreciate it. And I've been trying hard not to get upset about this, but our entire property line is adjacent to this project. I don't want to go through anymore. And I don't intend to go through anymore. And I don't care who I have to fight. There is erosion where dirt's been stolen, I mean, it's a disaster to put anybody through this. And the other gentleman that I was sitting here tonight, he's right, it was money at our expense, just pure greed and money and no respect. The only people that came out to assist us was a state air quality control. And that was, that took us almost a year to get that. But they can't look inside your home, you know, they can't do that, they don't care if it's been destroyed. They look outside, and they found plenty of evidence for it. But I'm really getting disturbed now, and I would like to throw one more point out here. The traffic is going to be horrible. You have to go out Keystone Road yourselves. Go to George Street and try to make a left-hand turn or a U-turn. Do it yourselves. You think it's bad? Holy cow, there is no left-hand turn. You're in traffic, you pull into that intersection, and you just hope you don't get slammed. We have to make a U-turn to come back to our driveway. The neighbors do. And parcel 0101, the same thing. There is no turn, it's a divided highway. You need to run out that way. Try to make a left-hand turn and see where you're at. You can't do it. And then, when you're trying to turn in that driveway, you're looking both directions on the trail, just hoping people won't stand there in the middle of the trail and not let you in your driveway. It's a nightmare. It is bad. And that's all I have to say, I better sit down. Thank you.
All right, Mark Washburn here, 124 East Lake Drive in Tarpon Springs, 34688. A couple of things I wanted to advise Mayor Terapani. Yeah, I did say condos. I guess what I meant is just the density increase. It's not livable, it does not make it compatible with the surrounding properties. We all bought properties, I bought mine 22 years ago with the expectation of one home per two acres, and Mr. McAlpin did the same thing. The fact that he can now double his density by playing you guys like a fiddle, just to make a lot more money, which is what he's been in this for the whole time, is just shameful. The fact is, you guys can create another category, you can at least research that and defer this for tonight, and see if you can create another category to match the correct zoning. It solves a lot of problems. One, all the heat from the neighbors will be off. Two, it's going to create a lot less density issues as far as traffic on Keystone Road and Highland. It's going to create a lot less issues with potentially, if you ever have to provide water and sewer for that property. I understand that's county responsibility now, but you know, who knows what's going to happen in the future? So the proper zoning should allow for 34 to 35 home units, whatever they're going to be, whether they're hobbit holes, or condos, or regular standalone homes, that's perfect density, that's about what that property can sustain. With all of that wetland that's in there, that's about all that should be there as far as homes surrounding those waterways. And by the way, I do feel bad for you, I think I know where you live, that must have been awful with those trucks coming through with the dirt for months and months and months while they were building the road. So I feel bad for you. So anyways, please, defer this or stop it. You can always create another zoning category, there's no need to just shelve them into what's already on the books. Thank you so much.
Barbara Macaluso, 1310 East Lake Drive, Tarpon Springs, Florida. One of the things that hasn't been brought up is the fact that if you're going to enter Keystone Road now, and you're heading east on Keystone, you have to go down to East Lake Drive to make a U-turn. That's the street that I turn on. That means that turn is going to be backed all the way up. You have a very short runway there for a few cars. All of a sudden, you have 70 families that want to get into this property, and you have nowhere for that traffic to go. And also, it's the height of ridiculousness to sit here and hear people in Tarpon complaining how the environment is being destroyed in Tarpon, and then listen to you guys happily destroy the properties that we're living on. I mean, it's ridiculous to listen to it. It should be two acres per house, because what are they going to do? There's so much wetland in there, and he dug huge holes. All those houses, I don't know how he's going to cram them close enough together on the usable land. It's the height of ridiculousness to put 70 houses in there. It makes no sense, it's going to be a problem from A to Z. It's going to ruin everybody's life who lives in there, it's going to take our lives and make it into hell with the traffic. And this is also, one family can make money? That's what this is for? All we're asking is for the same thing we've always had back there, one house for two acres. And it's a reasonable request. And just because you don't have that in your plan is no reason to inflict it on us. Put another category in. Don't inflict what you're going through in Tarpon Springs on those of us that live in the county. I don't want it, my neighbors don't want it, we're lucky we even found out about it. We didn't know until a couple days ago that this was going on. So I ask you to please be respectful of the people that live there. I don't think all of us should be sacrificed so this particular family can make a ton of money. They'll make plenty with 35 houses in there. They do not need 70.
Are there any other members of the public wishing to speak in opposition?
Here to Wax, 514 Ashland Avenue. I won't have the credentials of Mr. Landon, but I've seen enough annexations, zonings, and land use to be able to, I think, speak about these issues. By accepting the annexation, you've definitely put it in your lap. Now, I have to disagree with Mr. Deneau when he mentioned that changing the zoning for this would be spot zoning. Well, spot zoning is creating a zoning where that particular property benefits from that zoning different than the corresponding properties. Well, if we do what they're asking, we are spot zoning it. We're giving them a benefit that the other neighboring property owners don't have. They're going to be able to put twice as many units on the same amount of land as compared to any of the other people in the county next door. So I would argue that by doing this, you are spot zoning. Now, secondly, why it would be wise to defer and to take, well, you're going to do a moratorium on another item, why you can't do, we've done moratoriums before, 180 days, you have zoning, look at how to create the same zoning and land use that is on that property now. And it's not going to be spot zoning, because for those of us who live in Tarpon in the area, there aren't too many places left where you've got two-acre parcels available. So it's not going to be hampering or benefiting any others. And if we have any other areas of Tarpon that are two acres or larger, and they want to zone to that, then they can go to that. But my argument would be, is you are spot zoning and giving them a benefit that the others don't currently have. And it wasn't too clear as to what the current zoning is on the main property that was an annex, such as that also being changed, which my impression it is. So in essence, all of that whole property is now subject to these new zoning characteristics. And lastly, I want to point out, if anybody remembers the Lindiakis property on Jasmine, anybody remember that? Raise their hand. One, two, three, four. What's that about? He came and asked for a land use amendment and a zoning change. We did it. A few years later, came back and asked for another land use and zoning change. We did it. I don't know what current status is, or if he's asked for another one, but the point I'm making is, they come, developer comes in and says, "Look, we've got this zoning, that zoning." Great. Developer maybe does a contract to buy, or an option, waits a little bit, next thing you know, you see on your dais, new application for new zoning and new land use. You may not be here, forgotten the history of what happened in '05, and '07, and '09. They come in, they promise, "We're going to put in all these houses, you're going to get all this tax revenue, the county's going to handle the water sewer, you don't have to worry about it." Nope, you're going to have to worry about it.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. Well, now you got, you done did it, so you're going to have to deal with it, just like Peter's talking about, and all the problems that are going to come along with it. I mean, they just got the traffic moving down that road. And how many times we talked about how they probably never finished that project, expanding that road? And finally completed it. And then you're going to have somebody come in here, they're going to hire Ed Armstrong, and he's going to bring in an expert that's going to tell you that they're going to reduce traffic by putting in all these things. You've seen it. How many times have you seen experts come in here and tell you that there's going to be less traffic on the road after this project is built? Ludicrous. But they do it over and over and over again. And so, here we are. You have a chance to stop that. You don't have to give in to this, and just give them the bare minimum. Otherwise, like I said, they're going to have to expand that road again. We are not going to get to go to Trinity and back easily. And those people that live over there will not be able to get in and out of their homes Be very careful what you do next. Thank you.
Are there any additional members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to this application or applications? Any members of the public wishing to speak in support? Any members of the public wishing to speak on them generally, in any capacity? Does the applicant wish to make a closing statement?
Thank you. As I stated in my presentation, the neighbors have offered site plan concerns. They've questioned what actually will be constructed and speculated as to potential traffic impacts. None of that is evidence, none of that is research, and none of that is even known to actually happen. The residential very low land use and the agriculture zoning classification are the least dense classifications in your code. These properties are in your jurisdiction. They are Tarpon Springs properties. Please, take the responsibility to place Tarpon Springs classifications on property that you've already accepted into your municipal boundary. As Mr. Daniel can attest, contraction is not going to happen in the state of Florida. These are never not going to be your properties. So we would, based on the evidence that was presented, and the goals and objectives and policies of your plan, and the countywide plan that was recently passed, that you all made an effort over the past 18 months to ensure that your comprehensive plan was expressly consistent with the countywide rules, we respectfully request that you approve the placement of the RVL land use classification and agriculture zoning classification on these municipal properties. Thank you.
Staff wish to make a closing statement?
Uh-uh.
Ma'am, the public hearing is presently closed.
Not at this time, but I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Not at this time, but I'm available to answer any questions that you might have.
Can I ask you, have any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Heather, for discussion purposes, can you just state what the process would be if the city was going to establish a new zoning class that would have an even lesser intensity?
Yeah, you'd have to go through the process of amending your comprehensive plan, which would require an ordinance, would require some time for you to study the issue, decide what that density is, needs to be for that lower density category. Once you've established that, you then write the standards and then you would go through your typical adoption, which is first your TRC is your first step, second step is planning and zoning board, final step would be this board, then it would go, because it's a text-based amendment to the State Department of Economic Opportunity for their review to make sure it's compatible with the state regulations and the state comprehensive plan. It would also go to all the other jurisdictions and agencies, in this case, SWF MUD, Department of Environmental Protection, FDOT District Seven, it would go on to Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, it would go on to PPC or Ford Pinellas, which is their new organization, which includes both the MPO and PPC, it would go to the county, and it would go to a host of additional other people based on where this is located with proximity to the boundaries.
Thank you.
Just follow up with the Vice Mayor was asking. Our future use, it's not compatible with the zoning district because we have two different zoning there. The future use is one acre where the zoning is one point four. That's something that we need to correct anyway. Am I right?
No, not necessarily. That would be at the discretion of this board. The future land use category is the category that controls for density. If you assign a zoning category that has a higher density to a piece of property, the density that they will be allowed on that property, irregardless of what that density allow, that zoning category allows, is what is the maximum that's allowed by the future land use category. The comprehensive plan always is the controlling document when you're dealing with land use. Whatever goes on in that comprehensive plan and anything that you rezone has to be consistent with the land use category that you have and the goals, objectives, and policies of the comprehensive plan. So the short answer is no, you do not have to amend the agricultural district to change the density because you have a document that control, ultimately controls the density irregardless of what your land use plan set, your land use zoning plan sets.
But don't you think that makes sense that part should be the same?
You'd have to study the issue because you probably have other parcels that are in agricultural zoning and you're going to have to verify that those parcels, you're not going to be impacting development that's already created on that, or been developed on those properties because you don't want to create nonconformities and basically creating nonconformities as a result of changing the zoning district to be consistent with a reduction in your future land use category.
Thank you. I'd like to ask a question. I'll see the attorney. Even though that some of the houses, the houses are part of the Hines County District, and the zoning there allows only one house, one unit per two acres. And our code says that you can have one house per unit, I mean, one house per acre. Isn't that a compatibility issue there, compatibility issue there?
No, it's really, it's really not. I mean, the best way to describe it is simply that neighboring jurisdictions simply have different rules and governing documents that guide their land development, you know? They don't enjoy greater or lesser rights in Tarpon Springs versus the county. Their rights are governed by the municipality or the jurisdiction in which they are at that time located.
Okay. What will be if we postpone this application or, and wait till actually make our changes into the code and revisit it again?
Yeah, the same answer as to the, as to the first time that question was posed. I mean, you have an application that's got a quasi judicial element to it on sixteen dash seventeen. I would, I would encourage you to find that you are lacking evidence in, on one of, one or more of those criteria that you're either going to direct your staff to supplement or give to you in some way that will further enhance your analysis of the application, or perhaps you need additional information from the applicant. But inasmuch as you have the evidence before you make a decision, I encourage you to do that.
Thank you. Commissioner Panther, you have any questions?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Slattery? Commissioner Seber? I will entertain a motion for that application, item number nineteen A, which is the application sixteen dash seventy-five, future land use amendment and zoning amendment.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, you're first. You're looking for a motion first on ordinance twenty sixteen dash sixteen?
Yes.
Amending the future land use map?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a first and a second roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
No.
Commissioner Seber?
No.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Merrill Housas?
We are now going to the ordinance two thousand sixteen dash seventeen, amending the zoning
You need a motion.
We're not going, any more discussions on that? Okay, I need a motion for that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
No.
Commissioner Seber?
No.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terapany?
Yes.
Merrill Housas?
Yes. We are now going to the item number twenty, which is the ordinance two thousand seventeen dash zero one, application sixteen one thirty-three, temporary moratorium on cannabis dispensing businesses.
Ordinance twenty seventeen dash zero one, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, establishing a temporary moratorium on cannabis dispensing businesses as further defined herein, providing for penalties, providing severability, providing a general repealer clause and an effective date. This ordinance twenty seventeen dash zero one by title only, second reading to be held on January twenty-four, twenty seventeen. The ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on December thirty, twenty sixteen.
Thank you. The moratorium is to give us more time that we need to study this medical cannabis to make sure that we have, we determine where to place it and what restrictions we should put on it. Heather?
That is correct, and essentially that is my staff presentation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My voice is starting to get a little hoarse. We're basically needing some time to study this issue. The county also established a moratorium, so did many of the cities in the county. So as a result, we're going to follow suit and see what rulemaking comes from the current legislative session that we're in that will help direct us in developing proper zoning regulation for this issue. With that, I can answer any questions that you may have.
Are there any commission comment?
Thank you. Heather, do you know what the moratorium is for the county?
The moratorium for the county is again, one hundred and eighty days for them to research the same issue.
Okay, well, I have a few things to say. I would, I can't support this as, as you're asking this evening. I would contemplate supporting ninety-day moratorium. There are other, there are other communities, other areas within Florida that have dispensaries in their communities. Can we not look at these other areas and mirror their ordinances? I don't know the answer to that that's leaning to you. Also, there was, there was mention about, you know, yeah, I do not want to see a dispensary on Tarpon Avenue or at the Sponge Docks. So I'm sure we can mirror somebody else's ordinance, or I don't see why it would have to take six months for us to, to move in a, in a direction where we could be able to help other people. The people that need, that need this, these dispensaries are people that have pain, they have pain from cancer. I've seen, I've seen what, how this can help just their pain alone. Now, we're worried about in this community, you know, it's gateway drug or it's some sort of a, it's going to create more problems. I don't see that. Right now, our community alone has a major drug problem, major. And I've seen it, I've seen dead bodies sitting on the side of the road, thought he was sitting there, he was dead. And he had a crack pipe next to him, not from smoking marijuana. There's other issues, other major issues in this community, and if that's what we're afraid of, you know, I, you know, that we're afraid of opening a dispensary because it's going to create drug usage or, that's not where we should be focusing. We should be focusing on what good we can do for other people. And again, like I said, I've seen people suffer and I've seen just, you know, one of these small pills, whatever they take for their pain, and it helps. It also helps so when they're going through chemo and radiation, it helps get their appetite back so they can be stronger. So, you know, I don't know if we can also limit it to dispensary to a drugstore. I'm not sure if we could do that either. I don't know, that's what I'm leaning to you. But I, I just don't think that, I think, I feel one hundred and eighty days is excessive. So I won't support what you're asking for tonight. Again, if, if we can lean more towards ninety days, I would support that. Thank you.
May I address that?
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah, and I certainly appreciate the, you know, the policy behind the constitutional amendment. From a legal perspective, I'll give you, give you the view from, from my chair is this, the amendment came with the authority and the mandate for the Department of Health to promulgate rules, you know, governing how this is all going to work, you know, past the Charlotte's Web legislation and moving into the, into this, into this new field. Those rules are going to define the contours of what type of local control is going to be permissible. And I've, I agree with you, Commissioner, you know, as soon as it can be legislated at the local level and handled, it should be. My thought is that it's very unlikely the Department of Health promulgates rules within one hundred and eighty days. Even in the simplest issues, they have trouble, most state agencies have trouble promulgating rules on different things within that timeframe. This issue is especially complex, and so my feeling, and I've seen jurisdictions out there, one of the jurisdictions I represent happened to have a, a planning department employee with significant experience and knowledge in the medical marijuana field from experience out in Colorado and thought that we, that his jurisdiction could simply move forward legislation on the local level, took a look at it and said, "I don't think we can do this yet." They're doing a hundred, one hundred and eighty day moratorium as well. I've seen moratoriums from ninety days to a year. I think one hundred and eighty days from a legal perspective frankly may need to be extended because I don't think the rulemaking is going to be done by one hundred and eighty days, but as soon as the rulemaking is, is nearing completion, we'll know and can move towards local legislation as quickly as that can be accomplished. Now, if they accomplish it sooner, this commissioner is certainly free to come back and repeal or lift the moratorium. But my guess is more likely than not, you'll likely probably want to come back and extend it because that's just my personal feeling is that the, is that the rulemaking will not be sufficiently completed within one hundred and eighty days. And again, it's not a, you know, it's certainly a right now conveyed through the Constitution, but it's one that needs to be, needs to be tailored now in terms of its execution. I hope that's somewhat helpful.
It is, but.
Well, the problem is if we, if we, if we legislate now, if we, and Heather and I have spoken about this at length, if we, if we say, you know, we begin to draft ordinance regarding, for example, location, which is one of the things we think will have local ability to regulate, but ultimately that rulemaking is, is not consistent with that, we're pushing the toothpaste out of the tube that we may have to then push back in. So the moratoriums are really designed to ideally regulate once versus pushing out a bunch of ordinances that may or may not ultimate, we may not, ultimately may or may not have the authority to do, and then having to repeal, amend, fix, and creating a whole bunch of things flying back and forth that creates a lot of confusion.
Thank you.
Let me tell you a little bit about the county meeting today because Commissioner Banther asked me to watch it since it was a morning meeting and stuff. Really what they were saying, and again, there was a lot of testimony from the public, there were concerns. One of the interesting things brought up was that there is a dispensary in Pinellas Park now that can distribute now, so these moratoriums and stuff are not prohibiting people from getting it. And again, the one hundred and eighty days is pretty consistent because the county said the same thing, they're looking for what the rules are. The county talking about today is they were, they were thinking they could get some preliminary dealing with the zoning, dealing with the issues. They were thinking March and April to start bringing those back and the county administrator to look at them and start bringing them. We were dealing with this issue here in December. I had the thought about, let's just, you know, we can get together fast. If we want to do something for now, let's just, and this is just an example, this is going to be taught, let's just put it in highway business. If we want to put any regulations on it, let's gear towards the alcohol regulation, distance from schools or stuff or whatever. Do something simple like that, just bring that to you in January, and that would be ours. We had to change it, we change it. A lot of work was done by Jay in research that said, "Well, yeah, we could do that." They talked about that county some, some people didn't want you to put the regulations like alcohol because it wasn't, some didn't. You don't have to. Highway business was just the easiest one to put it with that would do the least objections, give the most places from the go. So we did entertain that in December and think about coming to you and just putting that in, and then if something happened, amended it, amended it later. But the wisdom in looking at all the other cities, I think Clearwater, Largo, the county doing it today, and today was just the first, you know, go back and finalize it in a second reading in two weeks. Again, they just wanted to see where this thing goes in the timeframe, but they did plan to bring something back, which we would be, again, Heather would be involved with what's the county doing, not that we have to be the same, but it'd be nice if everybody was, be close to consistent. I think they talked about maybe their industrial areas or maybe that, but that wasn't anything settled with. But you really have two choices, you could do something fast and do something as I suggested we may be doing December, or wait. I don't think what we're doing with the moratorium and anything I heard testimony at the county is going to stop anybody from getting it, it's going to prohibit anything from going because the rules aren't set and may not be set in a hundred days, so you're not hurting anybody by doing this. But, you know, we really battled around the either way to do this and stuff, and we're just bringing this, this is what most of them are doing, but we're just bringing it for you. I think it's the smart way to go, but we can go another way too, and then if we've got to make a bunch of adjustments and change, we change it. But this is pretty consistent what most of them are doing because again, you pass something, you get a thing going, and then you write the rules after it. That's not the way it goes, but unfortunately, that's the way, the way this thing is, so you don't have the rules completely operate. But that's kind of both the sides. I kind of thought from watching it today that she would mirror what they're going to bring back, are they going to bring back what areas, are they going to, are they going to put restrictions like out distances from schools, distance from, what does the county kind of like doing that? And maybe we could bring back the same thing, see if you wanted those, see if you want something different, or decide then. So that's kind of where it is, that's what, kind of the county meeting in two weeks to have another one. I watched it live, I think you can go watch the replay and, and kind of see the gist of that. I'm also there after this because again, we have to come back again, so that's just another source of information to watch what the other government's doing.
Yes, thank you, yes. And I did have some heartburn on the initial read of this, I wasn't support, I mean, I did support this statewide ballot initiative, and I think it's a valuable service that people in a medical need can have. And I'm also, though, opposed to Tarpon Springs, like some cities around the country selectively apply what state and federal laws apply to them. But when I got more clarification as to why we're doing this, that it has a date, certain expiration of one hundred and eighty days, I felt more comfortable with it. I think it makes sense for us to allow ourselves the one hundred and eighty days so we can decide what, what we're going to do as, as, as a city with a, you know, business that was once illegal and now making it legal, and making sure that we can fit it into the appropriate places in Tarpon Springs, which I'm sure we can. And it would be my intent personally, and I intend to work with the city manager on this, as he just said, I don't really think we, we have to sit back and wait for another higher agency to tell us what to do on this. I think we have the experience and, and the knowledge to, within this one hundred and eighty days, create enough of the guidelines where we could potentially bring something back here for a vote and then have a, have an established plan for where these dispensaries will go. I think what the city manager said is perfect, highway business, you know, treat it as, as you would alcohol, provided that, that's all legal and that, and that we, 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 we can do that. But I believe we can do that within this one hundred and eighty days, but I am in support of this, simply for the fact that it gives us that, that protection from Pandora's Box while we are actively, and I would like to stress the word actively, trying to While we are actively, and I would like to stress the word actively, trying to uh figure out a way to bring these services here uh to, 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 to Tarpon Springs in the appropriate places. They definitely do, did, at least in my opinion, do, do not belong in the downtown, the sponge docks and many other areas in, in the, the, in Tarpon Springs. But we do have plenty of places that are appropriate as we would liquor stores and things of, of, of that nature. So I would, I, I'm in support of this, but kind of with a caveat that, that, that it's my intention that Tarpon Springs moves faster and that we develop our, 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 kind of, kind of our own plan and we can lift this, 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 um, this uh uh moratorium uh before the 180 days and not have to renew it and do another six months and now right a year and waiting for the state to come at us. So that, that's kind of where I'm at.
And again, I would say that March, April, the county is going towards to gear that, bringing it back to you with what we've got then and to, and to look at it then.
Sooner the better.
Which is less than 90 days to bring back and start talking about if there's great confusion in the state or where there's other developments we now in, in the March, April time, I'm sure the county will deal with it and we can deal with it then. But that was my intention to suggest that we mirror them and uh again, probably in that March, April area, see where we've gotten and bring it back to see what we want to do. If we just want to do something now or that, and that would be my suggestion to do, which again is even less than 90 days away.
So actually it's not really necessary for us to wait 180 days. If we can actually get everything addressed before that, we can bring it back.
That's just, that's just the longest. Obviously, we can come back anytime sooner and do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I would just echo the, the same comments as the, the city manager and the senior commissioner. I mean, I can appreciate Commissioner Slattery, the urgent sense of urgency to try and help people. I, I think it's more of a, you know, constraint timeframe wise, whether or not we can, you know, come up with the acceptable language, but it sounds like everybody's on board if we can do it. You know, sooner than 180 days, then we do it. So I'm in agreement.
Yes, you said that they are dispensaries in St. Pete. Now, how are they regulating those? Do you know?
Pinellas Park. No, they just mentioned that because one of the things came up with the county about, you know, they're prohibiting people from doing. They mentioned there is one that whatever the rules are in effect now of distributing them, there is a Pinellas Park place that, that can get somebody the, the product that they need right now and under the rules that are now. So, so the moratorium, the point was that the moratorium is not stopping anybody from with whatever framework now they're able to get it from, from getting it. So we're not holding anybody back by doing this from, from getting it.
Are there, are there areas in the state that are already dispensing and have gone forward with this, do you know?
I just know about the Pinellas County.
Well, I also believe that 180 days is a long time and if we can get this done faster, I, you know, I, I really think if 90 days could work, I'd, I'd prefer for this to go through faster than 180 days. And I'm in support and.
Are there any public comments on this item?
Tommy Frain, 624 Penn Street, uh Tarpon Springs. Definitely more encouraged hearing the comments than I was last night. And I was, Commissioner Banther kind of referenced when I first read it, I had a confused reading it. Um, I definitely think uh that it's important that the city takes proper steps to ensure that, you know, we don't want to, you know, have four dispensaries sitting on Tarpon Avenue or anything of that nature. Uh, but at the same time, uh I also agree with Commissioner Slattery. I think we, the sooner the better. Um, I've noticed with some government bodies that if you put a six month extension, that turns into eight months, it may turn into 12 months. And, you know, really want to make sure we're not kicking the can down the road. Um, the sentiment I feel uh is not that. And that's what I kind of wanted to ensure that it's not an attempt uh by the city to ultimately nullify um the will of the, uh, the will of voters. And just, and I know this is, just in reading some of the other city moratoriums, I know this is more or less a, a cut and paste job uh on the ordinance. I wrote in my email yesterday, I did have some concern with some of the language in there, that it seemed to be contradictory. Um, that, you know, we're saying, oh, let's see what other jurisdictions do, not to mention that we've had medical marijuana for 20 years in the country. But uh we want to see what other jurisdictions do in Florida, yet here are all these certain facts of the damages of marijuana dispensaries. I included some links, um, you know, the Journal of Land Economics, University of Texas, not exactly articles from High Times as my references. Uh, you know, to show basically that a lot of the assumptions that were in the whereas such and such is, is not exactly correct. So I understand, you know, other cities, I read Jacksonville Beach had pretty much the exact same ordinance, uh Orange Park, uh same ordinance. So I understand that it's kind of a cut and paste job. It seems to be a little contradictory to me how uh to be in there. But other than that, you know, um, I would lean more towards 90 days. Uh, I think that's uh the most appropriate. If we need to extend it at that point, at least keep the discussion going. I feel like if we just keep it, it gets stale. You know, just to make sure everything's really rolling. Um, you know, 72% of uh, excuse me, Florida voters voted for this, 75% in Pinellas County. Um, it's a pretty clear mandate, um, you know, from the voters. Um, and, you know, as I kind of mentioned in my email, you know, we have, definitely have a, a drug problem of prescription drugs. Um, and, you know, that's a concern. Uh, not necessarily, uh, you know, medicinal marijuana for cancer patients. So, thank you so much.
Christopher Boski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. Yes, thank you, Commissioner Slattery. I I appreciate the sense of urgency that you have because I have these patients coming into our office uh on a weekly basis. Some of these people don't have 180 days. Terminally ill, suffering people, and this is medicine and it's being compared to recreational booze. That's ridiculous. It's not a recreational drug. They're not even going to be able to smoke it. Uh, I was speaking to Dr. Abdul in our office today and the, the regulations are coming through. This is the most regulated substance. The most. You have to meet all of these criteria in order to get it. So let's not add a few more hoops for dying people to jump through. You know, they call it compassionate use. Let's have some compassion for these people. We're all blessed with really good health. There are some people that have a challenge with their health. And the faster we can get them medicine they require to live, the better will reduce their suffering. I mean, right now, the qualifying conditions are cancer, epilepsy, chronic seizures and chronic muscle spasms. Horrible conditions these people are having to deal with. A physician diagnosed, diagnoses a patient with qualifying condition or low THC medical cannabis. Then the physician treats the patient for three months and obtains voluntary written informed consent. Then the physician submits a treatment plan to the University of Florida College of Pharmacy each quarter or if the plan changes. Then the physician enters the order into the compassionate use registry. Then the patient may fill the order at any of the dispensaries operated by one of six approved dispensing organizations. So let's not add any more hoops to this uh system. And the language in this ordinance is unbelievable. I mean, there, some of the things that you've put in here about safety, welfare, residents, secondary effects, offensive odors? I can't believe this stuff is even in here. You know, I would have you redraft the whole thing. I mean, it's fear and ignorance that have caused this to be delayed for all of these years. Fear and ignorance. It's medicine, heals people. And we're going to talk about offensive odors? Really? Somebody's dying? We're going to say the government's going to come in and, you know, we're going to save these people from themselves? Come on. The government shouldn't be doing this in the first place. It should already be legalized. It's unbelievable that people have to suffer and then wait and suffer more and wait and wait and wait. Have some compassion. Let's say Tarpon Springs is compassionate city. We're going to help people that are dying. We're going to help people with cancer and y'all know people that have had cancer and what they went through. Pure hell. And we have a solution. Let's put it to use as fast as possible. Thank you.
Marty Peters, 1702 Heritage Oaks Court. I like what Commissioner Slattery had to say. Do your 90 days. If you have to come back and revisit it, you could do 180 days. You could add another 90 on. The reason for that is it seems to me that the people that lost the vote, the minority, whereas about three quarters of the population thought this was a good idea. The minority is kind of resisting, struggling to find ways to delay and delay, just like they did with Charlotte's Web. And if you take the lead and do the 90 days, it kind of spurs though all those other groups that are doing the 180. It gives them a clue that maybe people actually want to move on to what the majority of the people in the state wanted. So I would urge you to do the 90, maybe make an amendment to do that, uh 90. And then of course you can come back and you can add another 90 on if you need to. And I'd also suggest that, uh, since I'm on the Budget Advisory Committee, you see if there's some way you can get some money out of this. If we set up some places here, if there's a special tax, and I know this is medicine, if this was recreational, you could put a nice tax on it. But uh see if there's some way that we can work that in too. And I think that's one of the things you ought to study in addition to speeding up the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comment? Here, no. Do we have any additional comments?
Can we make a change to the 90 days on, on, on this?
Yeah, you can make, you can make a change to it if you, if uh one of you is inclined to make a motion, just simply make the motion to uh amend the 180 days in section three to 90 days or whatever, whatever.
I'd make a motion to amend it.
You amend it to 90 days.
90 days.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have first and second. Roll call please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tierpenny?
Yes.
Mayor Aluzis?
Yes. We now go to the item number 21, Resolution 2017 dash zero two, Police Department Reorganization.
Resolution 2017 dash zero two, Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, authorizing changes in the police department organization, including the revised title, job description and pay grade for one position and providing for an effective date here. It's Resolution 2017 dash zero two by title only.
Thank you. Are there any, Mr. Liquors?
I just want to give a major troll a chance to shine or something.
I'm good.
But simply, he'll be available to answer any question, but simply it's an attrition of job, Detective Secretary's job has come open. It is time, uh, this position is to add a crime analyst function to that position. And uh it's more useful, it'll be useful for detectives, it'll be useful for that. So again, this is a job that came up because of someone leaving and adding some duties to it that is needed. The cost of the grade going up and with the attrition of the employee, it's not going to be a budgetary effect to you. But it'll give them more tools to that person, the secretary, besides doing the other work for detective to do um the crime analyst work and stuff, to look at the areas, the problem areas and give them a better avenue to do it. If you've got any questions to ask him, but it's very little, it's very little or no, you know, effect on the budget and it's just making a position better um by giving the chief and the major what they need and the detective division.
Major. I support to create this position, the specialized position to give the extra uh assistance to the detective. The question that I have is do we have anybody qualified in house to, uh, to move to that position or we have to hire from the outside?
We're going to open it up uh to.
Everybody?
Yeah, inside and outside if people are interested. It's not just for the detective division, it's for the entire police department. Though, they can study with the correct software, which we'll have to look at, is traffic crashes as well. Problem areas to get patrol out, crime prevention involved in it, as well as detectives that can actually help on cases, but also help with patrol functions when we see a problem area, start addressing issues and trends as they come up by looking at the research and the data. They'll also work with other agencies, federal, state, local agencies, getting information and intel, which, intelligence information and getting that out in real time for intelligence led policing. Uh, so it's kind of connecting all the pieces of the puzzle with the police department, get us all working on the same page and a little more efficiently. We do have, I'm sure that people that are possibly interested in-house. Uh, but it is a detective secretary position. The detective secretary who is there has moved to another position, administrative assistant position, that opened up. So now is the time to move it into a crime analyst. Basically it promotes our mission statement a little better of not only reducing crime but enhancing the quality of life. Um, so we can do that through more information and more intelligence data.
Thank you. Any comments? No. Are there any public comments on this item? Here, no. Need a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tierpenny?
Yes.
Mayor Aluzis?
Yes. Well, that concludes the uh regular social agenda. We're going to go to the uh CRA meeting.
Can we take a little break?
Take a little break, five minutes break? Okay.
Just a reminder, if we go past the button, we need to do a motion to extend the meeting.
Okay.
I'll remind you, but.
I get it. It's already signed. I need it.
What are you doing here, buddy else? Someone start problems? We're cutting yours down automatically one minute. I want to make a motion. Make a motion that we cut your stuff down to a minute and a half. He pissed me off. He did. I'm not going to forget that. You're an idiot.
You picked the longest meeting, Major.
I didn't pick it. I got picked.
You got picked. That, that all freaks me out.
That, that all freaks me out.
Ray, I would have gladly had another meeting, it's not like people wait four hours, then-
Well, I mean, our public comments-
I checked the show, I said, we had a Chick-fil-A in town, you're doing a food room for me right now, I'm dead serious.
I know.
I have a good dinner waiting for me, oh, I, 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 I can't eat.
I don't think so.
I've been eleven thirty, that's not, you know, I'll eat something, but I can't.
Yeah, two minutes, but you can't, you can't.
I imagine eleven thirty, so I went eleven thirty, and now I've had, like, a hundred and ten calorie protein cereal bar, and then whatever's on the times.
I know, what's the B F?
I mean, it's, I almost thought eight, personally, it was ready, and she had it ready, but I want to scrub it there.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, yeah, yeah.
She was like, really, I could say, shoved it in.
Yeah, that was odd. I thought, oh, it'll go till nine thirty, like, we knew that prediction, I said, I said, I said eight thirty.
Not great, they did, they stopped, had a perfect time, they stopped, work, yeah.
Yeah, that's why, that's why, you know, you know, you know.
Thank you.
Because I can't get up.
Your face is dirty, tell me.
It's a whole day, you're like, kidding me.
No, 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 we suffer together, suffer together.
You live and die.
Well, yeah, I will disagree with you, but, um, I'm gonna go. I just want to make sure, okay, you don't leave me because I'm on-
When you're in a home, eating dinner on your couch, just, just-
I want to go eat for dinner instead of hot.
Okay, fish, that'll work.
Open up the CIA.
I've got the DVR, I got, I'm gonna watch, uh, ladies and gentlemen, when I, when I, when I, yes.
Yes.
Yes, I'm gonna have it.
Yes.
Let's get going, guys.
I'm starving.
We're not finished by eleven, we're gonna have to extend.
I'm, I'm just really hungry, it's all I know. I, I don't function well hungry.
Yes, thank you, I was like-
Oh, it's well past my dinner time.
I don't know if it's something in there, I'm like, coughing my words.
I have acid reflux, it's well past my, my dinner time.
I think this is all, this hasn't gone away for me for almost a month now.
Latest I've gone is, well, thirty, I think.
And I don't know if it's all discussed around here.
That was like my first second, it was a Bay Shore, Bay Shore Heights first, came for us.
We're gonna start the CRA meeting, if you want to, please have your seats.
Second meeting, but-
Back your gavel there.
Look at that.
I now call to order the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, January tenth, two thousand seventeen, at ten oh three P M. Roll call, please.
Chair Alouzes?
Yes.
Vice Chair Tierpenny?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
Commissioner Seber?
Here.
Commissioner Slattery?
Here.
Item number one, proposed purchase of property fifty-seven West Tarpon Avenue and sixty-one, sixty-one West Tarpon Avenue. Mr. Licorice?
Pretty much, and there's an additional piece, you got the additional piece, there's an additional piece that's for the site address on the property purchases, Court Street, just for information, that's a little piece of the Hoffman property that's on the bottom, so that's including this. Obviously, I was given direction in December when we had the meeting on these hotels, I was given some direction on this. I'm bringing it back to you as a CRA board, because obviously, what I've got in the backup tonight and stuff, and the place where you have money to do this is in the, is in the CRA, and this is originally, as we talked about, and we talked about the CRA at the B O C being a CRA project, I need to get direction for you as a CRA board. These things, these three things kind of run together, and really, two and three depends on which way you want to go with it. The first thing where we let off is, is the properties, and the properties we're talking about is the Sun Bay Motel and the Hoffman property, which is two properties. The idea in the CRA, if you are looking to get this property, again, we've talked a lot in the B O C, and it was in another area, your purpose and your ability of wanting to acquire this property would be for a public use, and that public work would be solely as a park. It wouldn't have nothing to do with the issues that we're talking about at the B O C, it would be as, as a park. As you know, we've been working for many, many years based on a plan of a livable, walkable community, linking the downtown to the Sponge Docks. We are finally, if we hadn't been delayed by the season, we'd be finishing that. Obviously, we started with the downtown, taking over Tarpon Avenue, the Safford Corridor, the Sponge Docks Project, and finally, when April and the season goes, we're gonna be doing the walkability from the Sponge Docks, back to the downtown, into the Craig Park, Heritage Museum area and stuff. The idea that you brought for, that was brought forward at the B O C is the idea of a park that would be kind of the hub of this activity. You also approved in the B O C a Court Street Plan, and it's a real simple one for now, it's just adding parking and abilities, but what we're doing preliminarily on Court Street can be changed to adopt if you decide that you want to acquire this land as a hub. For instance, some of the parking can be changed to bus parking, if you wanted that. The focus is, a lot of the parking for people who wanted to, to do the walking tour or stuff, Court Street would be the parking place, and that park would be a hub. But everything about the park, or what you're gonna do with it, how you're gonna do it, that would be decided at a later time. But, but what I'm asking for in the first item is the direction from the CRA to proceed with this. Right now, with this year and next year's funds, over two years' funds, the Finance Director told me we've got about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of discretionary fund to do this with. If this came out to be more, there is an ability to borrow from an enterprise fund, sanitation or another fund, if, if there are other monies needed, or there is a fact where you wanted to space it because of some other project you wanted to do or something, to space it over three years, but as, in essence, two or three years, the CRA and that money could be there. But again, you've got options if there's other things you want to do, and the possibility of doing that. Decision of how to proceed on this is what leads to, to two and three, because a lot that was talked about in the B O C have, had to do with trying to acquire this property, and if not, the issue of eminent domain. You asked me as a B O, as a B O C to look at this aspect and what to do with it. What I'm saying is, if you approve, number one, and we decide to go for a park, why you have, number two, about hiring an attorney with some experience in eminent domain to take over the process of going for the acquisition of the properties? And let me emphasize, the purpose of hiring that person is not for eminent domain, is to acquire the properties, and you'll see in threes to hire an appraiser. You'll see the prices, the appraisers are pretty high, but this is an appraiser who, in looking at appraisers, had to have expert, expert witness testimony, the ability to do a case if it's going in eminent domain, and that's why you see those things. If, if your decision as a C, as a CRA, if we're gonna go forward in this, you know, the process really should begin with that attorney that we hire, working with the appraiser, getting the prices, making the offer, negotiating, that's really the way, that should, that, that is suggested to go to it, and having that attorney involved in, in the beginning. Now, again, that's strictly your decision of what you want to do to do this and stuff. Obviously, you know, I've had discussion with both property owners at this time, I've had more extensive discussions with Mr. Fenuz of, of the, of the hotel. At this time, there's not the willingness to sell the property at this time, from our preliminary discussions, or Mr. Hoffman, in fact, Mr. Hoffman's got a plan, was gonna work on a plan to utilize it. That's where we left off in this process, and again, what you would be doing is, in one, deciding that, that you wanted to pursue those properties still as a park, and then, whichever way you want to do it, whether it's this way or another way, you need to hire somebody attorney-wise, and, and somebody to praise the properties and stuff, and begin the process of trying to acquire it. And again, the, all of this would be the acquiring of it, not using eminent domain, because we get to the eminent domain process, it's probably gonna revert back to the B O C as a B O C process, and they're the only ones that can do eminent domain. But again, two and three doesn't go until you decide as a CRA that that's what you're gonna pursue, and that's what you're gonna do, and then give me authority on the other one. So that's basically what I'm bringing to you from what happened from the B O C side for you to discuss, and decide from a CRA side what's strategy, and what you want to do in moving forward and looking at these properties.
Thank you, Mr. Licorice. Item number one is what we're gonna be talking about first, which is to formalize the CRA proceedings, to purchase the property on fifty-seven West Tarpon, to build the, and sixty-one West Park, Tarpon Spring, Tarpon Avenue, to build a park. So this is what we need to talk about first. I'd like to ask the Commissions if we have any comments there for that. Commissioner Seber?
Yes, it's kind of hard to talk about item, about item one without including item two, in a sense, because we are talking about purchasing these properties for eminent domain, so, you know, my comments may go back and forth, but I, I wanted to, first of all, make clear, at the last meeting, I was criticized by a few people, or a couple of people, for my views, and I just want to say that whatever I say up here is, is based on facts and research, and what's best for the people of Tarpon Springs, not through emotion or judge, judgmental reasons. So that's why I was elected, and this is why I, I make my decisions. And talking about facts and research, I did call Tallahassee to find out a little bit about the hotel and what's been done as far as licensing process, which they are due to be licensed, or renew their license next month. So I called DBPR and spoke to the Division of Hotels and Restaurants, and asked for some clarification on how they've been passing inspection, because I've had numerous residents say, how is the City of Tarpon Springs allowing this business to continue, and why are we not shutting it down? Well, we, we can't shut it down, it's, it's a state that looks at, at these businesses and whether they qualify to, to, and, and meet their license requirements. I was called back, and I was told that they don't have very many violations and complaints in the last two years, because the only way they can go into and, and look at those situations or those complaints, if, is if they can get into those rooms. So they cannot go into an occupied room. So in the last two years, two to three years, they've only been able to go to one or two rooms when they do go out there to inspect, and I feel that that's because a lot of the people are living there, instead of meeting the requirements of a motel, which we're only supposed to stay in for thirty days. Now, you can renew it up to three times in a year, but that was one of my questions is, are they meeting their licensing guidelines? I was told today that they will be going out this week to re-inspect, and to make sure that they are meeting their licensing guidelines, and I will be getting a report on that. So I feel that there's more research to be done before we make a decision quickly on this, and I'm not sure why we're moving forward so quickly, because this is a big decision to be made, and it's gonna mean money to the taxpayers. So I also received some informant, some information from a judge who has some knowledge on eminent domain, and I'd like for our attorney, is he not here? Oh, there he is, to speak on this, you know, later, but I was told that there are two processes to eminent domain. One is a quick-take process, and one is a slow-take process. And in the quick-take process, a jury decides the worth of the property, and, and decides what the owner should receive from the city, and basically, they, the city's checkbook is, is in their hands. So if they decide this property is worth three million dollars, we have to cough up three million dollars, and there is no, you know, no way to, to change that. And then the slow-take obviously takes a longer process, in that case, the city would be responsible for all attorney fees, including, you know, the, the property owner's attorney fees and, and all costs involved. And, you know, my concern is, do we have that kind of money to lose, and if we did lose the case? And this is something our taxpayers would have to, you know, to see in the future. So again, why are we rushing to this? Sun Bay continues to be a nuisance, but the other property, according to the CRA, was established to rehabilitate blighted properties, and how is the other property a blighted property? So it does not follow in the guidelines of what CRA is for and why they, they were formed. So I, you know, I, again, do not believe in, in purchasing these properties, I think we need to take our time, we need to make this decision with more research, you know, more active, listening to our, our business owners, to our residents, and CRA, using that money, I'm totally opposed to. The CRA grants and, and funds have done great improvements to our downtown. Without those funds, we wouldn't have had the, the facade grants, the restaurant grants, bringing a lot of businesses into town, and Karen Lemmons has worked very hard the last three years to do that, and it's like taking her funding away from her and saying, do a good job without any funding. So I, I feel like a slap in the face of our Economic Development Manager, and I don't approve of, of using those funds, and obviously, the city does not have the funds at this time either. So I've spoken to several citizens, we've had a lot of mail, emails and phone calls today in opposition to this, and I feel that we need to listen to all of our residents, our business owners, and our citizens before we make a decision like this, and we shouldn't be hasty in, in making this decision, we should look at all our options. I also feel that the Budget Advisory Committee should, should have a chance to look at this. So my idea for tonight is to actually delay this motion of buying this property, and waiting until we, we have some more information and, and we think about this more, because it's, it's a big decision, and we didn't make the hospital decision in, in two meetings, and that was a lot of money. So we need to think about what we're doing in this, in this matter, and listen to everybody and what they have to say.
Question, what information that we're looking for?
Well, I feel like we need to, to wait until the licensing is checked out, you know, what F, what DBPR says this week. We need to look at other options. A park is, I love parks, but we have more green space in Tarpon Springs than any other city in Pinellas County, and our economic impact studies show that we need hotels desperately in this town. So I know a lot of people who have talked to me believe in a need for a small boutique hotel, or several bed and breakfast boutique hotels, because out of those million people that come to Tarpon Springs, the majority of them leave that day, maybe seventeen percent stay in Tarpon Springs. So we're, you know, a day vacation, not a stay vacation, and our business owners suffer because of that, because we need people to stay in Tarpon Springs and spend their money here and help our businesses and our economy grow. So I, I definitely think that we need to look at other venues and, and revenues to, before we make this decision.
Vice Mayor Tierpenny?
Just one thing can I say?
Sure.
Because I don't want J. Dev, I want to remind all this board, none of this action can be taken in relations to the motel being a nuisance. You got all the information as a B O C and stuff about how that is prohibited, this is strictly an acquisition that you would go into for the purpose of putting a park there. The nuisance value, the licensing, anything to do with a nuisance, as we warned with the citizens and stuff before, that can be, not be in your decision today to do. Is the, is the, is the value of having that property as a park and a hub of that, of the thing, the nuisance cannot come into it, and I'm sure he would appreciate, and all of us would be, no mention of any of the nuisance, because if that's the case, you cannot do it, you know, based on that. It's all strictly the park.
What I have to, what I'm saying is, though, I know that it's a nuisance, and I'm not talking about the nuisance, but there are other revenues we can take, and there are other options we need to look at before we jump forward with making this decision tonight and saying, we're gonna put a park there.
I agree, I just don't want a lot of the-
Wanted to make that clear.
And to let the audience know that you're gonna, you know, you're gonna hurt, that nuisance is not a factor in anything we do here in the B O C from here future, that cannot- And to let the audience know that you're gonna, you know, you're gonna hurt, that nuisance is not a factor in anything we do here in the B O C from here future, that cannot be a consideration because that's not, that's not the ability to do that and that will cause problems. So I just want to get that out.
And I also wanted to point out that Mr. Hoffman's property is not a blighted property and he is a respected citizen in in this town and businessman. And I I want to support everybody in this town, including Mr. Hoffman. And I I feel that taking somebody's property away is is a bad precedent for this city to to go into. And we could say, well, we want to take your property next because we want to put a park there or we want to take your property and and put a park there. You have a nice piece of property that would make a park. So I don't like the precedent of taking somebody's property away from them through eminent domain who, you know, may have plans for their property or there's not really any reason to take his property away as far as I'm concerned.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Just a second, please. I got. Item number three is talking about this authorization to city manager to to hire an appraiser. We gave direction to city manager to start negotiating. It would have been very difficult for him to do negotiations if he doesn't know really what the property value is unless you have an appraiser. So this is one of the things that he's going to
And yeah, we haven't gotten to that point yet, but I
The other thing that I would like to ask
Appraising the property is a different story.
The other thing I would like to ask, Vice Mayor Terpang, just excuse me for a minute, is to ask Heather, is she still here?
Yeah, she's home.
The question that I have is, is the comprehensive plan calling to have a park in that area?
Yes.
Downtown area, which we have an area in downtown that could be a park if we wanted to use it as a park.
Mr. Licorice, we have that answer.
I've got that in your backup. You have the backup of the CRA and how you created and that's talking about it. You you can do that.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Go ahead.
Thank you. So before I begin, I feel like the board owes the public a little bit of an apology for not recognizing that our agenda would have taken as long as it did. Had it, had it, had we known that, we would have more than likely moved the CRA agenda first. So I feel like we owe you that apology and appreciative that you that you stayed here until this hour. The second apology would be, maybe I shouldn't have watched the national championship game as long as I did. But in addition to that, we're glad that you're here. We're appreciative of you being here. Obviously, it's something that means a lot to all of you. I'd like to thank the city manager for moving forward in the manner that he did, which was based solely on the unanimous direction from this board at our last meeting. The board made it very clear, again unanimously, how we would like for him to move forward with this. He did exactly what we said. So thank you for that, Mr. City Manager. In addition to that, for me, I felt that at the last meeting, we had a very healthy discussion, very healthy dialogue. It was in reflection of that that first dialogue, it was important to me to see and reflect on the amount of former elected officials that were here who spoke in support of it. And it was a little bit ironic to have a former mayor here who spoke in support of eminent domain, who took a former mayor's property. So and there were multiple examples of that. So to me, it was a little bit ironic, but at the same time, you know, I was appreciative to see that amongst our discussion. So for me, the the vision has not changed. The vision remains the same to have a park there. We approved at a at a meeting later than our than our meeting when we first discussed discussed this, the approval of the concept for Court Street, which I think is really going to look nicely, especially tied in with this project. So relative to, you know, the the new opposition that's come forth in, you know, the last several hours of today, to me, the vision hasn't changed. So I would still like to move forward with our direction to the city manager to negotiate for this piece of property. By, you know, authorizing him to hire the eminent domain attorney and to hire the property appraiser, that doesn't necessarily mean that carte blanche, we're just going to eminent domain the property. That means that we're going to more formally have a better idea of the value and also formally negotiate with both property owners. It was stated at the last meeting or the last time that we talked about this, that the intent of the board is to not take a piece of property unnecessarily. Everybody on this board would board would like to see the property purchased, you know, at an arms-length transaction. So I feel like that's something that we're moving towards, just more so in a formal manner. I feel that, you know, the the park concept is called for within the comprehensive plan. You know, it's been referenced multiple times is, is this location part of downtown? Is it not part of downtown? Without a doubt, it's part of downtown. I don't see how anybody could formally argue that the location of this property is not downtown. So I feel that to have a park there coupled with the the other things that are going on in and around the downtown, I feel that that helps promote the economic development that everybody's looking for and referencing. I don't think we needed an economic impact study to tell us that we needed a hotel in Tarpon Springs. I think most of us already knew that. So that said, as as it relates to the Tarpon Inn and redevelopment, I think you will see, hopefully, you'll see the Tarpon Inn redeveloped faster or sooner with this new park across the street. I think that when it comes time to talk about the design of that park or how we're going to utilize it or if there's going to be a party pavilion there, at that point in time, you know, I would more so support a quote unquote focus group to help us design that area. But I've sat up here for six years and I and we were elected to make the harder decisions and I've made those decisions. I sat on the board when we hired the Economic Development Director. I sat on the board when we established the facade grant program, the restaurant improvement grant program. I've met with Mark and national builders and developers that I have personally helped bring to the town. You know, and the list goes on and on and on in terms of economic development. So I won't bore you with all those details, but I'll tell you that that I feel like is my strong suit. Okay? So the economic development aspect and the tax base aspect, all those things are moving forward. The city can afford to buy this piece of property or multiple pieces of properties within the CRA. And if you don't want to buy within the CRA, then we have options to utilize other funds for that. That's a discussion that can take place at a later date. The discussion for now is moving forward with the purchase of this property. You know, I don't I don't want to offend anybody in in the turn in the form of taking a a piece of property from somebody. Nobody up here wants to do that. However, those measures exist for a reason and it's for a reason of a public purpose and the public good. And we've done that in the past and it's not, it exists, right? It's a prac, it's a common practice. So if the time comes when eminent domain needs to be utilized, it's a tool that's made available to government. And I don't think that that's something that we all should be so so scared of. I said that at our last meeting, we have beautiful things around town, productive things, good public purpose, public uses that we achieve through the eminent domain process. You know, I referenced the library, I referenced the new elementary school. Look around. I mean, it's happened. There's, there's a handful of elected officials in the audience right now who have sat up here, who cast those votes to do that. And I guarantee if they had to do it again, they'd probably vote to have a new library. So I'm not, I'm not turned off by it. I can appreciate the two sides to every story. But I feel like when you, when you look deep in your heart of hearts, this is is the right decision to make. It's not a, it's not a rash decision. It's not something that, you know, anybody's trying to cram down somebody's throat. You know, the discussion, the mayor asked if 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 the if a park downtown was in the comprehensive plan. It was. And I find it somewhat ironic that the same group who opposes this project brought forward the the great Mother Mir's Park and we need to do the Mother Mir's Park. Well, here you go. It's a block away. It's it's adjacent to the park that we have essentially. So for me, I'm ready to move forward. I'll make a motion, you know, right now to continue to move forward with this project and give the city manager, authorize the city manager to do what he needs to do to formally negotiate and hire an eminent domain attorney as well as the appraiser of his choice.
Thank you. Commissioner Panther?
Yes, and I will second the of Vice Mayor's motion, but I want to make some comments here, of course. I appreciate the comments made by 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 Commissioner Seber. I mean, first off, I don't think any, at least in my opinion, and I appreciate the research that that you did and that information that you brought to us, but I don't think any any new information is going to change the situation we have there or or the current operations there. And as far as some of the emails that we've gotten today, I think there's been some misinformation as to what eminent domain is and and as to what we're doing. I'm probably the most libertarian-leaning person here on this board. And if you look back at my four years of voting history and my comments on the medical cannabis issue in in the the last two hours, you can, you can, you can see that. And eminent domain is the last thing I would I would want to do, but it is a necessary form of government. But what we're doing here tonight, if you read some of the emails that that we've gotten or heard some people speak, you think we're going to the courthouse tomorrow to to file a lawsuit? And that's the furthest thing from from the truth. My comments at the at the last meeting where we spoke about this, I think it was the first meeting in December, remain true, is that this is the formal process where we respectfully approach the these property owners, not in not in sending the city manager in for a private meeting that's not on the record or or talking around town, but actually officially through a proper channel as a governmental body with taxpayer funds negotiating with property owners to purchase their property. That they obviously have the right to 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 say no at that point. But that's all we're doing right now. We we are continuing what we authorized the city manager to though to do is to hire the properly legal counsel that specializes in this area and thus the proper property appraiser for the city to move forward in purchasing these properties. There's nothing in here about filing a lawsuit or taking somebody to court. If and when that even does happen, that's down the road. And Mr. Attorney, please, please correct me if I'm wrong. We can go through, say this all passes tonight, we can go through the process, make the bids, though are rejected. If we see new and compelling evidence or or feel differently in six months, we can just stop the process, correct?
Which process?
Like for for if if the property owners say, no, we are not going to sell, we know the only way is eminent domain, we're not forced to go that route, then we can we can stop the process, correct?
No, and and just as a matter of clarification for the record for for this board is the CRA. The CRA is statutorily prohibited from exercising the power of eminent domain in any event. That power rests exclusively with the city, the Board of the Board of Commissioners. So the broad answer to your question is yes, you can negotiate with the property owners if they, if you can't arrange a suitable arrangement or the property owners don't wish to sell or a deal falls through, you are not required to do anything further.
Exactly. So I think that I think by judging by the correspondence, and I'm not demeaning anybody, I had to educate my own self in this issue, but, you know, in the months, in the months leading up to tonight, and the fact that this is simply a formal process for the city to use CRA funds to purchase a property. If we do go to court, that is a decision made by the Board of Commissioners down the road. So nothing here tonight automatically triggers that. It just starts this formal process that I think is personally respectful. My family has three lots off of off of Tarpon Avenue. If I was in this same position, this is how I would want to be treated, formally presented an offer by the city or or any governmental body, not having city manager come talk to me privately and this number here, or someone said this there, but a formal process that I think is respectful. And 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 of course, all all due respect is is given to 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 Mr. Hoffman. His property is in no way a blight and that's that's no reason why that that's just happening right now. Also, you know, there were some suggestions and correspondence of of things for the city to do that, in my opinion, sound far worse than eminent domain as in the 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 city forcibly shutting down somebody's private business without 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 due process and then selling it. That that's not a function of government. We don't, we can't do that. So I I think my overall thing here is is that this is the formal and respectful way to go about this this process. It is a step-by-step process. There is no lawsuit filed tomorrow. Everything we do will be slow, methodical and guided by counsel. And it is my hope that after negotiations, serious negotiations, that that these property owners do sell the property to 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 the city for the public use. And we will cross each bridge as as we come to it. And I can guarantee you, it will be in the most respectful manner to to those property owners. And so I am, again, I second the Vice Mayor's motion and I I am in support of moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. I echo a lot of what Commissioner Panther said here tonight. A lot of you, I think, were misinformed why we are here. At our last meeting, we instructed the city manager because he was trying to make negotiations on his own. And I I feel I felt at the time that we need to co-counsel with another attorney that has a little more expertise, not saying that we don't have a wonderful attorney. But everybody is is an expert in a different field. So we're not here tonight to take anybody's property. And this is what I'm reading all over Facebook and emails. And I think I am highly disappointed in the people that put these messages out to our community today because that's not why we're here. We are here to direct the city manager to hire an appraiser and an eminent domain attorney if needed. But the property, what we need to do is, and we talked about it at the last meeting, go in with a formal offer to the property owners and say, we are willing to, this is what your property is worth, this is what we're willing to pay. Would you like to sell? And from there, then there's a whole nother negotiation part. But, you know, I just wanted to make it clear, I mean, they they've hit all the points, but we are not here tonight to take anybody's property. And I have to say, Mr. Hoffman is a true asset to this community. So the last thing I want to do is sit here and and say, I'm taking your property away from you. That's just not what what we're here to do. So and again, there's other options. If if we need more funds from other areas at that time, then we can look at that. But that is way down the road, way down the road. This is all, what I'm interested in is moving forward with with an appraiser and to see what these properties are worth and see where we stand from there. Believe me, I that the hotel, I'd love to shut them down, but we can't. It's not an option. So I would support moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I add something to that based on what some a couple of commissioners have said? My worry is that the change of current operations is not going to change with a park. We have a park across the street, Craig Park, where we have homelessness, where we, our police department is there regulating the homeless, the illegal activities. How will that change by adding another park where there will be more space for homelessness and illegal activities when we still have a problem on Grand Street and probably a problem across the street with the Tarpon Inn? And I know the owners have said that they will change that. But as long as we still have people in that area, and I I drive by there many times a day from my house, which is around the corner on South Spring to work, and I see what comes in and out of the grand property. And, you know, if that doesn't change, how is anything going to change? So we're not discussing all of these other properties. Are we going to buy them all? We're only discussing the one and and Mr. Hoffman's property. So I really feel that whatever is going on down there is not going to change by turning this property into a park. And this is what I truly believe, and that's why I'm I'm opposing the park. I feel that, you know, and and why are we hiring an eminent domain attorney if we want to talk to these business owners and negotiate with them? We have an Economic Development Director who's been trying to negotiate and it's her job to negotiate. And I I agree, we do need to appraise these properties, but hiring an eminent domain attorney, I think, is taking it a step further.
I'd just like to remind the board that the last commission meeting that we had, one of my requests was to give a formal direction to the city manager to start negotiating. And that's exactly what we're doing now on the CRA level. We're just repeating the process, what we asked them to do during the commission meeting. We're doing the same thing now. We tell Mr. Licorice to have a formal direction. To start negotiating. Mr. Licorice, you will not be able to negotiate unless he knows, unless he has a property, a property appraiser to get the right value of the property so he can start negotiating. That's something that we asked him to do the last time. Now we're doing that as a CRA. So the item number one is we given Mr. Licorice, the we formalized the CRA proceedings, something that we already told him to do the last meeting. We not really tell him anything different. We also tell, we give him an authorization to hire an eminent domain, just, I'm repeating what Commissioner Panther said, because we're going to give him the authorization. That doesn't mean we're going to use the eminent domain attorney because by giving the tools to Mr. Licorice to start negotiating and firmly and hire a property appraiser, he will he will know exactly what the price will be and what to negotiate with. Vice Mayor Terrapany has something else that you like there?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that. It's been said multiple times that if you're going to buy the Sun Bay property, then logically you would buy, you know, the other motel properties because isn't that why we're buying them? Because it's a nuisance property? And the answer to that is no. That's not the case. The case is, the difference is, it's a matter of vision, right? Do you want a public space? Do you want a public park there? Does it help promote economic development and redevelopment? Is there a need for it? And all of the answers to those questions is yes. So the logic is not, we're going to buy Sun Bay, so therefore we buy uh the Grand Apartments and we buy Tarpon Inn because it's a problem area. That's not, that's not the answer. It's a matter of, it's a matter of vision. And that's why we've identified those two properties, and that's why sensibly it doesn't, it's not comparing apples to apples. So I just thought I'd I'd elaborate a little.
I respond to that.
Sure.
This all started with citizens coming to us and saying something needs to be done with what's going on down there. Uh not only Sun Bay, uh the grand property and uh the Tarpon Inn. There was a murder uh a- at Sun Bay, and Officer Condock was killed at the grand uh uh property, Anexia Apartments. So have we forgotten about that? Uh so i- it's not just about development and having a public use area, but it's about getting rid of what's been going on down there. And I think that that's what the citizens have been upset about. We we've gotten so many calls and emails, and we had a citizens' meeting, and everybody that got up and spoke was appalled at what's going on in their neighborhood. It's also my neighborhood. So what I'm saying is, you know, I'm talking to uh get rid of the nuisance, not the properties, but of what's going on down uh at in that neighborhood. And I don't think that a park will take care of that. I feel that uh some type of nice development or a higher, you know, boutique hotel or something is going to bring in uh customers and uh to to our town uh is a better fit for that property. And I said that at the last commission meeting. I said I was against eminent domain and against uh buying those properties. So um I haven't changed my mind about that, but I do feel that the issue here is getting rid of the homelessness, getting rid of uh the illegal activities that I feel will continue with a park there, because why not? They'll have more space to do what they're doing. Um and we're not taking care of the other two hotels uh or the Anexia Apartments. Um so that is my reasoning for that. It's it's that it's not going to take care of the problem. It may increase the problem, and and that's my fear for my neighborhood too. And everybody else that's here that's uh is concerned about their neighborhood.
Are there any more commissioners? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Just one thing to add, and this is, you know, it's definitely my opinion, but I do have a degree in 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 economics. There's this talk about the the need for for um hotels, and there is. We had the sister city, uh you know, uh the delegates here, and they stayed on US 19. It's still Tarpon Springs, and the Hampton Inn is nice, but that's not the Tarpon feel. We all, we all, we all know and accept that. But we're looking at this property, um you know, I would, I would question how many developers of boutique hotels or um or or hotels in general, that would be an improvement upon what it is, have approached those tho- those 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 property owners. So if we chose not to move forward using this for a for a public space, I would almost bet you any amount of money, that's that situation would not change. It's not going to become a a boutique hotel. Now, Tarpon Inn across the way, that's a different property. I ca- I can maybe see more of a of a of a vision there where if if a developer saw improved activity, thus this becoming a public space, that property could have opportunities for investors and and improvements. But all this talk of Tarpon needing a boutique hotel, it's true, but to zero in on this one property, at least to my knowledge, I'm not a real estate developer, but I don't know any interested right now. And 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 if the city de- does does not use, does not purchase these 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 uh these properties for a a a a uh public space, I I highly doubt one's going to come up and buy it up. That's that's just my personal opinion on that.
Well, my thought was, we spoke, was if, you know, we go ahead with this plan that we have, but um maybe we decide that the park isn't the right thing, and maybe there is a developer, w- I don't know, that would want to come in and build a boutique hotel over there. Of course, I'd love to see that. Um and I honestly think that can be an option. That's why I want to go through with this process of hiring an appraiser, see what they're worth, see if they're willing to sell the, you know, property owners are willing to sell. And there could be a need, there could be somebody out there, that's what we can utilize, um Karen Lemmons, and see if maybe she can uh put some feelers out there. There could be somebody interested in building a boutique hotel over there. So I mean, there's other options is what I'm what I'm getting at. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to go to public comments.
Can I just have one more? I just want to say, I I appreciate your comments, uh but we have someone who owns one of those properties who may have plans for development there.
And I'd like to hear from him.
And I feel that uh moving forward with an eminent domain a- attorney is already saying that that's the route we want to take, rather than talk to these property owners and try to uh negotiate with them and maybe have Karen try to see what their interests are. So why are we so uh, I don't know, so ready to hire an eminent domain attorney? It's going to cost us $500 an hour. Uh I I agree that appraising those properties is is not a bad idea. But I don't agree with uh hiring an eminent domain attorney and using CRA money to buy those properties.
Thank you. We're going to go to public comments.
Tim Kafalas, 205 Leafwood Road, Tarpon Springs. First of all, it was stated that it's part of downtown. We can all agree to that. Scratch that off my list. Secondly, it's commented that not allowed to have people over 30 days. Most of the hotels right now are housing people over 30 days while the hot public housing is closed. They have most of the residents, if you weren't aware of that, from the public housing that Tarpon Springs owns uh in many of these hotels, secondly. Boutique hotel, that's really none of your business. If they meet the qualifications to be a hotel, it's really not up to Mr. Banther to decide whether a boutique motel should be there unless he wants to buy it and put one there. The people don't want to sell. When you get an eminent domain attorney, as would happen before with the library, I sat through all those meetings. Caused a lot of distrust in in the community, caused a lot of hatred in the community, and a lot of people never got over that, thinking that the city could just commit at any time and take their property. The first thing you do is you create an impasse. You create an impasse that you can't get together with the owners on a price. That's what you're about to do by hiring a eminent domain attorney and an appraiser. Maybe you don't see it that way, but that's what you're doing. Eminent the eminent domain attorney that came during the library, that Mr. Elliott, I think it was, brought in, said, "Well, we'll just get to an impasse, and then we'll take the property and worry about the price later." Okay, that's just great. Worry about the price later. That happened to my uncle in Baltimore, where now the uh Harbor uh Harborside is in Baltimore. He had spent $2 million on a building, remodeling it, making it a ship's chandler's business. And they came in, it took it, it took him five years to get his money, and 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 he didn't get what he had invested in it. You have to go by what the courts decide. Now, you keep saying it's not a, it's not a problem with the police, and it's not a problem with the issues. You're insulting our police department by saying they can't handle this. We have a very qualified police department that I don't, I I'm at the Ahepa practically every day. I don't see a lot of crime. It's unfortunate, there's been two sh- two shootings there, there is crime, but I'm going to tell you a little bit more about crime. But first, I want to bring up, this is a very interesting point. Two different occasions, when you set out to sell the property next to the Acropolis, I came to this very commission, and I said, why don't you make it a park? Because it goes through from Court Street to Tarpon Avenue and right across the street are the public restaurants. Two different occasions, it's on record, it's documented. I came here, and it was stated, we don't need another park downtown. We do not need. I wanted to turn it over to the arts and say, why don't you make it an artist park? And it can have, they can just play their art, they can come down there. And it was said, we do not need another park downtown. So to come now say we need it after turning down a property you already owned to put a park in. That would be more convenient, more conducive to helping Court Street. Okay, um let's see, I have another, this, I just wrote all this. Fred Howard Park. Commissioner, when you were Commissioner Mayor, you brought in the idea of taking Fred Howard Park from the uh, you had given preliminary talks. We can't afford it. We can't afford any more parks. We, a dollar, no, oh no, it's going to cost $400,000 a year to maintain it. We can't afford another park. Let it go. So we didn't, we didn't pursue that, and it, we should have pursued that. Okay, now, you talk about crime, and it's not going to stop it. You're right, it's not going to stop it. I'm going to tell you a story that happened to my sister. My sister lives in Butler, Pennsylvania. She did a documentary for PBS because she went downstairs and found her son, 18 years old, an honor student in college, football player, found him dead from a heroin overdose, middle-class community. If you think this is going to stop drugs in a community, it's not. You've got them all over in your neighborhoods, you've got them all over. You want to stop, let them do their job. Let them do ju- their job. By doing this, you're going to counter their ability to do their job. People are going to say, oh, you can't do your job as a policeman? So they're going to buy my property and tear it down? Is that going to be every, every time that something like this happens? Let them do their job. When you get a call, I got a message about somebody going through a scooter on, because people were upset. They called because the police stopped people on scooters going through Martin Luther King. And they made a big issue with emails. Uh like the city, because I'm a candidate, sent me an email saying, oh, we're very concerned, we want to let everybody know. They're afraid to do their job. I'm not talking to any police saying that. I'm saying it from a national basis. Let them do their job. You're not letting them do their job, and if you don't, you're going to have this problem all over. It's it's in houses all over. It's not just, it's just not down there where you have problems down there. And to say this is an issue that we need a park is bull, and you know it, and you're you're sidestepping the whole issue of the the police issue by trying to do this. Because Mr. Terrapany wants a park there because his father has a house two doors over, and he's concerned about the drug issue. Well, that's just fine and dandy, but we all have drug issues in our community. There was a man, when I first bought my house at Oakley Village, that the sheriff's department came in and arrested him for selling cocaine. I had no idea. He lived three doors up and one house over. And as a matter of fact, the sheriff's officer dropped his spare gun in my front yard and left it there, didn't even know he had left it until I found it and had to call the sheriff's department to report it. Okay, so let the police do their job, give them the tools they need. Let them be professionals. Don't try to sidestep the issue. Buying these properties, Mr. Hoffman has been an asset, but whether he is or isn't, his property's not a blight, neither is the other properties, okay? Let them do their job. This is silly to pursue this. That you're you're trying to sidestep the issues, and the issues are, let your police department do their job. Thank you.
It's getting close to 11 o'clock. I'd like to extend the time to 12 o'clock.
Motion to extend.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery?
Yes.
Commissioner Seaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Panther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terrapany?
Yes.
Cheryl Lausis?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Carol Rodriguez. I'm an owner of CCC Timeless Treasures in downtown Tarpon. Um what you have seen on Facebook is exactly the truth. For you to go hire a lawyer and waste our taxpayers' money and then get a property appraisal when the properties are already listed on the tax records because you're collecting taxes from these people. So to me, that's a waste of money. And then to try to use the CRA grants, which has helped Hibiscus Street, which has helped downtown, is appalling, because then are we going to have money, Mayor? If you use the CR grants, is there going to be money for other businesses to improve their restaurants or to open new storefronts? Is there? Probably not. So I'm here, and I also have a letter from George from Backdrafts. We're opposing this. It's true, we did say between Acropolis and Bayou, make that a park. No one wanted to make a park. We have Craig Park, which you can't even use half the time, because you can't have concerts there, because the people around the bayou might get excited. We do not need another park. Why that corner? Why not the other corners? Down there. Why Ed Hoffman's property to turn it into a park? We need revenue to help Tarpon grow and to draw more people to Tarpon. We do not need another park. I'm sorry. And I will keep posting on Facebook, on both of my accounts, because I feel what you guys are doing is wrong. You're misrepresenting your seats that the public has voted you in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, could you uh ask the members who are speaking tonight for their address, please?
I did. Oh, I'm sorry. 22 Hibiscus Street.
Home address.
Your home address, please.
Oh, my home address is in Palm Harbor, 512 West Winds, Palm Harbor.
Thank you.
Hi, um it's, my name is Sherry Went. I live in Tarpon Springs at 631 Unis Drive in the bayou. I have a store downtown uh at 20 um Hib- Hibiscus Street. I also work for Olympic Realty, so I'm um I'm a Realtor, I do property management. And one of the reasons I wanted to ta- and I'm also a board member, which I think some of us have failed to mention, there are several of the merchants board members here tonight. Because we represent the merchants, and that's one of the reasons we got the call to come. Because we do go to meetings, and we do hear what our merchants are saying. And I also work really um very often with Karen Lemmons, and I I took on to volunteer about three years ago, um because I was in construction and I I I work with housing. I vo- I volunteered to help our merchants um fix up their stores. So I've been working with the CRA grants for several years. And when I first came and started helping, help our merchants take advantage of the CRA grant, um hardly anybody was doing it. And in the last three years, I I I certainly know that a lot of that is because of Karen Lemmons, it's because Mark has been very very uh strong in favor of of using it, making our city better, making our merchants more involved. But we have gone a huge way in the last three years. And I think a lot of it is because of merchants getting involved and the CRA grants allowing us to fix up the stores, allowing restaurants to come. I personally worked with five different merchants to turn their their business into a restaurant, and it's made an amazing, amazing difference. We've got bakeries on Backdraft, I mean, there's several people. All this came because of of the CRA grant, which I'm a huge fan of. Now, it's my understanding that one of your options is using this board, the CRA board, to buy this property. I just don't think that's our our major goal right now is taking this property, when we do already own another property downtown, which we could put a park on, and and take away from our CRA funds. It has done a tremendous difference. If if any of you can look back, it is a big difference in what's downtown now and what there was four years ago. You can actually go down at night, and there's actually somebody on the street, and there's actually stores open. All that, including Backdraft, which isn't here, he had to leave, including the bakery, including a bistro. I mean, all this has come, and a new, a new restaurant going in from another one of our board members, an Italian restaurant. This is coming from the influx of the CRA grant. And it and and people getting excited, and we have the same thing happening in the docks. So I I really hate to see us take a huge investment when we have already made a major difference with what your board has done already. The CRA grant has done a huge difference. It is not the opinion of of our merchants, and and again, we we are part of what's making the city grow. Our merchants are, do not want to see another park right now, the majority of those that I talked to. And that's why several of our board members are here. We'd love to see a park, maybe where down by the by the meat market, that would have been great. We'd love to use it for our First Fridays, which again is another thing that's making the city grow and and advertise Tarpon. So I just want you to know that we, I I agree with what Commissioner Rea said. I mean, I really feel like this is not our position to even consider an eminent domain lawyer and spend the funds for something that, it's my understanding from the attorney, that we can't do that as a CRA board. You you aren't able to take eminent domain. So I I'm hoping that you'll reconsider and and possibly think that maybe this isn't our best. Maybe code enforcement might be a nice idea with the ho- hotels that are are not taking care of themselves, or something else. Or maybe encourage them to use the CRA grants and fix up what they have, and maybe we can make it better. But I I'm not, I'm not in favor of taking something that's really working well and deciding that now we need to work on most of those funds and put them over into a park across from another park.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good evening. My name is Jack Spurk. I live at 2008 Golf View Drive. I've spoken to the commission before. One concern that I have is, most of our citizens are not informed on this issue. They were informed that there was problems in the motels, and as Commissioner Seaver said, they are concerned about remedying that problem. That is what the problem is. I am opposed to using CRA money to purchase any properties. CRA money can be used for much better purposes for that. CRA money can be used for much better purposes for that. There are many needs we have in our community. To drain the CRA money is a big, big mistake. I am also opposed to any eminent domain in any form. Even if you don't use it, you're using, you would use eminent domain to threaten these owners to take their properties. They are private properties. I've only realized recently, Ed Hoffman is an amazing person in this community. He owns a property there. I believe you should give him the option of taking those parcels and building something significant there. I do work for the Chamber of Commerce, and as I mentioned before, I get two to three calls a day for people wanting in-town motels, in-town residents. And until you change those two motels from being resident motels to traveler motels, you're going to continue to have this problem. That's an amazing space. We could have a significant mixed-use project built there. It could be a restaurant. It could be lodging. It could be boutique hotels. It could be residence. There are so many options, and I haven't heard any discussion on options. I'm totally opposed to having a park there. I have absolutely no idea why we need to have a park outside of a park. Craig Park is not overutilized. It's a beautiful space. If I have an option of going to a park, I would never choose to be up across the street. I would choose to be down in Craig Park. All our tourists are down there right now checking out the manatees. So I don't even know when the idea of a park came up. To my knowledge, I've only heard the park idea within the last two months. And as all these other people are saying, there were opportunities to have park space. It's been turned down. You're going to take this property off the tax rolls and we're going to have to pay to maintain a park. And as Commissioner Seaver said, we have more park space in Tarpon Springs than all of Pinellas County. So I'm totally opposed to all of your motions. Thank you.
Hello. Ramona Pletcher, 1131 Anclot Road, Tarpon Springs. I was born and raised here. My relatives used to come down from Michigan and they stayed at the Gondolier Hotel. How it turned into what it is now, I don't know, but it's a shame. It should be a nice hotel. I have people that come visit me, relatives. After three days, they need to go stay somewhere else. It would be nice to be able to send them to a nice hotel on the bayou. I don't think you need another park. And as an appraiser, I can tell you that you can get an appraisal, but that will only be your baseline. You get two appraisals, they're going to have two different figures, and I'm sure that the other property owners will get their own appraisers, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Peter Fanodis. I'm living in 57 West Arpon Avenue. I am the owner of Sunbay Motel. What I'd like to tell you right now, tonight, that the situation changed a lot. And changed a lot because the police department helped me and appreciate your help. And I think that the idea to make a park, this is not a good idea. I think that we have to keep the place, but in better condition. And I propose today to let me stay with my property, and I promise that you will be, you will see many changes. You will see that the people will be different. Already, right now, fifty percent of my capacity are people from up north, from New York, from Pennsylvania. I have people who stay there, they rent a place to stay for one month or two months because of the weather. This is very good. What you can do there? You have a park, and what is, what will win with a park? Nothing, absolutely nothing. Give me time. This is what I'm asking you right now. Give me time, and you will see how we'll change the situation. And we need a hotel and motel over there and not a park. This is my opinion. If you'd like to help me, give me a chance. Give me more time, and you will see how we'll change the whole area there. This is my position. Up to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Marty Peters, 1702 Heritage Oaks Court. And I'm also vice chair of the Budget Advisory Committee. And I'm a little disappointed that this didn't come before the Budget Advisory Committee because I think we could have hopefully encouraged staff to provide you with some useful information that I don't know that you really have now. And for example, if it had come before the Budget Advisory Committee, we would have, or at least I would have, asked for the staff to develop rough estimates. You're not going to get accurate estimates right now on a dollar value because you have to do appraisers and things. But how much would it cost to purchase the property? What would it cost for demolition? What about rebuilding it, even if you're just rebuilding it as a park? And then when we were looking at linger longer, we talked about things about maintaining the park afterwards, too. What are the costs for that, rough estimates? And what would the effect be on the equivalent millage rate as sort of a contrast? If you're spending all this money, well, what would the millage rate be? How much could it be reduced? How much could it be used for other purposes? And I know it's for the CRA, but it's sort of, the money is in there, too. And what about the impact on the tax rolls? How much are you going to lose on that? So I would suggest that you get numbers on the rough estimates of that first before you act. And the gentleman was just here. You might want to give him some time. I think what a lot of you were saying is you weren't satisfied with the way that was being run. There are other things. One of the people suggested code enforcement. Well, there's also fire inspections. Health inspections you could do, too. You could put up a CCTV across the street. And if you're having problems with the crime, I think the people that are there will realize that rather quickly, and they'll want to commit their crimes somewhere else instead of in that area. But I would suggest that you might want to do those things. That lawyer you're going to hire, that eminent domain lawyer, too, for $500 an hour? You might want to get a rough estimate. How many hours do these things usually take? If it's an hour or two, oh, yeah, not a big deal. But if you're talking about a hundred hours, that's a lot of dough. Think about it.
Peter Lacks, 514 Ashland Avenue. Let's put some things into perspective. First, as Commissioner Seaver has brought forward, you didn't have close to a hundred people at the old library because they were there because you advertised, should we make a park? That was one of the options that was suggested. The whole reason this is all going on is because of the activities at the hotels and the crime and the other stuff. So let's put it into perspective. If you're going to want to take the Sunbay, which is where you feel the biggest nuisance is, Mr. Khan has come a number of times and spoken about his hotel and his efforts, and city manager has mentioned, you know, and even chief coach had mentioned prior, that Mr. Khan's working with them and lights and all that stuff. And it was quite evidently explained about the nuisance at the thing. And for the lady who was talking about code enforcement, there might be on the website, I think, a link to show all the information about what was looked at, code enforcement, fire marshal stuff. So they're working on that. Now, the only way you can justify taking 57 Sunbay is if you have a public purpose. And the only way you can justify a public purpose is including Mr. Hoffman's property in it. That's the only way you can do it. You can't justify taking the Sunbay and making it a park. There's no way. Now, Commissioner Manther talked about the process. True. But when you put in there second eminent domain, that shouldn't even be on this agenda as it was mentioned by Commissioner Slattery and Manther. Yeah, that's later down the road, if necessary. But you put that on there now, it's showing to everybody that, hey, well, we got our backup here, and if you don't really agree with us, we're going to go to the bazookas or the shotguns. So there is an intimidation factor. So, one, y'all agreed, yes, let the city manager get the information to make an offer. You need an appraisal to do that. But you don't need a $500 attorney. And as Mr. Peters mentioned, I looked in the backup, there's some pretty impressive credentials from these guys about cases they've won. I didn't see anything in underneath there, how many hours it took to win those cases. And we've seen before, how about Boyer? Boyer Avenue, where we sued because of the bad piping? And we thought we had it won. We spent all this money for technical and scientific people to speak and all this stuff. We lost. How much we spent on that? $300,000, Mark?
A lot.
A lot. Those lawyer bills, they have no problem. Ching, 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 ching. So there should be no need for even a discussion of hiring an eminent domain attorney at this point. Prove an appraiser, get some information, speak to the property owners. But this whole thing about a park, and hey, you know me. I love parks. I've been trying to get parks around here for a while. And as Tim pointed out, when we were having the thing about the bathroom property and the Forbes property, it was mentioned by a few people who are speaking now for a park that, no, we don't need that as a park. So there are some people who I think are looking to gain from this indirectly. Because as has been pointed out previously, you create parks and you improve these areas, the surrounding property owners do benefit. But at this point...
Thank you, Mr. Delacks.
Do the property appraiser and look at it, but you got to drop the eminent domain.
Any other comments?
I'm Ed Hoffman. In my office, Hoffman Architects, 29 West Orange Street, just across the way there. I am the, I appreciate very much some of the comments that people have made about my reputation, although I think they've been exaggerated, a little too kind. Some things I wanted to point out, just, and I apologize that I haven't been here previously because, but I found out about through the newspaper and some people commenting, boy, they're sure talking about your property a lot, you know, and possibly taking your property. And that's, so I thought, well, maybe I ought to should show up and do a little bit more formal about telling you what the vision is and some of my thoughts, although I only have, what, three and a half minutes now or something. First of all, I think we're all on the same page in terms of, we have a, we all want to have a very safe, very vibrant, very economically driven, beautiful city and beautiful downtown. And that connection to the water of the bayou just cannot be overemphasized at all. The epiphany celebrations and the art and all things that go on down there is, I think, is spectacular. And that's actually why I bought the property. Twenty-two years ago, and I'm embarrassed to tell you that my vision of 22 years ago has not come true because of, as my wife would probably attest, I tend to put things off. And this, though, has been a little bit more of a driver to saying, well, maybe I need to get my rear-end gear, so to speak, and make something happen. But I think the question of, that, again, everybody be on the same page, what we want, particularly in terms of the safety. You know, parks is a, you know, great idea. It's like apple pie. I mean, how can anybody be against a park anywhere? But, you know, I'm not sure that, I don't know that that is necessarily the highest and greatest value for the city, even besides me, but for the city. Again, I'm not sure why I would want to be sitting in the park across the street from the real park on the water. I'm not quite getting that connection. I kind of understand the opening that, you know, some people would vision, well, as you come down the street, then it opens up to the park and embracing the bayou. And I thought quite a bit about that. But if you look, for example, at Safety Harbor, they took, when you go down to the spa downtown, Main Street, when they built those buildings in tight, using the smart code type of thinking, when they did that and made it a tight, that is a tremendous engine, economic engine, and an exciting place, vibrant place to be, which then actually reinforces the water. And it's, as an attractor, it becomes an anchor for the, for the downtown to want to go down to more and then have it open up to the park, is a view. Anyway, as I said, we've owned it for 22 years. We've got the, we've had it used for parking for public. Thousands of people have parked there for free for over the years. And the church youth has made a lot of money over it by doing, we let the church use it for their fundraisers and events for parking and, of course, event signs, the triathlons and all that kind of stuff. And then, of course, many political campaigns have been advertised there, which, for better or for worse, I try to limit that, as you know, to only 30 days, so we're not having to look at signs forever. But, and I think the, we all have been talking about a motel is needed, and then there's also, you know, maybe the high-end housing, you know, continuing the Golden Crescent, which is so, so critical to that, to the bayou there. And how do we upgrade and do something great there? And so, anyway, there's a lot of, you know, the Sunbay Motel has always been, has been an issue. And I know that y'all can't talk about it officially or whatever, but the, well, I guess, I was going to show you some visions, if you'll allow me a couple more minutes. Just as we talk about energizing, you know, the economic engine down there. Go ahead and feel free to cut me off if you need to. But just wanted to show you, instead of just talking about it, there's so many things to do, so many possibilities to do down there. There's an engine driving this, is this Tarpon Avenue Spring overlooking the bayou here. And that's to work, you know, get some parking in the back and get about 16 spaces or so there. And then doing either retail, excuse me, commercial or maybe office. Office was my original thought there, but maybe some, you know, something out on the decks to energize, you know, when you're around the bayou, get some ice cream or whatever, have a glass of wine or something. Maybe there's a, there's a lot of things that people have talked about that is a possibility here. But in this particular one, it's using office on the ground floor and get over 5,000 square feet of office there. And then you go up, and then, you know, the other two floors of housing on top of that. And whether it's, you know, private housing or whether we do motels, kind of a thing for continuing to have people, you know, for trying to get more people. All of that, again, this is, this is very, very quick, just early thoughts. But there's another, you know, 12,000 square feet that can happen up there. So, you know, I think this is an end. The big issue, though, for me, as a designer, and part of the reason I've put this off for 22 years, is that the motel here, Sunbay, has everything in the world to do with the design of what happens here. I mean, this is falling into the smart code idea and is following that. And I understand that we need to, also, there's preservation, there's the FEMA rules, the stormwater, et cetera. It's a very complex project. But one of the big issues is how the Sunbay Motel works into the overall plan. And if we can make that work, and so maybe there's some things, some dialogue and all that can happen to make that part of it. Or maybe that's it. I'll quit now, but I do not have a problem with an appraisal. I think, you know, if y'all want to do an appraisal, save me a lot of money, that would be nice. I'm not sure that's the best thing for y'all to do, but that's good. Hiring the attorney is a little bit intimidating. In fact, I was going to call Jim Hilliger because I deal with him a lot from, you know, the other side, because he's always representing the poor, poor landowner, you know, against the big, bad cities. the big bad cities and the big bad school boards, et cetera. And, but now that I see that y'all have already been talking to him, I don't know that, that probably takes him out of, he won't be able to work, you know, representing me. And so that just puts me in a real frustrated, a little bit of an awkward situation. And so, I don't know, that's, I, the appraisal sounds great. I'm not sure you need to go ahead and get Jim involved in spending a lot of money. So, anyway, a park's a great idea and I'm open, I'm not burning any bridges about anything. You know, but again, I don't think that that's the best use for that property. And I'm not particularly in favor of it yet. Everything's for sale, other than my wife and family and kids. But, you know, we'll see. So, anyway, thank you.
Mr. Hoffman, this idea, this is something that you just thought about or is this something that you have for 20 years?
I've been thinking about it as being office. The reason I bought it was to put my architectural office there and have, have an office with a skybox, epiphany skybox on the third floor. You know, that's, that was really the goal. And, and you think about, even if it's offices, you know, where else in the, in this area can you have waterfront office spaces? But now that the zoning was changed to the intersect, the T4, whatever zone, it's now, you know, it's more open up to a lot of different other things. So the idea now to be able to do mixed use is encouraged. And so just start thinking of mixed use. And it's primarily because Todd and Louise Eckhaus, when you look at their great house there on the corner with the little umbrella sitting outside and people walking into their front space thinking it's a restaurant and wanting to eat there and sitting down waiting for Louise to take their order, you know, that really makes me think, and the way they enjoy the waterfront there and living there on, so why not share that in some real high-end, very high-end housing there? So that's, that's something I think is a much better hire use. By the way, we've also paid $71,000 in taxes on that parcel since we've owned it roughly. And taking it off of the tax rolls. And the project I just showed you is probably about a three and a half million dollar project at least, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
Keep that in mind for the city.
Good evening. My name is Dolly Vady Kiotis. I live at 49 West Center Street in Tarpon Springs. Excuse my voice. I've been before the board before. I'm the homeowner association president of Villa Pomosa, and I've expressed my concerns. And I think, as you all well know, the fact that the Sun Bay Motel has seen violence as well as the Anexi Apartments is one of the driving concerns for all of this change going forward. I'm very pleased to see Mr. Hoffman has brought forward a plan. I guess if I was married to him, Barbara, I'd want him to move forward too after 22 years. But I applaud him for doing that. I am in favor of a park. I think parks are beautiful. I think parks will do things. But our purpose, part of our purpose is obviously to give our police department the opportunity to police the entire city and not spend so many hours and so much time in that area across from Villa Pomosa especially. I applaud the commission for moving forward, as Commissioner Banther said, in a very organized and professional manner to follow through, find out what the property's worth, find out what needs to be done as the next step. We're not saying the park is the do-all and the end-all, but until you take professional steps in an orderly manner, things won't happen at all. And all we need is one more homicide in Tarpon Springs and you can forget about economies going up and tourism bubbling. We just can't afford that as a community as beautiful as this is. My husband was born and raised here. I did not have that same fortune, but I'm enjoying Tarpon Springs, excuse me, I'm enjoying Tarpon Springs now, and I feel that something needs to be done. And I give pleasure to the, to the city manager for moving forward. He took the direction of the board from last month's meeting in December, and I was here. And I appreciate you making those steps forward. But until you make those steps forward, we're gonna continue to languish until we do have another major incident. And we can't afford that. We just can't. This, this town is beautiful. The people in this town are beautiful. And homelessness is everywhere, Commissioner Sabre, it's everywhere. Drugs are everywhere. But whatever we can do to prevent that and to beautify our city, I'm totally in support of. And I appreciate your time this evening. Thank you. I don't see a sign in. I'm sorry.
Todd Eckhaus, 103 South Spring Boulevard. Our home is located maybe closer to the Hoffman's site than any of them. And I tend to agree with the concept that we don't need another park really in that location. We have Craig Park. It's not overutilized to my, from what I can see. It does its job. What we have is a very unique situation, very, very unique, perhaps unlike anything else in the county, in that we have this golden triangle with beautiful old homes and, but we, we have two motels that just don't fit aesthetically. They just don't. And I don't mean to be rude or anything, but they just don't fit. And I would rather see the city somehow, and I don't have the answer to this, but somehow work, try to work with these, with these owners, Hoffman and the two other motel owners, what can be done to try to enhance aesthetically that area? You know, how can the city help them? I'm not sure. But I don't know that a taking is really the answer, you know, I don't know that, I'm not sure a park is gonna necessarily enhance the financial situation of the city, you know, business, enhance business. But the truth is, and I kind of think, you know, what really precipitated all of this really is the shooting. The shooting, okay, we're finally gonna try to do something, take something through eminent domain and rip it down and then, you know, we won't have the, that crowd there anymore. And that, and let's just say we gotta, it has to be a municipal purpose, so we'll do a park. Well, I just don't think it's necessary, you know. And again, I would rather see the city try to constructively work with the owners and say, what can we do to put something together that's aesthetically appealing and fits in with the golden triangle? It's just such a unique situation there, you know. We don't need another park, in my opinion. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jason Shah, Chetan Shah, from Tarponin Motel. I'm one of the owner of the motel. And since we had a meeting last time here and I spoke, I have sat down with Mr. Hoffman and also the Sun Bay Motel. Last five years, I personally have spent over $1 million between six attorneys. And the action that you're going to take right now, just hiring the eminent domain attorney, you're looking at $50,000 retainer. There is no doubt about it. Just to move and have five letters sent by him to city is gonna cost you that. I think we all agree, we need to improve that area. I am new, two and a half, three years in the area, but I agree that area needs to be changed. I think we are all coming together as owners and maybe a couple of our neighbors and also Mr. Tarapani, we are all, we should all get together, come up with idea. We have idea of improving the hotel or just completely tearing it down. I have said it multiple times. And build the interior corridor. I am also in discussion with Home2 Franchise, which is a Hilton Hotel, and they do minimum 108-room hotel. That's their guideline. You can do more, but you got to have minimum 108-room. So, and their plans and drawing suite, and I'm working with Mr. Hoffman and most probably this week or by end of next week, I'll be signing an agreement with him to move forward with my property. But at the same time, when I looked at his, just now, when I looked at his plan and he had discussed a little bit that he may be doing something like that. So we discussed that, why don't we coordinate something that will complement each other? And then also I spoke to Sun Bay Motel. So I'm sure that at the end of the day, he also does not like this type of negative marketing, you know, and hearing negative about all this. So things should happen. This is the right platform. We are all in the same thought process. My request will be, you know, it's city's money. I don't mind, you can spend as much as you want, but while we are all thinking same way, why don't we sit down, have more, create a little group, have more constructive meeting, come up with ideas and do it that way than just blindly spending. Yeah, appraisal, that's fine, you can get that done, you know. But spending money and giving a retainer and means, I, I, means, I know how expensive it is personally and means that you can see it's a matter of public record. I have spent over a million dollars in the attorney in last five years, you know. So that's what my suggestion will be. And I'm open to any meeting, anytime. Let's sit down, discuss it, come up with the idea, make the area better, completely improve it, put everything new, means that's fine, you know. I put a lot of money in the hotel. As you can see, that is not just, it's the everyday thing. And when I came in, only six room working, and now I have all 46 working. But still, there is a lot more to do. So instead of bleeding that way, I'd rather just completely change the property, upgrade it, you know, we have many other franchises in our family. So I think that will be a good thing to do, you know. So think it that way and just give it a little pause, have a few meetings with owners of the properties around, and then go with some attorney expense and all that. That's what I would suggest. But, and then I'm sure that I'm gonna be hiring Mr. Hoffman very shortly, so just to let you know. And today I gave official access to the Tarpon Spring Police Department. Right now, as I'm standing here, I have 34 cameras in my cellphone and I can see everything, including Sun Bay Motel, what's going on, who is coming in, who is coming, going out, what is the car tag number? So we have enough security. We gave it to the officers, they can see it from their car now, from their cellphone. Anybody here wants to look at it and keep watching the properties, you're more than welcome. I'll give you the password and just keep watching it and see who, which criminal came and which criminal left and whatnot. You know, this is not a problem that occurred. Means I came to know as September meeting, I was invited, just day before the meeting, I was invited, there is a meeting about your hotel. That's when I find out that, oh, my hotel is a problem and there's a lot of discussion about it, you know. And same way, everybody else, you know. So it was not like an, some formal announcement or a letter sent or anything like that. And same way, today's meeting, I found out in the evening, you know, that there is a meeting. So all I'm saying is let's work together. Everybody's doing their own thing and maybe it's not gonna get anywhere. But let's work together and make it happen and give it a little pause and do it positively. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris Furboski, 1602 Gulf Beach Boulevard, Tarpon Springs, 34689. I missed a bunch of meetings last year. I've been working evenings and I just get puzzled how we get to a nuclear option. What, with all these people, I mean, Mr. Hoffman, this is, wow. Nobody asked these guys, you know, what can we do to help? Thought that's what we did as neighbors and business owners that were, you know, you would spend a lot less money giving them money in a grant from the CRA to fix the place up than you would to fight them in court. I, it's so mind-boggling that it got to this point. Eminent domain, I just, it's really shocking. It's, wow, okay. And like he said, the park across the street from the park is hilarious because there are a lot of better places in Tarpon Springs that we actually could put more parks, along the river, for instance, which makes sense. But I really doubt that that would, that piece of property as a park would be utilized. So that's puzzling. And I love to have more green space, but wow, what a weird spot, especially coming from commissioners who said we didn't need any more parks. That's right. Mr. Tarapani, you told me that to my face. So I find it very puzzling that you would be in favor of this weird park. And then the amount of money Mr. Hoffman said he spends in taxes and so on. So work with these gentlemen. I mean, we can fix this problem. It's not like you got to go to the nuclear option and start taking things away from people. That's bizarre and unnecessary and rude and wrong. And after they just spoke and told you that they're willing to work with you to fix it, if you move forward with what you just said you were gonna move forward with, after hearing all that, something don't smell right. There is no reason to move forward with what you just said. Just put it all off and wait and then come up with a constructive criticism, a constructive way to work with these gentlemen to fix the problem. And then maybe part of it will be green space. Work with them, not against them. It's gonna cost us a lot of money. And in the end, you might lose because how are you gonna argue that that was necessary to put that piece of green space in such a disjointed, I mean, I can't even imagine how anybody could argue that case. Like it was absolutely necessary, man. I don't know how we could have survived without it. It's so, wow, wow. Think long and hard about what you just heard these people say. They're willing to work with you. Work with them, please.
Jim Colliana, Circle Drive, Tarpon Springs. That's a hard act to follow. You know, you guys have heard the parade of horribles tonight from everybody, right? Everybody knows more about this than you do. You've lived and breathed it. You get the emails, you get the phone calls. And now we got 200 different opinions tonight. I have a hard time with somebody telling me, give me a chance, I'm gonna clean this Where, where, where were they when it was going on? Did, did not the whole town know this was going on? Where were the owners? They're here tonight saying, oh, give me a chance, give me some of that CRA money. But you can't have it because the people downtown want it first. I didn't hear one person tonight say that a park represents the whole city, the whole population. It gives the kids a place to go. It gives them safety, the health, safety and welfare of the people in this town are your responsibility, not saving a motel that didn't try to save themselves. I have a problem with nobody understanding that four of you have already said you're going forward with this. I didn't hear any of you say, including the city manager, that you're gonna start paying that attorney right off the bat. You gave him permission to hire an attorney if he needed that attorney. You can't take an attorney into his negotiations when he negotiates with these people about buying their property. So the boogeyman is there, but he's only gonna be there if you need him, okay? Maybe it'll work out. I doubt it. I don't think you can make a major investment on a 10-room motel and get a return. All business, all business people know you have to have a return on your investment. So how much money are you gonna put in there to clean it up? And as an aside, while I'm thinking of that, will you please tell that man that he can't be filming everybody in the world? That's scary. Back to the subject. I understand Ms. Seaver's opposition. I don't agree with what everybody said about the lot downtown. For goodness sake, y'all been trying to give that lot to everybody to, to build on it for a buck and you don't have any takers? Because a businessman looks at those things and says, if I put money in here, where do I get back? We're not talking about three or four more restaurants on an empty lot. We're talking about big bucks to do what needs to be done. You have to have the financing to repair what you own. If you want to remodel your house, you go to the bank. You have to prove to the bank that you can pay it back. If you wanna remodel your house, you go to the bank. You have to prove to the bank that you can pay it back. I think, and I appreciate you guys going forward, ladies and gentlemen. I, I think personally, you're doing the right thing. I was one of those people that were in your spot some time ago. I wasn't afraid to take a chance because the chance you take and the chance I took was to represent the people in the best interest of the people, to resolve a problem that's not going away on its own, that everybody realized was there, that the owners didn't take the time or the effort or the financing to clean it up. So I appreciate you going forward. I want you to go forward. I want you guys to get to the bottom of this. And the next time we sit in here, it won't be after a championship game because I was up to quarter to one, two, Townsend, and this is a killer tonight. The next time we meet, you're gonna have those answers. I have all the confidence in, in Mark to get this done. I have more confidence in you as a team. And when you vote tonight, vote for it. And I know that Commissioner Seaver will come over to your side because of your vote, because you're a team. Thank you for your time.
Costa Vatico, Yoda's, forty-nine West Center Street, Tarpon Springs. I very much appreciate what all the commissioners have said this evening. I think it's been a positive, probably more positive discussion on your part than what I've heard from the visitors tonight. So I very much appreciate that. I'm not gonna tell you how to do this or how to do this or why you can't do that. I wanna try and be constructive in my comments this evening. First, I think you need an eminent domain attorney. You all know me. I sat in Mr. Lacor's seat and did a lot of this. He's the one, and appraiser's gonna tell you the value of the property. The eminent domain attorney is gonna work with the property owners to explain tax benefits, what they can obtain selling their property, what they would obtain through eminent domain. And he will also advise you of the proper process rather than hearing it from us out here. So I think Mr. Hellinger, I've worked with him on both sides of the table. He's an excellent attorney. In my opinion, my recollection is he's got a soft touch and I think you're gonna enjoy working with him. And he's, I can't, I'm not gonna tell you he's an expert. He's, his reputation precedes him. So you've made a wonderful choice in terms of an attorney. As far as paying, I, I mean, just to throw something out, and I'm not gonna suggest that this is how you're gonna do things, but I wanna suggest to you how perhaps you can do something or why, not why you can't do something, but I think in, in a couple of weeks or in a month, you're gonna be talking about penny-for-point Ellis projects, capital improvement, the penny-for-point Ellis tax is coming up for vote in November. Certainly, if you could pay for projects like this out of the CRA using penny-for-point Ellis tax money, this would be something that you would consider adding to the list. So that's just a thought on my part. I grew up in Tarpon Springs, as my wife had mentioned to you. I grew up on, on Lemon Street, right there at Craig Park where the tennis courts were. When I returned from the Navy, the one thing I, I saw that was different was there was a great big building in the middle of Craig Park, which was the city library. I was shocked and not in my wildest dreams that I think that the city would build a building in the middle of a park, but it happened. There was a need. The other library was next to the Greek church down the alley. And then we wound up with a library there at Craig Park. My point that I'm trying to make is nothing is forever and you can count on change. And there's a whole lot of discussion here about purchasing the property, but I think you do know already, perhaps the residents don't. With this property being purchased out of the CRA, it gives you tremendous flexibility, not only what to do with it now, but what to do with it later. Mr. Lacor is nodding his head, so he understands that. When the need changes, let's say you proceed with the park and at some point in the future, the need changes and there's not a need for a park, but there's a need for some of the other things that the residents are talking about, you have the ability to sell that property for that new need, whether it's privatizing it or changing it for some other public purpose. So my point to you, and, and when I was city manager, one of the biggest things I used to see was a lot of gut-wrenching on the part of commissioners when they were about to pass a resolution or an ordinance or they were addressing some issue. And I think you already know this because I heard you talking about it tonight, but the residents don't understand it. Ordinants can be changed. Resolutions can be rescinded. They can be modified. New resolutions could be passed over the old ones. You can make, you can do whatever you want in that regard. So if a park is approved, it's not cast in concrete. You can always change that, but the point is you'll have control of the property. That's the most important point and it would be out of the CRA. Thank you. And again, thank you for everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
Anita Protus, nine oh one Bay Shore Drive. First, I'd like to congratulate all the elected officials, past elected officials here tonight, and we have you and Billy Howard. Mayor, you were a little boy when he was a commissioner on the board years ago, a little boy. And we welcome to see all of them. First of all, I have been through condemnation of property, personal property. I had to hire an attorney and it didn't cost that much, is what was said tonight. And it was settled after my husband passed away. It was an easy thing to do when you have an attorney, you have an appraisal and you know where you're going. Also had to, we also had condemnation when we built the new library. That was very hard. There was an elderly lady whose home was there for many years. We also took the property that belonged to a veteran who went through the Battle of the Bulge and was a very outstanding citizen, again, in Tarpon Springs, as they all are. But there was a public need and they got a fair price and they were, received their money and we built the new library. The building uptown should never have been torn down. It was a historic building. There was a plan in the city to put a business with apartments upstairs. But at the time, the building director made it difficult and the developer couldn't go through with it after the building was torn down. So that's why we have the lot there. I think we have the wrong impression of park or using the word park in the wrong way. Remember, Ray, I told you what the Golden Crescent was in the fruit salad section? When you first started to run, you didn't know what they called it. You didn't know what it was. Now you're lucky enough to live in the area. We have to take care of the Golden Crescent. That is the crown, the jewel crown of our community next to the Sponge Docks and our main street. If we don't take care of the Golden Crescent and that area now, you're not gonna have businesses in Tarpon. And I'm sorry, the motels are a dump. The colors are wrong. They're dirty. Look what we've got there. And it's not gonna get any better. It's just not going, because it's been years and years and years. And when I was mayor, we kept having complaints about it. I've been up here for five years after, last five years complaining about the drugs and the prostitution and the filth and the dirt and the, and the homeless there. He's still renting apartment, uh, rooms. People are living there. That's their home. That's not what it's supposed to be. You were elected by the citizens of this town to do the right thing and tonight, you're doing the right thing. Move forward, get that information for the city. I remember when a former mayor put in the funds, the program was set in the city for us to be able to proceed and do what we are supposed to do. And you are doing the right thing tonight. Let's go ahead. Let's work on it. We've had plenty of time. We've had a lot of time, given the people a lot of time to clear it, clean up their act and do what they needed to do. As far as businesses down there, you put a business down there, an ice cream shop or boutique, then the citizens are gonna start complaining about business in the fruit section and in the Golden Crescent. Let's be smart with what we're going to do. Think about the word park. When we see, say park, we're thinking of swings. We're thinking of people coming in and out. Dress it up. A park can be a garden park like they have in San Francisco, like they have in Savannah, like they have in St. Augustine in their historic district. There's so many things you can do in the name of park. A flowered park there would be gorgeous. And I resent the gentleman coming up here making accusations. Terapany didn't initiate it because their home is there. It was initiated because of the crime, losing a police officer, the drugs and the prostitution going on there, to see it day in, day out and on weekends. You have a responsibility to clean up this city and keep it clean. And you're on the right track tonight. And I hope you follow through with what you have made the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. We need to extend the time again to one o'clock if you all decide.
How about thirty minutes?
Thirty minutes? Okay. I need a motion for that.
Move to extend for thirty minutes.
Second. Only favors say aye.
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 Go ahead, Tommy.
Tommy Frain, sixty-four Penn Street, Tarpon Springs. Sorry, I was actually thinking everything was kind of said. I wasn't gonna try to waste anybody else's time, so I apologize, but just kinda wanted to respond here. And it was made clear by the city manager at first and I'm sure the city attorney can tell you, when we're talking about eminent domain here, even as a threat, you know, if, if we end up going down that road, it's for public use, that it's been deemed for public use. All of this talk that, oh, the motel, I mean, that's being used as the rationale here. I mean, you know, you can't come at me with a straight face and tell me, oh, no, there's this strict need for a public park at this bizarre intersection. It just, it doesn't make sense. So even if, and I think you probably could win the battle in court, but as a city, do we really want to do that? You know, when we're talking about the library, that's a, that's a whole different issue. You know, this issue here is, is about essentially using eminent domain law to get rid of what the city has deemed a nuisance, which there's Florida court history on recently, two thousand twelve statutes that were put in place so the Florida, so no longer municipalities and the state government could not use eminent domain to get rid of public nuisance. So this seems essentially is a way to circumvent it. I think anybody reading the minutes or watching the video can clearly see that. So just from a, from a moral standpoint, is that really the road that we wanna go down? I mean, we can, even just from a practical purpose, a park there, whether it be a flower park or whatever, it just, that doesn't fit either, you know? And it's not, in my opinion, it's not really a role of the board to decide where, what fits every single little crevice if something is there. If there's a problem, we should address it. And, you know, the, the pessimism that despite all these business owners and, or excuse me, landowners, business owners coming and saying, hey, let's work together. And then the pessimism that, oh, it's just never gonna happen. We had the public meeting a couple of months ago. You know, what, three months, four months, and it's supposed to, like, that fix? It seems like a knee-jerk reaction to the crime that happened at Sun Bay Motel. Uh, and I think it's a dangerous precedent, even if you can win the case. I have, from a moral perspective, I, I don't know if that's the case you really want to win, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more comments? I hear none. Mr. Slattery?
Thank you. I just wanted, for Mr. Hoffman to go. I want, oh, there you are. And I just wanna thank you for coming tonight and showing us your plan because I don't think anybody other than the city manager has spoken to you. I'm not sure, but we didn't know that you had some sort of a plan, or I didn't know, was not aware. So, but I wanna thank you for coming forward and sharing that with us. Can I make a motion?
We already have a motion on the floor. We have first and second.
Vice Chair Terapany. I say call the question.
Please call the question. Roll call, please.
Repeat the motion, please.
Okay. I can't say if I have a verbatim, but this is what I have. Continue to move forward with process and direct city manager to do whatever he needs to do to negotiate.
No, that's not what I said. Um, well, I, I mean, I can be more clear. My motion was to, to continue to authorize the city manager to move forward with, with this proposal in terms of hiring the eminent domain attorney for negotiation as well as the property appraiser.
Well, we are talking about item number one. Item number one is to propose purchase of property at fifty-seven West Tarpon Avenue and sixty-one West Tarpon Avenue. That's what we're talking about.
Right. But is it not one of the same? I mean, to purchase the property.
Okay.
Right?
But we have other items that we can do separately. But this is your motion. Go ahead. It's your motion.
Got it?
And?
My second is yes.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slattery? I'd like to, well, I guess we have to vote on this one and then I would like to make a different motion. No. Right? Correct? For the attorney? Vote on this one first.
Yeah, yeah. You need to vote on the motion that you've got unless there's a, a motion or a move by the movement to amend it.
Okay.
Commissioner Seaver?
No.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Chair Terapany?
Yes.
Chair Aluhuzis?
Yes. We are now going to the item number two is the authorization to hire eminent domain attorney.
I think you've, I think you've resolved all, all three of these items within the one.
So we just?
One item. That's, I mean.
Well.
And we should do it one by one.
I mean, it could have been, it could have been done either way. The motion was to do it all at one time. The motion was made and seconded, but it resolves all the issues on the agenda.
Can we rescind that and can we do the motion one by one?
You've made a motion and, and passed it. If you wish to rescind it, the person making the motion would need to move to rescind it and then you would need to vote on, uh, in, undoing that action, the motion and the vote. So if Vice Chair Terapany wishes to do that, he is?
I wish not to do that.
There you have it.
Well, that concludes our, the CRA meeting adjourned at twelve o'clock.
I was three hours off.
Yeah, and that's not what I wanted to do with the motion.
Fifty-seven. I'm on record I didn't go past twelve. I didn't go to twelve. Just gotta pick up our trash. Thank you, Major.
You don't want me back here again. You're a jinx.
Do you know where the CRA funds come from? Where? Where do they come from?
They come from the tax and selling the properties in place.
All these people talking about staying up and watching the game.
Well, I'll try that.
I rode a bike to the game from ten AM to two thirty.
Right?
Yeah.
That's not what he said. He said he's open to the park. I do. Review that. Find out where your CRA funds come from before you start voting.
Come over here tomorrow. Hey, guys, thanks for everything you do.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Alabama.
And the jury had like seventeen hundred dollars to pick it up. So that's not, that's low lives, you know? We got a couple of them. Three card, Monty, in the bathroom. We snagged them. Both of them are gone.
He knew. He knew.
Mayor, can I have your license before you vote?
Oh, yeah. You want your, that's what you get. It's good, it's good for you though. It's good for your future development. Good for the future. Yeah. Yeah. Especially himself. You did. I, I wouldn't have believed it. I would not have believed it either.
Oh, one of my tapes.
I got everything.